Doesn't sound like, there we go. Little, little delay. All right, it is two thirty-four and I will open this workshop, special workshop of the Grand County Commission. President Commissioners Evan Clapper, Bill Winfield, Tricia Dean, Mike McCurdy and myself, Sean Kattler, as well as our Clerk Gabriel Waitek and our County Administrator Mallory Nassau, Associate Administrator Quinn Hall. I will now turn the workshop over to Jenna Gory from Planning and Zoning.
So this is our ADO ITA round three. It's a land use code section four point nine. It outlines the intent to apply application process in developing the alternative dwelling overlay for residential use on individual properties. The ITA process is intended to give commission the opportunity to evaluate each project and proposal and determine those that would receive support to move on with a full rezone application based on the criteria in section four nine two, including being located in a preferred zoning district, compatibility with existing community characteristics, historic use of the subject property, traffic impact, commute time, relative impact on water resources and overall design. The ADO pilot program permitted the approval of one hundred and fifty units within the one-year program period, which is set to expire on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Today you're considering round three submittals and during the first two rounds of submittals, there was a total of a hundred and fourteen of a hundred and fifty units that were approved. This final round can approve up to thirty-six additional units. And within all the application, there's a total of thirty-five new that proposed. After commission, it considers these applicants, those who choose to move forward, with a full rezone application and then they would participate in two public areas, one at planning commission and again one at county commission. So we'll move right into the first.
Hey Jenna, could I give us one second? One of our commissioners is an applicant as well and I was going to turn the floor over to Commissioner McCurdy.
Yes, I wanted to say I will be recusing myself for quoting this as I am taking part in this. I just wanted to say I voiced my support for all of our housing applications, pretty much in any sense. So, okay, do I step down?
Um, that's a question for Stephen. He should be here soon, but I think, I think you just.
I can be a citizen.
Have you guys done this in the past, actually?
I think participating in the conversation is fine. It's just a matter of want to. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Is there really this? What'd you think?
I don't know. I don't know if it's fine when it's directly related to yours.
Okay.
Right.
So.
I always.
I can hang out in the back.
Yeah. It's been clarified regarding HTHO previously that it's okay as long as it's just.
Okay. Go ahead Jenna, you can take us through.
So in an effort of time, two and a half hour, I've condensed my staff report for each of these. So I'm pretty quickly for you. This first is.
And actually, I'm sorry, I want to clarify that as well with we I had talked about. We'll have forty-five minutes. We are going to move our third workshop to the end of the meeting and treat this discussion today. So we'll have actually have forty-five minutes for each of our two workshops. So that gives you a little bit extra time.
This application is for property located two eight one two Spanish Valley Road. The applicant is Sarah Sore. The applicant's subject property is located at the southwest corner of Spanish Valley Drive and Spanish Trail Road within a rural residential zoning district. The application proposes four full hookup RV dwelling sites of one point zero one acres along with a community garden and existing structure on the property, which is the owner's residence. So I just wanted to show the vicinity map so you have an idea of where that property is located. And I will switch to the site plan for that. This is an ITA resubmital as the commission did not choose this application as a best fit for the program during the round one ITA submittals. With this resubmission, this SORG has highlighted the application's location of the project in relation to possible future development node along a Spanish Valley Trail Road. The Spanish Trail Road, Spanish Valley intersection area is identified in the twenty twelve planning, excuse me, general plan as a rural center. Additionally, public workshops and land use steering committee meetings for the twenty thirty general plan, future land use map continue to identify this corridor as a neighborhood node for the future land use map. The bounds of the proposed commercial node, however, is forthcoming as that planning process is still undergoing. The Spanish Trail Road, excuse me, because the development is bordered on the south and the west by a protected zone district rural residential, as defined by the land use code, screening would be required on each of those borders as shown on the preliminary master plan. As designed, the development does adhere to all design standards for an ADO development in regards to dwelling site size, setbacks, access, parking and screening. A circular internal driveway has been included, the final location, access and design of which would be evaluated at a rather road supervisor and fire chief due to its close proximity to the intersection. There is. There is a thirty-five foot wide drainage easement located through the center of the property, which is identified as its own, a one percent annual flood chance hazard per FEMA. And so as such, any development in this location would be carefully evaluated by the county flood plain administrator. While located in a rural residential zoning district, this not a preferred zoning district, this core property is located on a major collector Spanish Trail Road as defined by the UTMP and is centrally located having direct access to Spanish Trail Road, which is planned for the future shared use path and as such, development will provide multimodal access for residents as preferred by the ADO organs. Location is roughly five miles from the west city center. Would you like me to just run through that?
What was that? You just said it was not identified on what? Sorry, I was.
It's identified on as a major collector for the UTMP, but it's not located within a preferred zoning district. It's also located on Spanish Valley Trail, so it will be in front of the shared use path.
And the first time we saw this were these like van sites or something? But in this application, is it tiny homes, stick built?
Okay, what is the difference from the first time we saw it till now?
The point for the resubmission is to highlight the location of the property.
So it's essentially the same, looking at it, just, just, yeah, just revisiting it. Right, okay, great. Thank you, Jenna.
In the materials provided, they said the site will be developed with a small traditionally built home or pre-manufactured tiny home to maintain the traditional visual aesthetic of the area. So that's.
Great.
Um, I, do you, can we ask questions now or do you guys want to run through them all?
That's, I think it'd probably be since we are on a time constraint, let's, let's run through them. Also, we have a big picture of everything and then.
The next application is Nathan Ruchusen. It's seven sites located to the property immediately to the south of the previous twenty-eight ten Spanish Valley Drive. The applicant's, excuse me, proposes four ADO dwelling sites on one point oh one acres. The property is the location of the applicant's primary dwelling and one additional ADU exists at the rear of the property. The proposed ADO units are designed behind the primary dwelling unit at the rear of the property, providing privacy for those residents. The subject parcel is located within the rural residential zoning district and while not a preferred zoning district, the property is located on Spanish Valley Drive, a major collector for the UTMP and also on Spanish Valley Drive and such future residents would have access to that shared use path, providing multimodal access. The Spanish Trail and Spanish Valley Drive intersection again is identified in the twenty twelve general plan as a rural center and additionally, our public workshops and steering, land use steering committee meetings have identified this area as a corridor for potential increased residential use and neighborhood commercials. Each dwelling site is proposed with full sewer water and electrical and will have access to that future planned community garden and shade structure. Like, excuse me, like the SORG ITA proposal immediately to the north, a thirty-five foot wide drainage easement is located to the rear of the property, which is identified as a zone A, location per FEMA and development would be evaluated by the flood plain administrator.
Thank you. Then could you worse, where are the proposed sites? Could you just highlight with your?
So that first arrow there is Miss Sarah Sore.
Yeah.
And the one just to the south.
Oh no, I mean, on, on that property, when I'm looking at the flood drainage, just where are the four?
So this is Miss Sarah Sore.
Yeah.
And then this is Nathan.
And Nathan's sites are behind the house to the south of the wash.
There is a couple of individual like accessory structures that sit here currently that he's intending on taking.
Okay. Okay.
There is, it's in the main body. It's just not in that first, first row.
Okay, great. I see. Great, thanks Jenna.
Next application is Kevin O'Neil. It's located at fourteen forty-one Spanish Valley Drive. There are four sites proposed within the large lot residential zoning district. It is a preferred zoning district for ADO projects and it is also the location of the applicant's principal dwelling. The lot is bound by Hunt Creek subdivision to the north, other single-family dwelling, large lot residential properties, the east and west, and a small patch of general commercial across the street. Public workshops and land use steering committee meetings focused on the future land use map have consistently identified the Mill Creek Drive and Spanish Valley Drive intersection as an appropriate location for mixed neighborhood commercial node likely supporting increased residential uses. The ITA proposes those four sites to be designed in accordance with the design standards of ADO code as related to setbacks, parking and block coverage and access. The density proposed is largely compatible with other uses in the area. As the Hunt Creek subdivision to the north includes parcels ranging in size from point two oh acres to a half acre. Additionally, the Valley Terrace subdivision across the street has half acre lots as well. Worth considering in this case, if the applicant were to subdivide the property in accordance with the existing large lot residential zoning district, which allows half acre lots and built a principal dwelling unit and associated ADU on each lot, such a land use code compliant development would have only one less dwelling unit than what is proposed for this application. This proposal is located on the preferred major collector for the United Unified Transportation Master Plan and being located on Spanish Valley Drive will have access to the future shared use path, which would also provide multimodal access for the resident.
Yeah.
So this application is for thirteen seventy-nine South Arnold Lane from Michael McCurdy. This ADO is proposing eight alternative dwelling sites with full sewer water and electrical hookups situated along a preferred circular internal access. This one point two six acre property is currently the location of the applicant's primary dwelling at fronts on South Arnold Lane, South of Polio. This property is bound in the west by several other properties also zone rural residential, but this property is unique in its location and that is a small pocket of parcels zone for one acre lots while being surrounded on three sides by property zone highway commercial. A high level look at the vicinity map highlights this unique zoning and would support the idea that this pocket of low density residential could be viewed as a good location for future increased residential density. While rural residential zoning district is not preferred for the ADO developments, many public workshops and land use steering committee meetings have identified this area, the Mill Creek Drive corridor from Highway one ninety-one to Murphy Lane, as a possible location for increased residential in the vicinity of the university campus and possible emerging neighborhood commercial node at Mill Creek Drive and Spanish Valley Drive. While not on an arterial or collector road for the UTMP, Mill Creek Drive, a minor arterial, is located less than a thousand feet away of Polio Lane to Mill Creek Drive. Similarly, while not located along the future shared use path on Spanish Valley Drive, the intersection of Spanish Valley Drive and Mill Creek Drive, where the multimodal path will begin, is roughly twelve hundred feet away. As designed, the development does adhere to all the design standards, including and also includes shared green space at a community garden.
What are the colors on that map again?
It doesn't need the size, so the yellow is small and the orange.
Or no, I think you were talking the previous.
Yeah, the, the area map. The zoning.
Sure, where you see the arrow pointed, that's rural residential, so it's one acre lots.
And red is highway commercial. Now, what's the orange just to the northwest of it? Great.
This application is. Located at forty sixteen Spanish Valley Drive, proposing fifteen sites on a three point two two acre property within the rural residential zoning district at the corner of Spanish Valley Drive and Valley Dissol. The property currently supports a single-family dwelling and a detached garage, which would remain. The ITA includes fifteen nine point six six foot dwelling sites at twenty-three by forty-two feet, situated on the open portion of the east side of the property and along the preferred internal circular driveway. It is proposed with full sewer water and electrical hookups for each. Units are intended to be installed by the developer as permanent units. While some traffic impact would be expected with fifteen new units, the development is proposed along Spanish Valley Drive and as such is situated on a major collector as identified by the UTMP. These are preferred access roads for the ADO development code. The applicant has also expressed that they're willing to adjust and redesign the number and location of the development's accesses based on a full review of the plan by the road supervisor. Initial review of the project by the road supervisor, he has expressed that he prefer either one access on Spanish Valley Drive or two of both of those access points on the Valley Dissol. The property is bound by rural residential zoning district on all sides, including the All-American acre subdivision, by Dissol subdivision and Spanish Valley is space. Pack Creek also runs through the west portion of the property, property line. On the opposite side of the proposed development, excuse me, the property is bound by rural residential zoning on all sides. Being located on Spanish Valley Drive, the development will be situated along the shared use path, also providing the preferred multimodal access. The development as proposed does meet all the site design standards, including setbacks, parking spaces, landscaping, and the required screening. Each dwelling and the proposed, each dwelling of the proposed ADO sites exists almost completely within a hundred-year flood plain. And of course, any construction or development within the flood plain would be evaluated properly permitted through the FEMA flood plain administrator in accordance with federal regulations. The applicant did already discuss that with the flood plain administrator upon submission of the ITA, so they're quite aware of those. But should be floodway. We're quite aware of what that development would require. So this will include all of the applications to start with questions from the beginning?
Yeah, do you just want to move through?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a really good idea.
So, or I don't know if these are all questions, maybe just more comments like that first one. That appears to be a community rebuilt house. Does anybody know that for sure?
It definitely looks like it.
Yeah, so that's a little, I don't know, I'll just state from my opinion, it's a little disturbing to me. It's like, well, you got this home, it's subsidized and. That's just my opinion. And it's, there's a lot going on in that corner and I am concerned about that drainage and I know. And we'd probably have to talk to Bill Hulse, but I know that, I knew that there was some issues with that drainage, that there was something going on. At one point, they had quite a few people living on that property and they, they have cleared out. But I can't remember what the deal was with Bill, but if we go through, those are, we can get some clarification from Bill as we move along. They have put up a really nice fence on Spanish Valley Drive and I guess if I, if I. I mean, I probably won't vote for this regardless, but I would probably recommend that they continue that fence all around the property just to, you know, it's, it's a pretty big impact and, and there really is. There's still, you know, people that are living there. Bobo Hannah lives right across the streets. So like, or Blake, sorry, so, you know, I, I'm trying to think about the neighbors that have lived there for forever and, and the impacts to that. I know we, we view that as a major crossroads and it is, but there's still residents that are living there. And so that's just, just a couple of comments and, and like I said, maybe down the road, we can get some clarification from Bill about what was going on with that drainage.
Uh, Kevin, yeah.
I, sorry, I'm late. Are we just opining, we're just taking them in sequence and saying what we think?
Yeah, so we have the, yeah, we, we just gave, we just got an overview of each one of the five projects. Now we're back to the very first project now, a little bit of Q and A now.
That's what confused me. I was, yeah, so we're twenty-five minutes just on the first. Okay. I, I, I guess I, I, and I think the next one is immediately adjacent to this.
Yes, it is, just south.
So I might, I'll save time and, you know, my comments apply to, to both of them. I, I do think this is, you know, this is rural residential, surrounded by a lot more rural residential when we were passing the ADU ordinance. And my feeling is that, you know, I, I thought there was general agreement or that most of the rural residential was not suitable for these things, but there might be exceptions. And I think later on the agenda, we might see some of those exceptions. And so I, I guess I'm inclined not, not to support this one or, or the neighboring one. I, and, and the main reason is, is, it's kind of a process point that I, I don't. When we increase density, I think it's good to do it in the process as part of a larger planning, planning process where we look at all the different places that we might do increased density and see which ones make sense. But all too often on the commission over the past few years, we get these individual proposals, you know, somewhere out along Spanish Valley Road and we make these kind of spot zoning decisions about increasing density. And I, I want to avoid that as much as possible. But I, you know, I do acknowledge that, you know, we have a need for housing, so we can't be completely original on that point. But I, I think to me that just, it doesn't say we should never do something, but it raises the bar. And, and I think these two parcels don't clear that bar. I, I don't think there's any. I, I think they're pretty typical for a lot of Spanish Valley and, and I don't really think we should be citing this particular type of development throughout the valley. I, I do look forward to, you know, hopefully in just a small number of months, having those larger planning discussion and the deciding, you know, which areas might be appropriate for, for more density. I think it's definitely something we need to do, but we, I want to do it as, as part of a, you know, when looking at the whole map, not just zeroing at a particular parcel. So I, I think I'm not in favor of this.
Thanks, Kevin.
I think he's, he or she, maybe, I don't know, staring, I guess they have addressed the neighbor situation. I mean, they clearly have Blake signing off onto this and hearing their, their plan. And I, I'm not against it. I am curious though about Evan's comment here and I did just find that in there. So will it be tiny homes or will it be RV sites? I think that needs clarified.
If they are committing to one or the other on the site plan and development standards, that's what they would have to be. So however, the final master plan is designed, that's what they would have to be because it will be in their development agreement as that. So for example, on our last round of ADOs, there was a requirement for two of the applications to include that and that was written in the development agreement. So it has to be that way.
Okay, perfect. Are they, are they proposing tiny homes here or RV spots?
Not RV spots.
Not, so stick built homes, what's being proposed?
Yeah, I, I think that not just with this one, but with a lot that we're seeing today. And, you know, kind of the ordinance overall, I might need some clarification about the appropriateness of the stick build. I think that they're attractive in the sense that it doesn't feel like a campground being plopped down in a neighborhood, but I think that part of the alternative dwellings was kind of proposed as camp parks, you know, existing outside of commercial zones. And with the idea of them having a lighter footprint. You know, if there, if it was a gravel parking strip and, and ten or twenty years, you know, it was decided this was a bad move, it'd be easier to kind of like wipe them off the map. But with stick build, I was surprised to see so many of the proposals include the stick build stuff.
I think though a lot are the tiny homes that are on chassis.
Yeah, so if that's what we're talking about, I think that that would fit nicely here. I think that the entrance being on Spanish Trail Road is slightly different than, you know, the effects of Spanish Valley Drive, these are, you know, just as close to the commercial district as anything else. There kind of would add some of that transition zone from, you know, where semis are parking at the Shell Station and there's, you know, storage lots. So I, I, I'd see this location as appropriate, especially with the, the road on the Spanish Trail side of the property. I think that Bill would have to have the, the ultimate say. I don't necessarily think that's this body's job to say, you know, where, what's appropriate to build. I think that's a discussion for the property owner and our flood plain manager. And also back to the point of the location of this one, this is an area that we've identified as a node for growth and, you know, potential business. So in terms of impacts to the neighbors, I think we've already kind of been kind of pretty open that this is an area that's been identified for change and growth and, you know, potential childcare centers or coffee shops or whatever. So I think change is imminent at this, this big intersection that we have here. And to the question of. You know, because somebody once upon in their time, once upon a time in their life took advantage of a community rebuilds opportunity, I don't think that they're like, you know, taking an oath of poverty from then on out. And I think that opportunities that have been given to the rest of the community should also be given to them. So I, I don't see the fact that this is a community rebuilds existing structure as, you know, disqualifying them for the other opportunities. So with all that in mind, I am supportive of this project if it is that kind of tiny home, roll in, roll out, you know, smaller kind of permanent footprint. And I, I do like that it is only four sites. I think that before there might have been.
Seven, I think. That's what I thought. I thought it was, yeah. It was on the other side. I think the, wasn't the thing was on the other side and then there was three more sites on the, like where the west side of that driveway is, the way they had it oriented, I believe.
I, I think this is a smaller community impact than when with the first time we saw it. And I do appreciate the comments about the shading and the, or the. Is that the, what do we call it? Like not just a fence, but it could be plants or whatever, the, the.
Barriers.
Screening, screening, thanks, great, great. So overall, I support those project moving forward and coming forth with a full application.
All right, and I, I've been a little bit on the fence about this one, but I tend to agree more with Evan's comments and I like that they changed it to Spanish Trail Road. Residents can just cruise out to the highway. And four units. I, I also want to make the point that, that just because we're approving an ITA here, we've, we've definitely approved some ITAs in the past and, and then when we've gotten down to our, uh. Our public hearings, we have listened to a lot of comment from especially neighbors and, and, um, so this is not, it doesn't, this isn't a. General like full guns ahead. This is definitely just the first step in the process. So make that clear as well. Okay. And, and we're also, we are not gonna, um, we'll, we'll decide on, we'll vote on these during our commission meeting. So, so.
Yeah. Are we doing any preliminary straw polls at this meeting or?
I guess, I mean, I guess we could in the past. I was trying to think of what we did.
Yeah, I think in the past, if there was some that everyone kind of supported, it was, we kind of.
That's right.
One little motion that included.
Yeah. So maybe we could go through all of them and then the, the very end of the, of the workshop, just. Yeah. Do a straw poll on each one and then someone can make a motion for the ones that they expect to get a majority support.
That's, that's fine.
I think this kind of might be the straw. We went through a whole of them.
Previously. So we could do, I, I agree with them. I think, I think now's as good a time as any, a straw poll on each one of them. That way we don't.
Yeah, okay. I, I just wondered with, you know, whether the fact that some of the others were getting, that, that might affect.
And, and also as far as this goes, as far as the straw poll, the voting goes, we are, uh, Commissioner McCurdy has recused himself. Commissioner McGann is absent. So we are only down to five voting members. Uh, we still need a quorum for each, uh, thing to pass. That means that four of us would have to, uh. Vote for it for a tip.
So is Mike recusing himself from?
From the whole, yeah, under the recommendation of the county attorney. He, he is, yeah. From voting on all of them. Yeah, that's correct. Yeah.
So I just wanted to pop up here. This was the application for the last time she has submitted this work.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
That's the same.
Okay.
The next one was just south. Can we choose it?
Did you want to vote on each one as we go, Jacques?
Oh, yeah, actually, yeah. Okay. Yeah, we did. So I'd say, so on, on the first one that we saw, the one, um, yeah, not this one, but the one previously. Uh, just a quick straw poll. Show hands for all those who support the project. Okay. And, uh, a straw poll. All right, we, we can go on to this.
Just the south, um, truce it. You kind of had discussion about it already. I'm not sure if I can answer any questions or.
The, the ADO mark on this map is not currently.
It is there.
It is there.
Is, is it, is it occupied? Is it residence or dwelling?
I think so. There's quite a few cars there.
Okay.
That, I mean, I'm just, just, you know, obviously anecdotal.
It was under construction. The last time I paid any attention to it, it could be finished.
Okay. Got it. And again, remind me of how, how these four sites were, were they RV sites or?
No, I, I think it was tiny.
They were, okay. This was, yeah, I, I looked at them all. Okay. Okay.
Um, with them being screened and behind the primary residence and being adjacent to another. Project that I was supportive of, I'm leaning towards supporting this one as well.
Yeah, I, I, I feel similarly.
And I guess my, my comments on the previous one, right, about this one as well. Okay.
Anyone, anyone else?
I feel the same way as I did on the last.
Okay. All right. I'll take a quick straw poll. Others in favor of, uh, approving this one? Raise your hands. All right. We can, uh, move on to the next one.
So I have a couple of comments about this or. Um, what's concerning to me about this one, this, this property just sold not very long ago. Um, it was on the market and it just sold. There is already, there's an RV with a full staircase going up to it. So somebody's already living in an RV there, maybe not, but. They, they, they seem fairly entrenched. Um. What's bothersome a little bit about this is, so for example, I have some friends that live just down the road, the Hirschfields and. Next to them is a tiny home community that's overnight accommodations. And then it's like one home and then this. And it's just again, kind of going back to, to what Kevin said, like a hodgepodge and it really does affect those communities like the Hirschfields and their neighbors. I mean, it is. Really unpleasant for them. You know, they have people coming and going. Adjacent to their house at all times of the night. They've done the best they can to put up a barrier, but. It's, it's just a real, it does affect neighborhoods. I'll, I'll just state this. So yeah, I won't be voting for this.
Um, I guess I'm, I'm sort of on the fence of, on this one. Um, I mean, I, I haven't. Yeah, I don't know people who live immediately next door, but you know, this is quite a bit closer to town. It's got a lot of higher density stuff very close to it. Um, and so I, I guess in my mind, I, I was thinking it did, you know, just barely make the cut for. Support.
And, and this one looks like it is RV sites, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm supportive of this one also, and I'm aware of also the problems that the Hirschfield property shares, but he is sharing a driveway with the. Overnight rentals that are neighboring to him and one of his options would be to extend a fence on his own property line and come in. To a driveway that doesn't share with the tiny homes next to him. So I understand, but I. I think he's got options to get away from that. I don't know that I'd use that as an excuse against this one.
Well, I'm just trying to point out that it's, you know, it's just, we have residential and then also an overnight and then resi-, you know, it's just. It's really cutting up that, that neighborhood.
And, and just to clarify a little bit, I, I, I just imagine that when we do go to looking for areas of the valley that. Might be appropriate for increased density, this would be near the top of the list just because of its, you know, proximity, proximity to, to major roads and, um. To, um, to, to the city. So. And, and into a lot of stuff that's already zoned commercial, you know, very close by. So I, 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 I do, I mean, I, I think Trish, Trish makes good points and I, I think I'm very. Close to agreeing, but maybe not quite there on, on this.
I, I didn't take debate in high school. I didn't really, yeah.
And, and I, I too feel like this is, this is on a major collector and it's. I, I'll be interested in hearing community comment when we get to that point, if we get to that point also, but I think I'm okay with this at this point. So any other comment on that, Evan?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it is very close to that commercial zone there and there's some commercial on the other side of it. So just as much as the, uh. Residential district being cut up, the commercial district's also cut up. So there's that stuff to the. So it, it does to me kind of feel like a bit of infill there. And so I would be supportive of an application for this project.
Okay. All right. Straw poll on this one. Others in favor? All right, great. Thank you. Uh, and we'll move on to, um, Mr. McCurdy's.
So my question is, is the only access to this via Arnell Lane? Yeah, uh, that's tough for me. Um, I agree, like the property's kind of. A great property for it in the sense that it backs up to commercial. My concern is the access. That's a really small road. Through a really quiet neighborhood and that's a big difference. It, it'd be one thing if it were a few, but it's, it's a lot. And so I'm. I'm really concerned about the impacts to that neighborhood.
Um, yeah, well, as usual, Trish raises legitimate points. I, I think for, for similar reasons to the, the one, the previous parcel. I am inclined to support this. I think it's, it's surrounded by higher density things. I, I think when we go to revise our zoning map, this will be an area where. We're just, I'm gonna, we're likely to allow higher density in a lot of places. Um, and may, maybe this was already discussed, but I, I just did want to say that, you know. You know, Mike definitely did not lobby me on this. I didn't even know it was on the agenda until earlier this morning. I saw it. So, um. I don't, I want to make it clear, I'm, I'm not playing favorites.
Yeah.
Though, though commissioner, but I, I think I've, I think I have been tried, tried to be pretty consistent with, with all of these in terms, in terms of the ones that I think are. You know, too big an impact to a largely residential neighborhood versus ones that are, you know, closer to commercial development or other areas of higher intensity. And, and I think this meets, meets that standard.
Bill?
Yeah, it, it's surrounded by this type of thing. You know, the backside of the property's got six or seven of. They might even be illegal on the property behind it trailers already. Just down the road is the, um. Trailer park that provides employee housing for, I believe the Red Cliff. Lodge, I'm not sure, but it's loaded. It's probably got eight or 10 trailers in it. So it kind of fits in with what's going there. Uh, I'll, I'll say the same thing. And Mike didn't look for my support on this one where either I, I think I've been in support of everything we've brought forward today. So.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't use the term surrounded. There's, there's areas around it, but there's definitely some very quiet parts of that neighborhood. So I wouldn't use. I wouldn't, I wouldn't use that word.
Yeah. Yeah. I took the opportunity this morning to go out and do a site visit and check, check out the area and, and drive. Never driven down, uh, Newton's and. It's crazy. I lived in this county for 25 years and there's still parts of it that I, I've, I haven't seen. Always surprises me, but I, I. Yeah, I, I like the, like the previous one. I think the areas, it's a good area and it definitely fits the character of a lot of it. I. With like Trish, I think the only reticence I'd have on this at all is that it is down a, a quiet road. So. My thinking is that I'd, I'd be inclined to push it forward and then pay special attention to neighbors' comments when we get to the. Public hearing part. I think that would be, i- if, if there's, you know, enough people like, like we've had in previous, uh. Applicants and public hearings that, that voice their concerns about it, then I, then that would, that would, that would probably sway me in that direction. But. As far as moving it forward, I think, uh, yeah.
I, I just want to say one, one more thing in response to Trish, since she's being so eloquent, you know, making me feel bad. Um, I, I do, I mean, it's all. You know, when we have these discussions about zoning, you know, they tend to follow patterns that recur over and over again. And. Some of those patterns I, I think are bad and some are good. And so a pattern that's always ignored me is someone, I, I won't name names, but people who used to be in our P and Z department will say, you know. No matter what's proposed, someone's going to complain. And that's true, but it's, but you know, they're, but the conclusion they draw is okay. So we just ignore citizen complaints, you know. Which I, I think is, you know, the wrong response. I think we try to minimize citizens complaints and I, I think some, some projects produce quite a lot of opposition. And bad impacts. Other projects produce a smaller amount and I, I think our job is not to get the negative impacts down to zero. That's impossible. But I think it's to choose sites where the negative impacts are lower than the, the alternatives. And. I, I do feel like this one, you know, maybe because of, you know, the surrounding uses and proximity to the highway and, and a major collector road. Um, I, I think this is one of the places where the impacts are not zero. As Trish points out, but I, I think the impacts here are lower than a lot of. Al- alternatives. And so that, that's why I'm, I'm just supportive.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, I think I'm in line with kind of Jacques and Kevin and the others with this. It's, uh. Um, when we have the, the highest use zoning, the highway commercial directly budding up to the rural residential, it's, it's. Kind of tough. And so I think that, you know, it looks like there's what, four driveways on Arnell between, um. The corner of Milk Creek and, and the, the lot there. So. Um, I would be interested in hearing from the neighbors on the, uh, public hearing phase. Would encourage them to move forward with an application.
All right. Call for a straw vote on this one, on favor of the application going forward. Okay, thank you.
My arm is not broken.
I understand Trish.
So this one, I, I'm gonna say, one, I've already heard complaints. About this property. This sold not very long ago, maybe four to six months ago. Um, the people have done quite a bit of. Uh, uh, people have been complaining to me about the property already. So I'm really concerned. I'll just tell you that. They've done quite a bit of work and, and you know, the county did quite a bit of work on that drainage after the floods. And they came in and like pushed all this dirt and stuff back up against the creek. Yeah, they, uh, anyways, which, you know, inevitably i- i- it's rough when. People are manipulating those stream banks, you know, on their own accord. Um. I would imagine that this is gonna have a ma- major impact on Beaman. And so I, I would assume. And Beaman residents already complained about the traffic up and down that street. So they should get ready because those people are gonna go right onto Beaman to go out. Um. I just, I just think that's really high density in a floodplain. I mean, flat out a floodplain. And it's really concerning to me. And the, these folks aren't from, I can't remember where they're from, but they don't live here. You know, they bought the house. It's sitting vacant and. They make some money.
Um, yeah, I guess I'm not in favor of this one for, I, I think a simpler and predictable reason. If, if you've been listening, I, I think it's, you know, it's. It's just a bunch of typical Spanish Valley rural residential zoning. You know, there's nothing about this parcel that makes it seem. You know, like a place where we would want to increase the density of zoning beyond, you know, we've already done on the zoning map. Um, you know, it's pretty far south. So I, I think to me, this is of all the ones we've considered, this is kind of the easiest call and not being in favor of it.
Yeah, I was, I was a little on the fence about this, but I agree with you. I think it is the, it was the one that I was most against and, um. I, I do, I agree with Trish. I think Beaman's gonna take a lot of, a lot of traffic hit on this and a few people who live in that area, um, nice old, nice old road and it. Is mostly rural residential and it's quite a bit further from town than any of our other applicants, but actually by, by, by a long, a long ways. Um, I. I'd consider it, but I think I'd be more inclined to, to deny personally.
So my last question before we, so at one point, Jenna, and I can't remember where we kind of sit on the Hewitt Development on Desert Road. I mean, we kind of sent him away and said, come back. And so.
I did not hear after that.
Okay, you haven't.
When I send out the commission decision letters, it includes a link to the YouTube to specific locations.
Yeah.
Never heard back. Okay. Cause I just feel like, you know, anyways, I guess he was in the front of the line or, you know, so I, I, thank you.
Yeah. Any other comment on this one, Bill or Evan?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I definitely think this one's starting to get a little far south and, um. It is, uh, a lot of units, you know, we looked at a lot. Today that had, you know, requests for like four units. And, um, I see that as a lot smaller impact than, what was this, 15? Um, and so, uh. It's hard for me to push for this one. Um, I probably wouldn't fight too hard against it if it came up, but if there's not a lot of support from the rest of the commission. I don't know if I'm necessarily going to go to bat for it.
Anyone want to make a compelling argument for it? Mace Way, some of us.
I, I don't know if it's an argument, but the reason we put this ADO together was to bring in more of these and that's the bottom line here. And. Yes, there's impacts in every neighborhood that these get stuck in. So. This one as well as some of the others and pushing this forward. Uh, I think we've got to look at providing the places for these people to go that we were trying to meet that need for. So. This one certainly would do part of that.
Yeah, I, I agree it would and it is 15 units. I, I, I tend to feel like the bigger ones like this kind of belong out in like the highway corridor or somewhere. You know, that aren't as impactful to neighborhoods. I feel more comfortable passing smaller ones in the smaller areas, but, um. You know, it's, I mean, it's a good point though for sure. So that said, uh, all in favor of our last applicant? All right. So I think we have a good idea about where we're standing on all these. Um, anyone else have any other comments and we'll decide, we'll vote on this during our meeting. We can, we can have some further discussions if we, if need be at these.
Um, just to recap that straw poll was, did we have any that had?
It looked like the third and the fourth applicants, the, uh, Kevin O'Neill and the Mike McCurdy applicant.
It looked like the third and the fourth applicants, the uh Kevin O'Neill and the Mike McCurdy applicants had uh four. Favorable, uh.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the first two uh had three. Um, and the last one looked like, yeah, less chance.
Is there a? I don't know if there's much value in waiting till we have, uh.
Full commission?
Yeah, or if it's.
What we, I, I'm not sure either, what, what is our timeline, I guess?
Uh, after applicants are notified of the decision tomorrow, they have three weeks to submit a full ADO application. Um, and that timeline is based on the required uh development review team review, as well as submission to the attorney for thirty days review. And then also meeting those public hearing deadlines prior to the end of the pilot program at the end of the year.
So there's no deadline right now, I mean, we could theoretically wait on those that we're short on, let Mary weigh in on it.
Well, I don't know if skipping a meeting would beat those deadlines, moving the decision to the next.
Could we, if we vote on these, and then uh if a commissioner wanted to bring a couple of them back up, and we have a full commission? Could they bring them up at our next meeting? Anyone, Steve?
So as long as, so anybody that's on the failing side of a vote can't bring something back?
Or, but if, but a, say a commissioner could, like if Mary uh is not here, and she said, you know, I missed it, I feel really strongly about these, these particular ones.
That or, that or somebody in the majority has that ability, but the applicants are informed of the decision of the commission of that day, so. It is notable, uh Commissioner McCurdy is not participating because of.
Yeah.
The obvious, uh, the obvious reasons, so your full commission would be adding Mary, and I guess if Mary was so inclined, she could. Uh, indicate to the. Uh, I guess she could indicate to staff that that's one that she would uh feel comfortable seeing, or you guys could readdress it and and have the conversation.
Yeah, I, I, I agree that it would make sense to have, I mean, I, I, I think the two in question, you know, I'm not in favor of. I, you know, I hope they fail, but I I think in general, if, you know, if something has four votes. Right commission, then it should pass, and we shouldn't let it fail just for technical reasons, like, you know, something being absent, so. I thought, if it's possible to find a way for her to weigh in, you know, in case if she supported them, then I think that's the way to go, so. Okay.
Pass the ones that are passed, or support now, and then.
Yeah.
The others, the option for Mary, the option.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, you know, I mean, Mary, we all know Mary does her homework, I'm sure she'll get the meeting and and. Figure it out if she wants to.
We should go ahead and hold a vote on those tonight, with the potential that they fail.
I think we should hold a vote on them, yeah.
Okay.
On the, on the ones who, straw poll close, that three in support.
I think, I think so, yeah.
Make it even with Mary's change.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah.
What, what do you guys think about that?
Yeah, I guess another thing, you know, we could make a motion to. You know, appro- approve the ones that already have four votes, deny the one that's definitely not gonna get four votes. And then someone can make a moment to just postpone decisions on the other two, we could do that as well. What do, what do you think would be cleaner?
I, I think that would be clean enough.
Okay.
If I could just ask a question.
Yeah.
How would that work with the timeline laid out on the underscore and the pilot program expiring? Yeah, because of the public hearings that the.
Right.
Application requirements are laid out based on that.
And so there's no, like, if you have to wait an extra two weeks, there's no, um.
When's the expiration of it?
Maybe years.
Yeah, and we have it set up so that the commission meeting is on, I think, the last meeting of the year.
So we could also next week just extend that deadline back a couple of weeks, that would be a pretty simple change to the law, I think. Again, I, I just saw, even though I, I'm not in favor of the ones we're talking about, I, I don't think they should fail just on technicalities, so. I don't know.
If, if there was a year, I don't have the, I don't have the timeline broken down, if she. I don't know if there's the ability to do a special meeting next week. All right.
And I know Mary's traveling, like, she's, she's not gonna be back for a while, she's, she's on an extended trip back east, so she's not gonna be. Yeah. So, why don't we, I, it is, it's um, it's three thirty, so we have another uh workshop that we have to get to here. Can we, I think we have it mostly figured out, we can continue the discussion during our action item.
And, uh. I was just also, I mean, we do have another commissioner that could potentially weigh in on one of these, on the two that are in question. Not voting on their own, but the other projects that wouldn't necessarily have any effect on whether there's passed or failed.
Correct, the idea is that we wanted to avoid the perception of a commissioner choosing to vote against a project, so that there would be more. Uh, space for the other project to go forward, once that project is resolved and that. Conflict of interest doesn't continue to exist.
So maybe we could just reorganize the way that they're voted on, and hold the vote on theirs before there's any.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I would still.
It's probably best to, to continue to have most. Okay, thank you, Jenna, I will uh end this uh special workshop on the ITA for our ADO. Ordinance, and I will now open our special workshop for our mineral east state pill and rural healthcare sales tax allocations. For calendar year twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so this is something Chris has always done, so it was a, a learning process for me. Especially with pulling the different uh data to do. Actually, I'd say the actuals from twenty twenty-two.
And I appreciate the time and energy you spent on it, I know I talked to you a few times last week, and you were very engaged in this, yes.
Um.
Your chart looks really good.
Thanks, I more or less took somebody else's chart, and I updated the colors and. Bolded different areas, and so the. Maybe most colorful chart that you will see is just building off of what we've had in the past. That shows the um allocations that have been approved. Um, as well as a small area that will show the request for this year. Um, with folks like EMS and Canyon Lambs Care Center, they're nice and easy with the percentage. Um, but then there's other ones in here that are a little more complicated to sort out, because. Solid Waste, for example, requested six hundred and fifty thousand, and so they get a few different. Or you all have the ability to give them funding from a few different lots of money. Uh, so trying to get to those exact numbers can be a little trickier. Uh, but I'd say the, the big differences for what is before you this year from last year. Is that the school district requested fifty percent of the state pilt this year. Um, I know they did the same back in, I wanna say twenty twenty-one. Um, but the commission has historically chosen to stick with the twenty percent of state pilt. Um, so if you were going to look at changing that this year, would of course have to figure out. Who else's state pilt allocation that could uh chip into, and then um. The other big one would just be solid waste, and I think from observing over the last years, few years. It's, it's a tricky one, um, to get them to a certain amount, so. Outside of that, I'd say things are pretty standard, but Kevin, do you have a question?
Um, I, I guess I'd add a comment, and maybe a, you know, a suggestion for how we could do this pretty quickly.
That's.
As, as long as I've been on the commission, we've really just tried to repeat the percentages from next year, you know, we haven't really fiddled with these applications. And um, I'm inclined to continue to do that, and so the, the two requests we've gotten to sort of. You know, not to stick with the status quo, one, one Mallory already mentioned, you know, the, the pill request, and, and I think, you know, we should discuss that. And decision on tonight, but I think the um EMS. You know, they're, they're funded from a variety of sources, and one of those sources is TRT, which we typically discuss. Um, in a di- different meetings, you know, that's part of a much larger part, part of money, so I, I think we should. Um, you know, postpone that, and then it gets some future budget discussion when we're. You know, maybe discussing, you know, TRT dispers- disperses more generally, or just the general fund, we could throw. Throw that in, you know, their request for increased funding, because it's not that. I, I think we can just, the, the other parts of their requests, um, I think we can just bring across, and then the variable will be the. Um, like, you know, on, on the sheet right now, it has four hundred thousand dollars from, I'm, I'm assuming TRT mitigation budget. And if we wanted to make that five fifty, that, that would be a discussion for a, a, a different part of our budgeting process, not tonight, because it's not related to any of these things.
So to make sure I'm understanding correctly, uh, solid waste and who else gets the TRT rec board? You would not determine their, I mean, rec. Rec is already pretty. I, I don't know if that's something.
No, no, I think, I, I would, I, I would say that, so. What do we, so we've typically given thirty-five percent to solid waste and.
No, no.
Sixty-five to recreation, I mean, that's the historic split, right?
For TRT.
No, for a DWS appropriate mineral lease money?
Yes, yeah, those are all easy, I know what you're saying, with the TRT mitigation for solid waste and the. TRT rec film convention for recreation.
Oh, I, I see, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I, I think I would be inclined, just because TR, TRT is a. But it doesn't logically belong in this meeting, you know, we have other meetings where we discuss the RT, and the only reason we're discussing a little. Small percentage of TRT is because there are organizations who also get pilt money or mineral, mineral lease money. And I, I just think, you know, we should have that commerce, you know, they're, they're battling it out with other places where we might spend TRT money, and um. We should have that discussion, you know, in that context, not this.
I, I personally think that's a very good idea, um, and there is an agenda action later for. That TRT piece, um, and that's just probably also off of what we've done in the past, but I, I don't think that. There would be any harm in doing that, they might not, well, not knowing right now, but it's a difference.
It's, since the healthcare sales tax came on, we haven't been giving EMS TRT, have we?
Yeah, no.
No, we haven't. And then, do you mind, just for the mic, can we, for the YouTube, send your representative?
Okay, you're, you're right, so there's only one organization with TRT.
Yeah. Uh. Uh, we, we've gone with the strategy of, of putting all the TRT eggs in the sheriff's budget.
Right.
To offset property taxes, because there's other funding available for EMS.
Just to be clear, um, I, maybe I'm not reading this right, but we did put a specific request in. This year, a one-time request for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Was.
That's what Commissioner Walker was talking about, let's, let's decide on the extra stuff later.
But it's not.
But in your present, in your presentation, did you identify a state pill request, or just the sales tax?
No, sorry, you're, you're correct, so typically the way we request this is we just simply ask for the amount equal to, however you wanna make that difference up. The counties traditionally use pilt as was, as was the recommendation here, so. We're, we're totally comfortable and, and understand that, you know, it's a different year, having to understand the budget, someone else managing that, and. Um, you know, I'd love to bring up a request for TRT funds later at a different meeting, if that's more appropriate, or in a different setting, but. That hundred and fifty extra we request, I, yeah, I'd like to be able to continue to ask for that in some way. I understand it may not be part of this allocation, but.
Okay. Yeah, and just to clarify what I was saying, I, I mean, I think Liz is right, that um, that request for one fifty is, is not. In this table that I'm looking at, and so I wasn't referring to it, but I, I think my remarks do apply to that, I, I think. Requests that are, you know, essentially coming out of our, our general funds, because as the TRT mitigations like that should be discussed in that, that context, so. Um, so I, I guess to modify what I'm proposing, I, I think we, I would propose approving everything here. Except for the, I think the solid waste is also requesting a hundred and fifty beyond what they typically get. EMS is requesting one fifty, and I would want to defer those discussions that have them in a large.
But, but this is showing EMS receiving fifty percent of the pilt.
Yes, and that's what they've received before, and so that's what I was gonna clarify is, is that the money that would cover your one hundred and fifty thousand dollar.
The one time.
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah, but this fifty percent wasn't in the request from last year.
It's in the request, not specifically stated as coming from state pill.
Okay.
Always because of the split between the healthcare dis- district and us. You know, they get fifty-seven, we get forty-three, we have always requested and received from state pill. If you look over the last several years, the difference to try to make up for what they get more of in the sales tax than what we don't get. Does that make any sense? That wasn't very clear.
Okay, I think so, but, but, but I think what I'm, so what I'm proposing is that. We, we were, you know, we, we approved some funding now, but for some organizations, namely EMS and solid waste. There might be additional funding we approve later, but at a minimum, we would approve fifty percent of state fills and forty-three percent of rural. Sales go tax.
And that's, that's exactly what we have done up to this point, the hundred and fifty thousand is a one-time request. Now it's something we will be looking for next year in.
Right, and, but it's, we, we just have to look at all the other one-time requests and how our overall budget numbers are doing, and so. It, you know, just, you know, the same way, I don't like having piecemeal discussions about zoning, just like, you know, it's, it's not good to have piecemeal discussions about. The budget, except, and most of the funding streams we're talking about here are kind of discreet, and, and so. And I'm just, so the, the thing I've been blabbing on about is the, the part, you know, the stuff that's gonna come out of TRT or wherever. And that, that belongs in a larger budget discussion, so.
So, but what about, what about addressing the school's request for a higher percentage of the pill?
Yeah, that we, we should have that discussion tonight.
I guess.
Just, just for the YouTube audience, could you folks introduce yourselves, just so they know who you folks are?
Yeah.
Elizabeth Tuck, Chair of the EMS District Board.
Annie Smith, Executive Director of Grand County.
Thanks, listening to just, in case they don't recognize the back of your head.
Yeah, that, that makes sense to me too, Kevin, if that, yeah. Okay. So I think the next step then would be to consider the school board's request to um. Get fifty percent of state fill instead of twenty.
Traditionally, they've gotten twenty, it looks like, each of the last couple of years, and the other, the other entity that gets pilt is the rec districts, getting thirty percent of pilt.
So you'd be looking at reducing.
Reducing rec.
US pilt or rec pilt.
Right.
Or a little of both.
Yeah, and potentially making. Making up for it with general fund money or something, so I, I guess I'm inclined to say no, because, you know, ul- ultimately, if we, if we give some. If we allocate more s- pilt, state pilt to the school district, then unless we wanna cut the budgets of these other entities, we're gonna have to make it. Uh, make up, up for it out of general fund many, money, which means eventually, you know, a property tax increase, or it might happen sooner. But the school district has its own taxing authority, so if they want to increase their budget by a hundred thousand dollars, they can do that by increasing their tax rates the same way we do. So I, I tend to think that, you know, schools are super important, but they have their own budgets and their own. Tap property tax rates, and it, and it's best to fund them that way, rather than mixing things up.
I very much agree.
Okay.
All right, so it looks like um, what Mallory's got here is kind of what we're looking at. And then taking off the, any of the TRT allocations right now and, and. Uh, addressing that at the appropriate time.
Yeah, and then making, I mean, Gabe, Gabe's right here, so, and Mike, or. You know, we, we can remember that, you know, when, when we have. You know, we're gonna give various other requests for additional money that's, you know, beyond what, you know, past funding levels are, and, and I think we should consider them. But we should consider them all together when we know what our overall bottom line on the budget is and things like that.
So we're taking off those two additional asks, even though one isn't on there, EMS and the solid waste district, and then.
Well, no.
Sorry.
It would be taking off the ask of um.
School district.
School district.
Right, and, right.
For TRT, or taking off the request for solid waste and rec.
The. The only thing with the, I, I can definitely appreciate the. Idea that the school district is their own taxing entity, and that if they need more money, they can raise their taxes. But the reality of that is that they're essentially taxing the same citizenship. And if we have the ability to. And if we have the ability to to give out some state funds that would prevent them from having to raise their taxes, um, there could be some benefit to that as well, so. I think you're right that it's cleaner, that if they're running their budget, they should be um, raising their taxes, but the the sting is going to hit the taxpayers more than if we spent leasing money on it.
Right, but if we spend leasing money, more leasing money on the schools, that means less leasing money for other entities. And then unless, and I don't think anyone's proposing to cut their budgets. So that means more general fund money from the county, you know, property tax money from the county to make up the gap, which means the county would eventually have to increase its property taxes, so. So the the impact on the taxpayer is exactly the same. And I'm just saying it makes more sense if, you know, there's some extra spin, if, you know, in schools it should show up on the school part of the property tax bill and not the county part of the property tax bill.
I don't know if the rec department would raise taxes, or if that would be, if that would be something that we would necessarily increase there.
Yeah, well, no, if you're proposing that, yeah, we we just cut money from the rec rec special service district, and yeah, that, that would be different. I I was assuming, and maybe it's wrong, that we didn't want to cut the these other entities, that we were comfortable with the levels we had have been funding them, but if, but if your argument is, we've been giving maybe a little bit too much money to rec and we should instead send some of that money to the schools, then, yeah. I I just know if I agree, but that makes logical sense, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, do we know what what pelt's looking like this year, because it definitely fluctuates.
You know, I I was looking at one table, and maybe it was federal tilt rather than state, but it seemed to be like on a slow, steady rise.
Really, okay, it wasn't, this was not a lot of fluctuation, I think mineral lease money can fluctuate a lot, but stick to I think might even have like a built-in inflation adjustment in it or something like that.
It was the, yeah, and then mineral leases is mostly what funds uh, rec otherwise.
So I just did some planning around and say, right now, we have thirty percent of state pill going towards rec, if we reduce that to twenty-five percent, we're talking about hmm, like a sixteen thousand dollar reduction.
So it'd be moving sixteen thousand basically from rec to school.
Yes, so just to give you an idea of what we're talking about.
Right, yeah.
Five percent.
Right.
Wait, I'm I'm confused, because I I thought the school's request was to go from twenty percent to fifty.
Right, right.
You know, the rec, if we took from that, get an idea.
We're right, if we were to compromise by, say, just, yeah, one number here.
Okay, five percent, so it would be.
So if we split it evenly between school and rec, it looks like about twenty, that's, yeah.
Not suggesting that, just.
Yeah, I mean, I I think it is a good, I'd be, one of my frustrations with the budget process is I I I think very often we just stick with what we've done in the past, because, you know, there's just so much stuff to worry about, and maybe it's true, maybe we're spending too much money on recreation in the county, but my impression is no, or probably not, I mean, I think the money we are spending is getting utilized and people enjoy it and um, so I I if someone made the case that, you know, that recreation was overfunded, then I I'd be more inclined to think about a shift to schools, but I I haven't heard anyone make that case.
Um, I know it's awkward because they're in the room, but the other entity getting fifty percent of state pilt is EMS, so I suppose you could look at reducing their state pill contribution and picking that up in some TRT mitigation.
Well, if we if we pick it up in TRT, you know, Dennis Awashe, Dennis really just, you know, shuffling numbers on the property tax bill without changing the bottom line. If we thought we should cut the EMS budget, you know, then that would, but I again, I I think they've you know, put a lot of energy into making the case that they need more funding, not less, so.
Oh, yeah, you'd have to come up, please, Andy, thank you.
Sorry.
No worries, yeah.
Andy Smith, Executive Director of Grand County of US. Just one other thing that we worked on quite a bit with Commissioner Bushman out of Paiute County last year, just for you guys to consider additional funding sources, we were able to open up TRCCA, uh, TRCCA taxes for tourist mitigation. So your TRCCA taxes came towards tourist mitigation, including EMS fire, roads, law enforcement, search and rescue. So that was a change we made that took effect July one this year.
That was a legislative change.
That was a legislative.
Okay, great, good.
Great.
Yeah, thanks. I I think it probably doesn't help with Grand County, because I think we use all of our TRCC to fund I think it's debt service on there, I've I've forgotten, but it's something we would have, it's not an optional expense, so it doesn't free anything up, it's always great to have more flexibility.
Uh, I kind of agree, yeah, I think that's a good good spot.
Okay, so then specifically, I mean, we'll make the actual motion at the meeting, but it sounds like there's agreement that yeah, so we're we're going to leave state tilt allocations the same and and not grant the school districts' request, we're going to leave all the other percentages the same. And then for the request for additional money from um, EMS and from solid waste, we'll we'll consider those in in the regular budgetary talks.
And but not rec, because they're carved out of that separate piece.
Yeah, there's TRT going to rec, right?
They get a fifth of the what percentage is that, is it?
Oh, I I see what you're saying, yeah.
Thirty-seven, I think.
I mean, prob, I mean, logically, we we should probably postpone that, because I don't know. Yeah, so we could just not add, do any TRT allocation, just carry carry that forward to, I I I think that makes more sense.
And then solid waste also, is that?
Um, yes.
It is, yeah, four hundred.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm, I mean, we might, just just to reassure them, I I don't think anyone's in favor of giving them less than four hundred, right, that that would be. And so the question is, do we actually want to up that to five fifty like they're asking?
Yeah.
And again, we can have that discussion later.
Okay.
So really quickly, uh, what that will look like in the regular meeting, as you will vote on the res- resolution for the healthcare facility sales tax and use revenues. Um, and then you'll vote on the resolution allocating the mineral lease and state pill allocations. Uh, you'll vote on the selecting secure rural schools election and approving those allocations, but you will postpone item number fifteen, which is the allocations of the transient room tax bodies.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, great, thanks for summarizing, Mallory. Okay, anything else need to be said on this? We have five minutes before our regular commission meeting? Ten, right, ten, I'm sorry.
I I I do have more to say, but it can wait.
Sure, Kevin. It's not just a general comment about budgeting, but it's no- nothing urgent, and I'm sure we all would like to have a break. Okay, all right, I will now close this this workshop, and we will adjourn until four o'clock, when we will have our regular commission meeting, thank you.
Okay, it is four oh four. I'll open this regular meeting of the Grand County Commission. Present our commissioners Kevin Walker, Evan Clapper, Bill Winfield, Trish Adine, Mike McCurdy, and myself, Jacques Hadler, along with our clerk Gabriel Wojtek, our county attorney Stephen Stocks, and our county administrators Mallory Nassau and associate administrator Quinn Hall. Actually, I said this is the Grand County Commission meeting. It is actually the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Regular Meeting, September nineteenth. All present are the same folks I mentioned earlier. I will now open a Citizens to be Heard, and this is Citizens to be Heard for the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District. Do we have anyone who would like to be heard on Thompson? Anyone on Zoom who is here to comment on Thompson Fire District? Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda, which consists of approval of minutes from our August fifteenth regular meeting, as well as ratification of payment of bills. Total bills in the amount of two hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents, total payroll in the amount of one thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-two cents for grand total bills of payroll in the amount of two thousand fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents, and that is the entirety of the consent agenda. I would move to present the consent agenda as presented, approved, the present.
All right.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cat Clapper and a second by Commissioner Hadeen to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approval, raise your hands, and the motion passes five to nothing. General reports, it doesn't look like we have any. Chief Markham just texted me and let me know that he is actually currently on a fire, so I will read the chief's report. You see that he had nothing other than what is on his report. So, recent incidents, August nineteenth, a fall with injuries they responded to in Thompson Springs. August twenty-fourth, responded to a broken foot in Crescent Junction, and on August twenty-seventh, there was a smoke report on I seventy mile marker one eighty-seven. Equipment, all apparatus operational, yearly fire extinguisher inspections completed, and otherwise, heavy vegetation fuel load in Thompson Town. I was just out there, and I can attest to that for sure. Lots of weeds there. Wildland season is not over, even with recent rains. There have been brushfire starts along the whole I seventy corridor, and Engine forty-one has been asked to participate in the Moab High School Homecoming Parade on the twenty-second, and that is all of Chief Markham's report.
I will, if you don't mind.
No, of course, Trish, yes.
I was just, I was there this weekend, too, and it is been cleaned up a lot.
Yes.
So, you know, we did major cleanup there.
A couple years ago, it was, yeah.
And, and we used some money from the Commission's discretionary fund, and, and it has been cleaned up a lot, because there was just some major kind of fire hazards, like within the town itself, beyond, like, wildland.
Definitely, definitely. Yeah, no, that's a very good point. It is definitely better. I was just out there for the, my regular Thompson meeting and noticed it's pretty, pretty weedy right now. So, anyway, okay. Looks like we have no new or old business or future considerations, so unless anyone else has anything to add on Thompson, I will adjourn the meeting. All right, meeting adjourned, and in one second, I'm gonna grab a cup of coffee, and I will start our regular meeting. Okay, it's four oh eight, and I will now call to order our regular Grand County Commission meeting, September nineteenth. All present are the same folks who were at our Thompson meeting, so I'll rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are up to our regular Citizens to be Heard session. Anyone in the chambers would like to come forward and make a comment as a citizen, please come forward, introduce yourself, and you have three minutes to make comment. Anyone in the chambers here for comment?
I'm gonna take a trip here.
Okay, looks like we have, one of our commissioners is coming forward to make a comment as a citizen.
As you may know, Commissioner Mike McCurdy, this is as a citizen, I just wanted to voice my complete opposition, or not opposition, complete support for all housing efforts that we, that we put forward today in a form in a workshop. Just want that to be known, that I love everyone that's trying, and I'd like to see them put their best foot forward, so, thanks.
All right, thank you, Mike. Any citizens to be heard on Zoom? If you are on Zoom and want to be, make a comment, please raise your hand or unmute your mic and introduce yourself. That's it, really, okay. All right, last call for citizens to be heard. Looks like we don't have any at this time. We do have another Citizens to be Heard session at six o'clock that we will get to as soon as we can, once we've finished whatever we're working on. We'll move on to presentations, and our first presentation is our 2022 audit result, and I'll turn it over to our clerk Gabriel Wojtek.
Thanks, Jacques. I'm mostly gonna give way to John Hatterly here from Larson and Company, who heads the team that runs this audit process, and let him give a summary of the financial statements that are included in the packet, but I do want to take this moment and this opportunity to recognize the efforts and collaboration of my staff in the Clerk Auditor's Office and all of their hard work, and, and helping to prepare all the information that the auditors need. Particularly, I'd call out Christie Backus, my longest-tenured staff person, who really, really kind of is full, you know, aside from, you know, getting the bills together, really does a lot and is really instrumental in making sure that this audit, audit process goes smoothly. So, thank you, Steph.
Great, and come on up, John. Welcome, John.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me take some time. All right, Commissioner, we have finalized the audit for the fiscal year 2022. Gabe just told me this was the earliest it's been done, but I told him my goal is to have this done by June thirtieth every year, so that's our goal, that's my team's goal. I actually would like to ask the Commission to reach out to the component units that are reporting in your financial statements, have them get with their auditor earlier and get their information done. I've been trying to work with the state auditor to mandate that all component units are done by May thirtieth instead of June thirtieth. The reason being is all of their information rolls up into your financial statements, and we have to wait to even prepare the statements, because their information trickles throughout financial statements, and so we're really kind of put behind the eight ball when we don't get them until the middle of August to be able to issue statements and get them all prepared. So, if you could do that, I would really appreciate it. We also talked to them. We have, we actually help a couple of service districts, so I know them, and we've been trying to get them to get their stuff done by June thirtieth every year, but if they can get it done by the end of May, would be even better. All right, that was kind of a side note, sorry. So, we've audited the financial statements as of December thirty-first, 2022, and our opinion on the financial statements is an unmodified or unqualified opinion, that's a clean opinion in, in our language. People ask me all the time, why do you unmodify something or unqualify something if it's, if it's a good thing, but we're auditors and we're kind of dorky, so we do things backwards. So, the basis for our opinions, we have certain standards that we are required to follow, both generally set that auditing standards that are practiced throughout the United States, as well as government auditing standards, there is a difference, and we are required to do more under government auditing standards than a traditional for-profit business. And then we actually, we are actually audited, just like you guys receive an audit, we as a firm, we're going through our audit right now, so we get audited by other auditors to make sure that we are following our correct guidelines. Your responsibility for, as part of the audit, is, A, you're, you're responsible for the financial statement, so all the transactions that happen, trial balances, the statements, things like that, both Gabe's team and the US Commission are ultimately responsible for the financial statements that are our financial statements. Another new thing that's now part of the audit report is that you, as a commission group and Gabe's team, if there are conditions or events that arise during the year that would prohibit you from continuing as a going concern, at least for the next twelve months after your audit is issued, then you are required to do an internal analysis to identify the situation, figure out, okay, is this something that we can get over? Do we have enough savings that we can, you know, kind of float through this time period? Is it a drop in property taxes? You know, do we, do we have to implement property taxes? Things like that, and the best example that I could give you is COVID. I hate that we go back to that, COVID is our new timeline, but every, everybody knows, you know, we go back to COVID. In the state of Utah, we were actually very well kind of sheltered from COVID. The governments within the state of Utah actually fared, felt fairly well. However, there were a lot of businesses that didn't make it, and the concern and the issue was, is, or was, is when that was happening, people were having their audits done, so in the spring of 2020, people had their audits done, they didn't address the COVID issue in their financial statements of how is this gonna affect our business? And people rely on your financial statements, so you're gonna send them to banks, you're gonna send them to your bondholders, they require you to have an audited set of financial statements outside of state auditor requirement, and they look at your financial data, they make sure that you're financially healthy, they do a lot more analysis, calculations, things like that, so they rely on that information. And if you omit, or you don't say, hey, there's this potential out there that we're not gonna survive in the next twelve months because of COVID, they relied on your data, and then all of a sudden, you go backwards, and, and then they're out, you know, the bonds or whatever, if, if you decide to fail. Outside of the state of Utah, it was, it was a lot more significant with the governments rather than inside. We audit American Samoa, and they actually shut their borders, so they had no in and out, they lost a lot of tax revenue during COVID because they couldn't export and import, and so it was a major, more of a major issue for them. Point is, is if there are conditions like that that come up, then you just need to do an internal analysis. One of our responsibilities now as auditors is we also have to look for conditions or events in our test work that are related to the county that we feel maybe would be detrimental to you continuing as a going concern, and the first thing that we're gonna do is we're gonna come to you and say, hey, we need your analysis, because you guys know more of the big picture, so we need to know what, you know, give us what your understanding is and how you're gonna overcome that situation. Nothing like that happened, just, it's something that we're now required to report in the audit report. All right, required supplementary information. Just remember that there are sections of the financial statements that do not fall under our opinion on the financial statements, and that is the management's discussion analysis, which always follows the audit report, as well as immediately following the notes to the financial statements, there's a section called Required Supplementary Information, and that is information related to the URS pension, as well as budget schedules. So, those two sections, they're not considered part of the basic financial statements under GASB, however, they require them to always accompany the financial statements, so that's differentiation there. As part of our audit, we're required to look at significant risks, and we're gonna talk about that in a minute. I know that's a horrible presentation tactic to say, I'm coming back to it, but I promise I'll come back to it, this is more relevant at another point. All right, the next report that we're required to issue is a report that we are required to issue because we do your audit in accordance with government auditing standards. Part of those standards is that we have to look at your internal controls. We don't give an opinion on your controls, but we make sure that, A, you have controls, and B, they're functioning. You can implement all the controls you want, but if nobody's following the controls and they're not functioning, then they're not being any good. And I know that we've been down before with Cody Dieter, that talked to you about controls, and we talked to Gabe's team about controls, kind of a, that's one of my soapboxes. I, I teach classes on internal controls, I teach classes on fraud, and I have seen fraud happen in the state of Utah, in, in governments, and so you just need to be aware, and, you know, as you have staff changeovers, if you hire somebody new, if you hire someone from the outside, also from the inside, that brings a whole new set of risks. Not that they're a risky person, but they had, they potentially have a different education level, maybe, maybe a higher level, higher or lower education level, which changes the controls that you need to have in place in any given area. So, just be aware of that. There weren't any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that were required to communicate to you. The next report that we're required to issue is for the state auditor, and this is your compliance with the state auditor compliance guide. The areas that we were required to test this year is your budgetary compliance, your fund balance compliance, compliance with the justice courts, fraud risk assessment, and the government fees and restricted taxes. So, our opinion is also an unmodified opinion on your compliance. So, first, we give an opinion on your financial statements, this is an opinion on your compliance. I just throw the caveat in there that this is not a compliance with the entirety of the Utah Code, it is very specific to the areas that we're required to test. However, we do look at your compliance with, with certain other aspects of the code. One of the things that we're no longer required to test is your three-day deposits to make sure that the money is actually getting to the bank. I don't know why they took that out of state compliance, but I feel like that is more relevant to what we're doing in a financial statement audit than maybe looking at the controls at the justice court. So, we still incorporate those into our audit to make sure that the money's actually coming to the county, it's making its way through the county, and actually ends up at the bank. Obviously, you're dealing with public funds, and so, you know, you want to make sure that those are handled appropriately. All right, the next report we're required to issue is actually for the federal government, and this is for your single audit. It, it mimics the audit report, so I'm not gonna go through the entirety of this report, because it's very similar in language to the audit report. However, our opinion on your compliance with the federal guidelines is also an unmodified or unqualified opinion. And the, the major programs that we tested this year was just the ARPA money. So, out of all the grants that you had, you had about two-point-five million in federal award money that you spent last year in 2022, and the major program that we picked was, was about a million dollars, was the ARPA money. So, just for your information, all right. I'm gonna switch gears to the, to the next letter, and this is a letter that actually stays with you as a commission group unless there's findings that need to be addressed with the state, and, and the reason why this stays here is this is really just communication at the close of our audit, things that we're required to communicate to you as a commission group, not to the general public that typically gets your financial statements. So, our responsibility in relation to the financial statement audit, as well as the plan, scope, and timing of the audit, that's all laid out in our engagement letter, that's why we have you sign an engagement letter. It, it identifies what our responsibilities are, as well as what we're relying on you to provide compliance with ethical requirements regarding independence, so we are required to be independent of the county. So, both myself and my teams, as well as our entire firm, has to be independent of the county, and that responsibility lies with me as the partner. I'm the one that needs to make sure that we are following the guidelines that we have to follow, so that Gabe doesn't have to worry about it. That's not Gabe's responsibility to make sure that we're following our own guidelines. All right, significant risks, I told you we would talk about risks, so as part of our audit, we're now required to communicate to you what the significant risks were as part of our engagement, and this is by no means a reflection of the county. This is not something that you did wrong, that warranted these significant This is not something that you did wrong, that warranted these significant risks. And I'll explain why. Every one of our engagements is risk-based. So everything in your financial statements gets assigned a risk. So cash gets assigned a risk, capital assets gets assigned a risk, revenue, federal grants. Every area gets assigned a risk and that risk might be high and that risk might be low just by the inherent nature of what it is. So capital assets typically receives a lower risk because it's really hard to pick up this building and walk away with it. Or it's really hard to to, you know, or it's easier to consider the value of what you should be recording on your books because it's historical value, or we can look at it in voice and say, well, this building costs this much. Cash, on the other hand, inherently has a higher risk because cash is easy to manipulate and it's easy to misappropriate. So we have to plan additional tests over cash to come to the same comfort level that we do for fixed assets because it has a lower risk. So and then we have overall risk over the whole engagement and those are revenue recognition, cash disbursements, and then management's bias estimates and the ability of management to override controls. So the three of these are kind of the overall risks for the audit and the reason why they're significant is improper revenue recognition. This has always been a required significant risk for our engagement since Enron and Arthur Andersen back in the nineties. So if you guys remember what Enron was doing was they were inflating revenue to make their shareholders happy. And then Arthur Andersen obviously didn't say anything, didn't didn't catch it, both of them imploded. So when that happened, our standards changed that require us now to to document this as a significant risk to make sure that you are recognizing and reporting revenue appropriately. And it doesn't matter what entity type you are, that's a significant risk. Cash disbursements, you're dealing with public funds, the public is is very concerned or aware of how you're spending money. There's a lot of federal grants that you're spending. They have to be spent a certain way. Class B road money has to be spent a certain way. So we we consider that a significant risk. And then management bias and estimates, there's estimates in the financial statements. Over time, those estimates can change and you can actually estimate in your favor that make your financial statements present a better picture of where you're at. But you can also build bias into your financial statement. So if you're describing a liability or a potential litigation or maybe there is a significant disclosure that really based on that disclosure could change someone's perception of the county, you can word that in a way to where it appears favorable to the county, when in reality, maybe it's it's not in your favor. So that's what building bias into your financial statements mean. So with those risks, what we do is we have to plan specific tests regarding those three risks. Additionally, in addition to auditing the financial statements to make sure that there are not misstatements or this material misstatements in the financial statements that would that would really sway somebody who comes in and reads your financial statements. We're not going to sway their opinion one way or the other, rather than this is this is fairly presented. So nothing really that the county can do to change those. Those are always going to be significant risks. We're just required to disclose what they are. I just provide the explanation because I know that that there's been a lot of concerns with, oh, where did these come from and why did we all of a sudden have these? Accounting practices, management is responsible to know and understand what the accounting practices are. Not that we can't help. We expect to have phone calls. There's always new pronouncements that are coming out and that's part of the value that we need to provide to you is kind of coaching your team in doing things the right way. There weren't any difficulties encountered during the audit. I think the only difficulty was really just getting the component unit information. So like I said, if you can reach out to component units and really push them, you know, starting at the beginning of the year. I know a lot of their auditors typically do tax season and so they don't even think about doing their audits until May or June. Well, May or June is a kind of a late start to have it done by June thirtieth. And so we've been trying to push to get those audits, you know, to where your fieldwork's actually being done in March or April. Disagreements with management, there weren't any disagreements. There weren't any any uncorrected misstatements that were required to to report. I think any adjustments that we had. Gabe's team agreed with and posted it with the trial balance. I actually don't even think there were very many adjustments. I think that Gabe did a very good job and he was right in complimenting his staff. It was a very clean audit as far as the county side goes. Things, you know, information that we requested, we received almost immediately. Which is very comforting for me as a partner. It's really frustrating when my staff come to me and say, you know what, we're asking Gabe for this information and he's kind of dragging his feet. He's not giving us those and it's been two, three, four weeks. Then I started thinking, okay, do you not have the documentation? Are you trying to make up documentation or, you know, what's going on? Representations for management, we get a representation letter and it's kind of an open and honest communication back to us that that you're following the guidance, you're, you know, being honest with us, you're letting us know, hey, we have this potential litigation or this potential liability. We follow the accounting standards. Things like that. So then when I'm reviewing my team's work and I'm looking at our opinion, I can feel comfortable with our opinion because you fully disclosed anything that we need to know as part of the audit. As far as findings go, there weren't any internal control findings. There weren't any state compliance findings this year as well as any federal compliance findings. So really kind of a clean audit. Not saying that the county is perfect. There's always things that you can work on and we do talk to Gabe about things that where they, you know, areas that they can improve on. And and we're working to where, you know, things are running smoothly. What I would like to see is that the county approves every year. As long as you're approving every year, then it makes me happy. So we might ask you to do things that, you know, it might be a problem now and we're kind of maybe ignoring that problem because it's not critical and it's not affecting the financial statements, but we're asking you, hey, maybe this year, let's focus on this and then next year, if you take care of that, we're going to ask you to focus on something else. It's just constant improvement. And if you can get to where you're constantly improving, then you're never going to come up short. So anybody have any questions?
Not me. Yeah, thanks, John. Yeah, this is, yeah. And the third time I've sat through through one of these and my time as commissioner and, yeah. Smooth. Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, appreciate it. And thank, yeah, thank you, Gabe. Yeah, great. All right, we are up to department reports and we have one today. That is our Sand Flats Recreation Area Annual Report and we have Andrea Brand, Director of Operations at Sand Flats.
Hello. Alicia, Alicia, how does my I can answer those to you? Okay. This looks like others, but it has a lot of different purpose to the maps and QR codes.
Thanks, Andrea.
Letting you into all different videos and information. So that's new this year. So thank you for the opportunity to come before you today.
Can you turn on the mic just so?
Oh, yes, thank you. Right, we're being recorded. So is that, is that okay? So the Sand Flats Recreation Area. Okay, nine thousand acres of old, old spins and domes rising to the east of the LaSalle Mountains. The Slick Rock Bike Trail is a centerpiece of Sand Flats Recreation Area. It was the first designated national recreation trail in Utah. It was created in nineteen sixty nine and nineteen seventy two. It was designated as a national recreation trail. Of course, we have both motorized and non-motorized recreationists at Sand Flats. We have over thirty miles of challenging four-by-four trails and the BLM has applied for a national recreation trail status for a Hells Revenge Trail this year. So along with Hells Revenge, we have fins and banks. And popular mountain bike trails include Porcupine Rim and the New Raptor Rim. We have nine campgrounds and a hundred and forty-six campsites. So our demographics, we have about two hundred and fifty thousand annual visitors and these include families and friends, both young and old, who enjoy recreating at Sand Flats. Sand Flats is managed partnership between the Bureau of Land Management and Grand County since nineteen ninety five. We are self-sustaining. We operate as an enterprise fund under the county and all of our budget comes exclusively from collective fee monies. And in two thousand twenty-two, we completed our twenty-fourth year of self-sustained operation. So I will just take part of this. This is our mission statement, but in general, our mission is to ensure that the outstanding natural features of the area protected from the adverse impacts of recreational use, provide sustainable public recreation opportunities consistent with the character of the area, provide for public safety and reduction of visitor conflicts, and ensuring the continuation of positive economic benefits to the county and access to the area. Both the BLM and Grand County aspire to utilize their combined resources and authorities to cooperatively improve conditions within the area so as to better serve the public and establish a mechanism whereby users of the area fund management, protection and service expenditures. So this is taken right from the agreement between the county and the Bureau of Land Management. So a number of years ago, Sand Flats was chosen by the President's Environmental Council as the poster child for local and federal government working together to protect resources. So as an overview to the Sand Flats program, we have, as we said, about two hundred and fifty thousand annual visitors. We have an entrance station that's staffed February through November. We have nine trailheads and we have nine fee campgrounds. A few years ago, the BLM did a study and this was about in two thousand fifteen, so I'm hoping they'll do another one. But at that time, they they said that Sand Flats brought about twelve million six hundred and forty to Grand County's operation in in revenue. So total dollars and annual visitation, our visitation has gone up about twenty-six percent in from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-two. And last year, we brought in about a little over seven hundred thousand in revenue. So compared to twenty twenty-two, we are down about four percent. As you may recall, we had a pretty cold spring and this was consistent with the national parks. We were down actually twenty-two percent through March and then about twelve percent through June and now we're only four percent down. So we're moving up. And you may recall, we increased the fees. We got permission to increase the fees. You folks approved it back in December and I went before the Utah Resource Advisory Council. And they approved it in May. And so right now it's ten dollars for seven days of day use. Bicycles are five dollars for seven days. We dropped the trailer fee at the recommendation of our stewardship committee and we we did are not changing the annual pass, but we did get permission to raise that, but that's not being changed this year or next year. And our camping is fifteen dollars a vehicle and that remains the same. So actually this explains it here, but I already went into it. So you can see that the proposed rate change, which is what you may recall, is the annual pass could go up to fifty, but probably not till twenty twenty-five. Our camping could go up to to thirty, but again, probably not till twenty twenty-five or beyond. We are self-sustaining and so we watch what what we need to operate. And so next year, with just the two changes in the day use fees, we should bring in about a hundred and seventy-five thousand more in revenue. So dating operations include staffing the entrance station where we orient visitors, provide safety information and maps. We have four full-time staff, including myself, four to six seasonal staff, and we hope to have two high school apprentices next spring. This was kind of held up because of COVID and not having tough staff. So there's our entrance station again and we also maintain our trailheads. And we provide daily front country patrols of our campgrounds and our trailheads. And then we also do backcountry patrols to promote compliance and safety and assess maintenance needs. And the trail maintenance include, you know, we do this to protect the resources and provide direction. Restoration work is ongoing. The fees paid for trash pickup and removal, they pay for twenty-eight toilets to be cleaned and pumped each year and for our many kiosks and signs and brochures. And also our apprenticeship program, which has been in place since nineteen ninety-five. So other annual contributions include transferring over ten thousand dollars annually to search and rescue. So since nineteen ninety-eight, we have contributed over three hundred thousand to that department. And some highlights at the end of last year, because it came before you in December and then a few more things happened after that. Of course, the sticker vandalism, you might recall. So we compiled some information on that for the Sheriff's Department and wasn't too bad, but it does add up, you know, over two thousand dollars in in those vandalism costs to repair things and labor. I also had some dirt that was stockpiled at the exit to fins and things that came from, you might recall, we expanded that campground at the corner of Potato Salad Hill and Sand Flats Road. So we had some leftover fill, which I had stockpiled next to the fins and things exit. And we had a big depression here where people were driving in and so the BLM heavy equipment operator came up and created a nice road for us there and used a bunch of bowlers we had left stockpiled as well. And so just to let you know, we have, we get a BLM equipment operator about two weeks every year to do projects for us. We pay for all the materials, but we don't have to pay for labor or fuel. So it's it's great. And some other highlights, this is just a list, but as I go through, they're shown again. So you might recall that I worked with the state concerning the Utah State OHV online test. Does it roll that in January? Worked on that back in June of twenty twenty-two, along with Travel Council and Grand County Attorney at that time and Active Trails and Transportation. And our Five Tips for an Awesome Web Adventure video was used, is used on an online test after we did some editing for the state. Again, wintry January, late spring. Effective visitation parts of our trails were not recommended because of the snow and ice. But by February, fortunately, things had cleared up and we did have a lot of volunteers this spring before the season started. We had the Friends for Four Wheeling helped us with some repairs out on Hells Revenge, just some cable fencing. We had the Motorized Trail Committee in Sand Flats. We held the Workday on South Fins and Things and blocked off trails and fixed some fences, blocked off illegal routes. We also had the Red Rock Four Wheelers who came out and helped us on North Fins with a needed fencing project. And then Active Trails of Transportation or Trail Mix, held the Volunteer Workday on Falcon Flow and Pinion, non-motorized trail. And that was well attended with about thirty people. And we also had our Community Volunteer Day that we have every spring and fall where folks earn an annual pass, come work with us for about four hours. So the Jeep Safari was, visitation was was pretty good by then. We had spectacular bloom this year, of course, because of all that moisture. Up at Sand Flats, probably the best I've seen in places in about twenty years. Some other highlights is I participated with Responsible Recreation. And I came to you, you might recall, for the contracts for the videos. We have eight videos right now running on local TV channel six from Travel Council in Sand Flats. I also came before you for the RAISE grant, which you folks supported and we we did very well. We did a debrief a few weeks ago with gentlemen from Washington DC from the Department of Transportation and it's a little small, but anyway, you're rated on eight categories and we got highly recommended in seven of the eight. So I mean, high is the highest you can get. So we had medium just on one of them. And so we plan to apply next year and hope for your support with that and we can bring up that other one and I think we we may get it because there was, they were down to four in Utah. We were part of the four and then they funded two. So so we did, we did very well. Okay, you might recall, the purpose of the project is to reduce the likelihood and severity of accidents along the Sand Flats Road, reduce conflicts between motorized and non-motorized users, reduce traffic congestion congestion and decrease dust in the nearby campgrounds. And the plan is to pave the road up to Porcupine Rim and have bike lanes as well on either, on both sides. I also went, as I mentioned earlier, I went before the Euroback Board, the Utah Resource Advisory Council and got the fee increased past in May. We put it into effect August fifteenth after the state director signed it. Some more highlights as we worked again with Mark Finley, helping him with editing his wonderful videos for Travel Council, Moab's Living Soil video and also the Ephemeral Pools video, which are out on the Grand County. Grand County website, uh, Travel Council website. And those are just some close-ups of the critters in those pools. Um, we're also continuing our application process for International Dark Sky and uh, Park Status. Moab's Festival of Science, which is up at Sand Flats on Saturday night and they had a wonderful um, program with telescopes and they had people from uh, Rangers for Dead Horse, Arches and Canyonlands. And I'm gonna have them back in November, hopefully, because we need to do, uh, we've done two star parties so far and we need to do uh, well, now three County Festival of Science, so we need one more. It's part of our application. Oops. Uh, we just purchased, um, with Your Okay, we purchased a new Yamaha um, motorcycle for patrol. And it's it's great to have that because then we can very quickly go on our trails and do reconnaissance and then come back and do maintenance. Can also, you know, help visitors. And um, we also got a new e-bike for patrol. And then I will be back before you this fall to hopefully get uh, you know, Your Okay on a new um, Commander Max XDP, which will replace our Kawasaki Mule. And um, I talked to Sean and he's very excited in maintenance to take the Kawasaki Mule from us, which is five years old and uh, get us a more uh, appropriate rig now for our trails. And uh, for the rest of the year, um, just this week, the Kestrel Trail, Trail Mix, Active Trails and Transportation will be starting on the Kestrel Trail. I have a map here, looks a little small. It's essentially the green and the pink that you see. It goes from the Falk and Flow parking lot and comes out in campground H. So they're gonna be working on that this fall. That's the extension of the Raptor route to bring them around Days Crack. Um, and then we also will be participating with the BLM on a visitor satisfaction survey for Hell's Revenge Trail. And um, just last week, the Grand County Road Department uh, did put magnesium chloride down on the Sand Flats Road in collaboration with the BLM contractor. And so it's pretty nice up there right now. And that should hopefully uh, take care of us through the fall, we hope. And um, so in summary, uh, Sand Flats has successful partnerships, so so sustainability, visitation continues to increase um, in general, and uh, improvements have been made with the fee monies and grants through the BLM partnership. So any questions?
Uh, you highlighted last year's local volunteer day where they can earn a pass. Do you want to say anything about this year's?
Oh, thank you. We will be having one this Saturday along with um, Active Trails and Transportation's Kestrel, which is from nine to four on Saturday. We will also be having ours at one o'clock. You meet at the Slick Rock Bike Trail and that'll go for four hours and uh,
You can earn an annual pass.
You can earn an annual pass and we will be giving annual passes to the people working on Kestrel Run as well. So yeah, lots of community opportunities to earn an annual pass.
So I I don't remember the exact figure, but I think it was somewhere between one and two hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue because of the change, increased fees.
Yeah, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand, I think, we'll bring in.
Okay, um, what's that going to allow you to do that? Any changes with?
When I come before you folks on Thursday with my budget, um, well, I mean, mainly a lot of that just goes to regular operations, but we will have um, we're gonna put in two hundred fifty thousand in my budget to go toward the Raze Grant. So if we do get it, um, Bill's, Bill Jackson from the Road Department, they're gonna put in two hundred fifty thousand and so are we. That's just some extra, you know, showing our uh, our match. It's not really a match, it's just kind of, we don't have to match, but it just shows how, you know, serious we are and that we have some money to help if there's issues. And then uh, we will be um, applying for a grant to extend, let me go back. Right here. Okay, so we are on this map. There's a purple line and it says one point eight miles. It goes from campground F to campground D. Uh, that is uh, if we uh, we're gonna apply for an RTP grant to ex, to add another trail going down to the uh, Slick Rock Parking Lot, although we haven't really figured that out. I mean, that's an idea right now. I've been talking with Tyson and Maddie at Active Trails and Transportation and my Stewardship Committee members um, about that trail. So we're putting in a hundred and twenty thousand, um, which would be a match of forty percent of the S, we estimate it's gonna be about three hundred thousand. This is not a single track. This would be a multimodal trail that would be about six feet wide and it would be for all, I mean, not for motorized, but it would be for, you know, families pushing strollers, riding bikes, hikers, runners, um, cyclists. So um, that's been talked about for a few years, but we were waiting um, for, you know, the grants. Uh, Active Trails of Transportation got the grant for that um, part that they're working on now, Kestrel Run. And this would be another grant. Now, of course, if we get the grant to pave the road, um, you know, you could say it's a little redundant, but since we don't know which is gonna come through, we're applying for both. And we do have a decent fund balance around six hundred thousand in there right now. So we'll just see. And since we're an enterprise fund, obviously we don't spend it, it just rolls back into our accounts.
All right, yeah. Any other questions for Andrea? Just wanna say thanks. I'd I'd love Sand Flats. I use it all the time. I think it's one of the crown jewels of our county and um, yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Andy. My twentieth year this year.
Twenty years, awesome. All right, thank you. Okay, uh, that's it for Rip. So we're now up to general reports. We're up to commission member disclosures. Any uh, commission members here have anything they need to disclose about anything that's going on in the item, um, on the agenda? Mike?
Uh, agenda item number two, uh, alternative dwelling overly intended to apply submissions. I am recusing myself from uh, that block as I am partaking myself.
Great, thank you, Mike. Anyone else? All right, looks like not. So we're up to general commission reports and future considerations and uh, we'll switch it up and Mike, I'll start with you this time.
It's okay. I know it's been said several times tonight. Uh, I've attended very uh, a few of the budgeting and planning meetings with Gabe uh, and his team, uh, leading them and preparing them. I cannot speak highly enough. Uh, as someone who's walking into a budget fairly new, or the budgeting process fairly new, uh, he's put together uh, exceptional meetings. They flow well. Uh, the information comes across clearly and easily is uh, easily retained. Uh, I cannot speak highly enough of Gabe's work for that. So that's my.
Thanks, Mike. Trish, are you ready?
So I've actually met a couple times with Mark Stillson and we're working on a few, I guess, just bigger thoughts about what needs to be studied as far as water in the valley. Um, and so you'll start hearing about some of those things. We met, I met just with Mark and then also that with Mark and Thomas Lockmore from Utah State, uh, specifically just about water studies. Um, we had a fire annexa- annexation meeting. Um, don't really, I don't think I'll say much more about that. I had a planning commission meeting. I think, I'm trying to think if there was any, oh, just just that um, we have a new chair, which is Bob O'Brien and then Jerry Klaus is our vice chair. And we did go over some properties that are being annexed by the city. And so there's quite a few and that was really interesting. Dan Stenta did a really good job kind of describing, just describing that process and and these, you know, islands that exist basically within the county and city and 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 this idea of kind of cleaning up those islands and and so it was an interesting discussion. Um, let's see, I think that is, no, sorry, two more. Um, I met just specifically with TJ Brewer to talk more fire annexation and just a really nice kind of comfortable conversation and looking at the big picture over the next year or so. And then lastly, the Conservation District, um, we did approve some money for YGP as far as they gave out some money for um, their grow dome and then some money for the Three Canyons Ranch on the Booklifts to do soil testing. Again, I'm working really closely with the Department of Ag to try to get that that ranch into a conservation easement. And so in order to do that, we really need to kind of get that property, get its water infrastructure back in place and um, kind of its grow, the ability for it to produce, be a producer as far as ag back in place. So that is it.
Great, thanks, Trish. You ready, Bill?
Uh, I also also attended the state DNR fire meeting that Trish referenced. Um, I guess the big thing for me that came out of that was just the explanation to the liability that the county holds. Um, whether the annexation process moves forward or not. So even if the Moab Valley Fire Department annexes what they're talking that they are gonna do, there's still these some liability for the county. And basically, our insurance policy, of course, is the state. So that that came out of that and then somewhere in my report also it mentioned, but I also went out to Castle Valley because they did not attend the meeting. Although they were invited, they missed it. And so I updated them at their fire department meeting. And then I was at the UAC meeting in Bryce Canyon a week and a half ago. There were discussions on many things. Compliance with SB one seventy-four was one of those that the county falls under and I believe we're about a year out on that compliance having to be come into place. And UAC has a lawyer.
Sorry, which one is that?
SB one seventy-four.
But what's the bill towards?
It's, oh, I'm sorry, that's towards um, ADO, ADUs. Right? Am I getting that right?
ADUs, yeah.
It's wrapped around um, compliance with the new state laws of housing and density and different things. So they do have a lawyer on staff at UAC and his services to the county are free. So I've already made the connection with Stephen and um, Elise from the Planning and Zoning. Uh, there was some discussion on election integrity there. I've had a little bit of a discussion with Gabe about it and the the value and the importance of the county remaining within ERIC, which is a election registration information center, which allows us to find out if somebody's registered in multiple locations. And so had a little bit of discussion with Gabe over that. There was some homelessness services. There was a discussion on with the rural counties that included President of the Senate Adams and five other senators wrapped around centrally assessed litigation that's going on. That was basically a lot of rural counties complaining to them about the situation that we're all under. And so they certainly acted like they wanted to do something to help us and we'll see moving forward where that one goes. Uh, let's see. At that meeting, we also mentioned the fact that the motion picture incentive was an important one to see that tax credit. Not sunset to have that extended. We also had a discussion with the Commissioner from the Department of Public Safety and the issues with bringing the number one priority of the school safety. So that's where that one went. Let's see, I met with uh, San Juan County regarding the grant application for monitoring wells in the valley. I also met with um, San Juan and Moab Valley Fire working towards their contract for services at the south end of Spanish Valley. The Castle Valley meeting I already mentioned, let's see. We had the property tax meeting with the assessor and the need there to possibly have some explanation to some of our citizens who are definitely um, we're getting lots of comments on that. I think that was a big education for me, especially in that meeting, to come away from some of the understanding there. Really, to me, the biggest thing would be to move towards a yearly assessment for its five-year. I also spoke at the Legislative Interim Meeting in St. George, again, to the benefits of the film industry in rural Utah and economic development and diversification, with again, the request to the state to please consider removing the sunset and extending that tax incentive. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Bill.
Evan? Uh, I met with Cemetery Board. Um, they are having some mower issues and instead of repairing them, we're getting some new mowers for the cemeteries. And there will be some old ones that are getting surplus. Um, they're moving into the budget season and uh, I think the budget will remain similar, so I wouldn't look for any increases from that taxing entity. Um, we, I met with the Sand Flats Recreation um, Stewardship Committee and also uh, went over financials for the previous year and any kind of potential budget changes upcoming year. And there was a lot of support uh, from there, but we also just heard from Andrea and I think she covered all the exciting things um, from Sand Flats. Met with the the Health District and the the big takeaway from there is um, through uh, financial relationship that we have with another facility outside the county so that they can access grant funds. Um, that facility that we have nothing to do with operationally has found themselves in some litigation and in that process, they, the they've, the litigator's done like a shotgun blast and has named us in it as well. And so we're trying to get the Special Service District removed from that, but um, uh, more to come on that. So just a heads up that that's kind, if you, if you hear anything about the the Healthcare District being named, it's it's uh, it should be dropped from that pretty soon. So um, EMS is working on some kind of long-term goals in terms of uh, visioning and what the the direction of that uh, organization in the future. And because of that, the regular scheduled meeting um, today was postponed and we'll pick that up uh, next month in October, which is typically an off month for us. Uh, the only other meeting I think that I have to report on is the the Criminal Justice Committee, uh, Commission. I forget our official title. But uh, we had, that was well-attended and it was nice to see more people in attendance for that. And uh, the Attorney's Office has graciously stepped up to uh, actually put the pen to paper when it comes to mapping a lot of our resources, all of our resources in the county and uh, and then put together a plan and the ultimate goal there is to help uh, identify shortcomings or room for improvement, needed resources so that um, we can ask the state for money. So if it's not in a plan, we're never gonna get it. So we're writing a plan now so that uh, we can have that in place. And that's all I got.
All right, thanks, Evan.
Um, excuse me. Uh, I've been out of town for several weeks, so I've I've not attended a whole lot of meetings, but there's a couple I do want to mention. One is um, budgeting, Budget Advisory Board. I I agree with Mike that, you know, that we're doing good, those meetings are run well, but it it is a large and complicated process and yeah, I I guess I'm just giving a heads up to all you other commissioners that if if there's some item that you think the county, you know, should be spending money on in the future, now's a good time to to mention it. Pretty soon it's gonna be too late. And and similarly, if there's, if there's ways that we're spending money now and you think we should be spending less, um, you know, that it's also a good time to bring that up. Um, if you have preferences about the the structure of the budget discussions, now would be a good time to talk to Gabe or to me or or to Mike. Um, I I would say the default plan is, you know, a lot of, if you've been to these Budget Advisory Board meetings, most of the line items are very routine. Like, you know, we've gotta replace the laptop, you know, there's, you know, this software costs especially here. Um, but there are, you know, a few items that stand out. You know, there's like departments requesting new positions and other big, you know, capital improvement items. And you know, un- unless there's a different suggestion, I thi- I think probably all of those will be sort of collected together and then jump in, Gabe, if I'm saying anything that seems wrong, but could look to like gather in a big men- meeting where we decide, you know, do we wanna fund all of these? Do we wanna fund none of them? You know, I I guess, I guess at that point, we'll have some idea about what the bottom line looks at like on the budget. So that's um, that's probably how things are gonna work out, but if you have suggestions, I'm just, you know, just letting everyone know now that um, you know, the 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 process is a little bit fluid and if you've got some kind of really nifty idea, you know, we might be able to implement it.
And we get CC. And we get CC'd on upcoming agendas and any minutes that
Definitely, yep. Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be, uh, Mike.
I just want to second Kevin's words. Now would be the time, if you have some input. Uh, please feel free and again, uh, get with Gabe. Now would be the time uh to be doing this.
Great, thank you. Um, and then the the second and last thing I wanted to mention is is also related to, you know, fire district expansion. Um, and this is, this is not something that happened in one of the most recent meetings, but I I just, um, I'd been getting some questions recent recently about just, you know, where where does the process stand? What's the overall shape of things? And so I just wanted to give a a summary and if Trish or Bill, you know, have some different point of view, you know, please jump in and say so, but you know, the the, one of the issues being discussed is expanding the district so that the tax burden will be distributed, you know, over the whole county. Um, but that's also rep- wrapped up with, you know, just the future padding, pattern of spending for the fire department. And um, and so I I think you know, that those types of decisions are always complicated. Yes, it's similar like the EMS budget or the sheriff department's budget. I mean, you know, there's always more that could be done that might save lives or save property, things like that. So I I think deciding how much to spend on um these types of, you know, emergency services is always a tricky thing. And so I I think the next step in the process is going to be ha- having a discussion about about those issues with the full commission. So that we could all weigh in and see if we wanna, you know, proceed with the tentative proposal that had been on the table. Um, earlier this month, you know, there was sort of a rush to get that done so that maybe the new tax, you know, taxing structure could be in place by the next tax year. But I I think it became clear that 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 was too ambitious. You know, we weren't gonna be able to get everything done in that time. So that, so my understanding is that we're still on track to have those discussions. We're just gonna have them at a more relaxed pace. So I think, you know, sometime in the not-too-distant future, we should have a workshop, we invite the fire department to come, you know, make their presentation. And we just can discuss as a full commission, you know, what, what direction we wanna go. So so right to you guys. Anyway, and so I I think a lot of you already knew that, but I I think just think for the for the public, just to understand that.
Great, thanks Kevin and welcome back. Um, all right, I'm up. Uh, Trail Mix Meeting on the twelfth, uh, we discussed we're gonna have a, the responsible rec arm is having a climber movie night on Saturday at Star Hall at seven. Um, so show up if you like climber movies, there'll be a lot of um, there'll be some giveaways and a lot of uh back and forth and talking about uh climbing responsibly in the area. So that'll be fun. Um, on the same day as Andrea mentioned, there'll be a Kestrel Run Work Day the T-Cat is gonna put on. And if you do come out and work uh on the trail for four hours, you'll you'll get that San Flats pass, which is awesome. It's also uh Public Lands Day and that's the um, that's the Trail Mix Public Lands Day project. And it uh is a, is a, somebody recreates up there all the time. I'm super stoked to get Kestrel Run uh up and going and 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 riding that. So uh, come out for that Public Lands Day event and earn a San Flats pass and help further that trail. Um, also, uh, another project that's going on is there's a, there's work right now being done in the, it's called the Tooke Springs Exit. So it's a single track that comes down off of the trail that goes uh, I guess, around to the southwest from Tooke Springs. There's gonna be a single track that drops down and uh comes in at Dory Canyon and that's currently being worked on. So that'd be a a great addition to uh our trail system up in the La Salle's. Um, also on the twelfth, uh, I attended the same meeting uh with with electeds that uh Bill spoke of earlier, where we talked about uh the property tax, because we've done so much public outcry about that. And I just uh, we just, just getting better educated about that and talking about how things go. But I I agree with Bill that I think that the crux of the whole thing is just these five-year increments where you just have these huge sudden jumps and it it really kind of throws people and and trying to figure out a way to get on a uh on a yearly schedule would be beneficial. And uh, as a result of that meeting, um, Chris Kaufman is gonna join us after seven today for for a quick discussion where um he's gonna distill some of the things that we talked about and try to um uh, he, Chris was great. He he has a, he has a great uh kind of ten thousand foot view of the whole situation and he will give all of us an update. So any of you guys who feel like you need to be a little um better informed on it and also uh anyone watching the commission meeting, um, should have some good takeaways from that. And let's see, on the thirteenth Chamber Commerce Meeting, um, we had a great discussion of Grand County Mub Infrastructure as we face growth. Um, we also talked about the chambers putting on our, our C elections are this year. So the chamber's putting on a city election debate on October second. Um, so we discussed the format of that debate and uh and potential questions. And then we also discussed the annual Chamber Banquet, which will be on the eleventh this year. So look for uh, for for the banquet coming online. Anyone who wants to purchase tickets to that, it's one of the biggest fundraisers for the chamber every year and it's also a super fun event. Um, also on the thirteenth, uh Thompson TSSD Meeting. Um, biggest thing there is that the uh, the secretary is resigning and we uh had interviews with it with, we had actually two pretty good applicants, which is surprising for Thompson. And uh we ended up hiring Shelley Thane, who was actually a board member currently. Uh, Shelley's gonna do a fantastic job. She's great. Uh, unfortunately, she will have to resign from that board. Um, which she will do and uh that'll mean that there's an opening on that board. So they'll go through the process of of um posting that and then accepting applications for a new board member. But Shelley's awesome, very stoked to have her as a secretary. Uh, and then lastly, I attended a Motorist Trail Committee meeting on that Thursday last week. And the the big thing there was a Utah Raptor State Park presentation by the park manager, Josh Hansen. And that was a, just a it's fantastic presentation of kind of where the parks go and it's really getting underway. There's gonna be a ceremonial groundbreaking on Monday. Uh, that is super cool. I'm super, super stoked to see that park uh going, going forward. And I think it's gonna be a huge uh benefit to Grand County. So that is all I have. Um, before we move on to electric official reports, uh Sheriff Wiggins is going to give his report, but he's also due to present on one of our general business items. Uh, so we, I'll make a time slot for him to give his report at that time. Um, so we'll now move on to, I'll, let's see, uh, Clerk Boytek, are you ready to report?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to, just a reminder that the Budget Advisory Board meetings are are underway as as has been discussed. Thursday is at two PM. Um, I will share agendas with you all. All the agendas are actually post, the draft agendas are already posted um up on our um website. Um, and then also I just wanted to give a heads up to everyone that the mosquito abatement district and the library are, have both sort of started for, um, you know, putting out the feelers and pr- um pursuing the option of going through truth and taxation and increasing property tax, their, their, their property tax um rates um within the allowable amount without having to go on the ballot, which is that, that that's what the truth and taxation means to those who are unaware.
Thanks, Gabe. Um, Stephen?
Yep, we had um the ability to meet with the uh Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, the CJCC. Um, my office is gonna do mapping and and we're gonna help review bylaws. Hopefully for the next meeting, those will be set up to go. Um, we had a development with the CJC. Um, the CJC currently, the director is Andrea Noys and she'll continue to be the director um going forward, but we cover both Grand and San Juan County. San Juan had voted um a couple months back to sever the office and the effective date of that was going to be October first. However, they have not hired a director yet. And so we're likely going to continue helping them on throughout the rest of the year. Our goal is to make sure that there's a seamless transition from Grand County to San Juan and so that we continue to have all the cases continue to be monitored and receive the assistance that they need. So Andrew is going to continue to fill that role. Uh, you'll, you guys will see a contract come back to you because when San Juan decided to do that vote, um, the state took the the funds that normally would be allocated to us. Um, and they earmarked it to give it to San Juan County. However, they're going to have to rectify that. Um, and they're gonna have to make it so that we get compensated for Andrea's time that goes down there. So I wanted to inform you folks of that. Likely, um, it's gonna be the first year that they should have somebody in that position up and running. Uh, but that's a nuance and a change. Uh, we've hired Eddie Cervantes. I know I mentioned that last time. Um, he's now in the office up and running. That's been great because he's been uh covering court and helping out. And it's freed me up to go to some more meetings. Um, I'll leave tomorrow morning for the Utah Prosecution Council. Um, that's done in Bryce Canyon where all of the prosecutors in the state or hopefully the majority of prosecutors in the state go and have an annual convention. Um, apart from that, I was able to attend the clinical safety team with the high school and uh other meetings, but those are, those are the most important ones.
Awesome. Thank you, Stephen. And again, uh Sheriff Wiggins will present before his agenda item. Uh, on to um our, uh, county administrator Mallory.
Yes, sorry, I see Jameson's on. Didn't know he was not joining yet. Sorry, Jameson, you just have to listen a little longer. And one thing to report is I guess Jameson's been eating up a lot of my time, which is actually really great. Uh, it's been wonderful to work with and I think it's um really nice for their willingness to jump into the process, procedure stuff um and have been increasing it. So thank you to Jameson. Um, see, we did the pilt mineral lease. That was awful. A lot of my time. I had the pleasure of sitting in on an agenda item you guys will hear about later with the flood monitoring alert system. Um, I learned so much. It's always hard to attend some of those meetings when it's just a busy day and I might not have um, a lot of background knowledge going into it, but I'm so glad I did because it really, really helps with understanding all of the pieces that are working together or might be working together. Um, let's see, we talked about fire, uh, Spanish Valley pathway, mini committee. We've decided we're ready to move to the next phase and invite other people to a formal committee. So um, we have that meeting coming up. Um, budgets. The survey, we had a workshop scheduled for the county kind of projects, priorities, initiatives, and that will be a discussion at the end. I was hoping to present quite a bit more today, but um it's been crazy. So that will probably be, I won't spoil it, but there is exciting stuff to come there. Kevin spoke of different projects. Um, you all might see a need for or just wanna get on the radar. Um, and we will have that as an option to provide that feedback input. So just be, be thinking of that and I'll stop rambling and.
Thanks, Mallory. Anything to add, Quinn?
Welcome Ben Federgill.
Yeah. All right, yeah. Excellent, yeah. And and um, yeah, Ben, this is, I guess, your second day on the job, right?
Oh, almost, yeah.
Almost. All right. Well, welcome. I'm glad to have you. Yeah, appreciate it. Okay, um, uh, great. Where are we at? Okay. Actually, we had to shuffle a couple of things around. So we are gonna have a public hearing right now. Um, the public hearing is for resolution authorizing and approving the restructuring of the hospital revenue and refunding bond series twenty twenty-one in execution of an amendment to the loan agreement. And uh Mallory, give us just a quick background on why we had to run the public hearing and, yeah.
Yes, um, and there are some folks online who could do this much more justice, but um, a few years back, we did through the county, uh, bond for the hospital for their current project. And that's just so that they could qualify for a better rate. Um, it really didn't affect us at all. We were just kind of a a conduit. Um, and they are not quite done with their project and so they have to do an extension on that bond. So that is what this is for. It won't affect us at all. It will affect the hospital because of course they'll have to pay on the new interest rate. Uh, but this is simply allowing, I I believe until April, but is Alex out? Are you on? Do you wanna kind of save me and give the
I think you're muted, Alex.
Yeah, we can't hear you, Alex. If you uh, you might be muted.
Or it might be a problem at our end. Doesn't appear to be muted, muted. Uh-oh.
Is he frozen?
I was frozen.
Uh-oh.
I don't think he is frozen.
Yeah, we can't, we, so can um anyone else who's on Zoom, like Sheriff Wiggins, can you hear Alex?
I cannot, no.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, so we
Yeah, that was, that was uh
Here the chair, so it's, looks like it's a problem at Alex's end.
Yeah, we can't hear you, Alex. We can't hear other folks on Zoom, so it it appears that the problem may be on your end.
So, uh, maybe while he's sorting that out, I can just add that this was noticed as a public hearing um as required by law and no feedback was received, good, bad, or indifferent. We can't hear you yet. Uh, and so after
Try one more.
Uh, we got it.
I apologize, I apologize. Uh, technology is amazing until it doesn't work, right? But I I appreciate you guys allowing me to uh to join by Zoom and I'm glad I finally was able to get uh some voice here. Um, I think uh, I think Mallory did an excellent job of uh of giving an overview of what is uh, what is happening here. Um, as she mentioned, the county issued a uh bond as a conduit for the hospital back in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, to the tune of fifty million, twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, that bond uh that was used for the construction of the expansion of the hospital uh is set to expire on October first. And there has been some change orders and a a few delays. And so the hospital is asked to uh basically reissue, amend this bond or uh legally kind of reissue the bond by uh, by changing two, two main points. And they're really the only two things that are gonna be changed on this uh, on this new bond. Now the bond will be extended out until a maturity date of June twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-four uh with a optional extension up through um, September twenty-third, so an additional ninety days if needed. Uh, and as well, so the maturity date will change and the interest rate will change from a two-point-five percent interest rate now to a three-point-five interest rate. Um, so other than those two things, everything else uh pretty much stays the same. Once those bonds mature, uh, the hospital will enter into agreement, a long-term agreement with the USDA uh for the long-term financing of the project. But um, we appreciate the county's willingness two years ago to assist the hospital by allowing them to get tax-exempt interest rates, as Mallory alluded to, which is the lower interest rate. And to once again, um, consider what was done two years ago and and uh, and issue this um, this conduit bond for the hospital so that they can finish their project. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that um, I know that uh, that Darcy Stevens from Gilmore Valley was also in the Zoom waiting room. She's uh one of the attorneys that helped drafted the uh, this, these documents. And I know she could answer any further legal questions if, if any of you have those.
Great, thank you, Alex. Uh, questions?
We, we didn't receive a copy in in our packet of Exhibit B and Schedule one and two. With those documents provided, B was the form of, form of amendment to loan agreement.
Um, there is, there is a copy of that available. I'm happy to forward that on to uh Mallory or anybody um, right now, if that's, if that's helpful. I apologize that uh, that uh, that was not provided previously.
That was the only thing, and I think you already covered because it was referenced. Uh, I, in the whereas statements, it was referenced that the maturity date and the interest rate would change. And you've already stated stated when those would go out to. So I think that's the most relevant, important information. So that, that's the only question that I had.
Anyone else have a question for Alex?
Um, sure. So you you mentioned that once Um, sure. So you you mentioned that once in a relatively short amount of time, there's going to be an arrangement with USDA for the long-term financing of the debt. So is Grand County not involved anymore at that point?
Correct. Yeah, my understanding is once the, once this construction portion of the project is completed, that the hospital will directly enter into that long-term agreement with USDA.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Also, Alex, it looks like you have the wrong person on the on the signature line for the county. You had our former chair, Commissioner McGann.
Okay.
Okay.
We can certainly adjust that. And I, as I mentioned, I believe Darcy's even in the waiting room. Somebody can let her in. Well, I'm sure she's following along on the hopefully on the YouTube channel and she hears that. Otherwise, I'll make sure that that gets changed.
Sounds like we do have a Word document version, so we we can make that no problem.
Sorry about that, Alex. We'll we'll take care of it.
No problem.
Bill, did you have a question?
Just I missed exhibits as well. I had that in my notes, but Stephen's already asked. I'd like to see those too, whatever was missed.
Okay. Anyone else anything for Alex? All right, then I guess I should open the public hearing, right?
Yes.
Okay. I will, it is September 19th, 5:25, and I'll now open a public hearing. The public hearing for resolution authorizing and approving the restructuring of the hospital revenue and refunding bond series 2021 and execution of an amendment to the loan agreement. Is there anyone who cares to comment on this at this time here in the commission chambers? Looks like not. Is there anyone on Zoom who is here to make a comment on this public hearing? And that also looks like not, as mentioned by Mallory earlier, we've had no public comment on this one way or the other.
When was that posted for comment?
It was just just when the agenda came out. Is that right?
Um, no, I don't know the exact date, but it is whatever the noticing period is. I I don't know off the top of my head for this one, if it's five days or 10 days.
Okay.
Guessing five. It was like.
Two weeks ago.
Thank you.
Not two hours ago.
Okay, great. And and it looks like there is a request that the policy be suspended and action taken on this resolution today. So I believe that would require a motion to suspend policy, correct? Okay. Great. Thank you, Bill. All right, the motion to suspend policy, take action on this by Commissioner Winfield, second by Commissioner McCurdy. Any discussion on suspending policy and and voting on this today? All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And the motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Walker absent. So we are good to go, right? And then we move on to general business item number one to vote on it, correct? Okay, great. Do I have to close the public hearing before that?
I don't know if you have to, because you didn't announce that it would be opening till
Okay, great. Okay, all right. We will conclude our public hearing at this time. And we'll move on to our general business action items, discussion and consideration of. And our first action item is resolution authorizing and approving the restructuring of the hospital revenue and refunding bond series 2021 and the execution of an amendment to the loan agreement. This is the public hearing that we just held. We voted to suspend policy and be able to vote on this today. So I would entertain a motion on this agenda item. Bill?
Yeah, I vote to suspend policy and take action on this.
Or actually, yeah, look at your, there you go.
Second, I moved to approve the resolution authorizing and proving the restructuring of the hospital revenue and refunding bonds series 2021 and execution of an amendment to the loan agreement.
Great. Thanks, Bill.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion on the table from Commissioner Winfield and second from Commissioner Dean. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you, Alex. We're we're good to go.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll see you soon.
All right. Okay, on to general business item number two, alternative dwelling overlay intent to apply submissions round three. This was our workshop today that we held for about forty five minutes to an hour and we're back to Jenna on this. And it looks like Jenna is with us on Zoom. So over to you, Jenna.
Thank you. For the record, I'll just give a little bit of background that we discussed during the workshop. This is Land Use Code Section 4.9, which outlines the intent to apply process for applicants interested in developing the alternative dwelling overlay type of use on their residential property or otherwise. The ITA process is intended to give the commissioners the opportunity to evaluate each project proposal and determine those that would receive support to move forward with a full rezone application based on the criteria described in Land Use Code Section 4.9.2. Those include being located in a preferred zoning district, compatibility with existing community characteristics, history use, historic use on the subject property, traffic impact, commute time, relative impact on water resources, and overall design of the proposal. The ADO pilot program permitted the approval of 150 units within the one-year pilot program, which is set to expire on November 15, 2023. Today, you're considering round three of those ITA submittals. Within the first two rounds of rezone applications, there was a total of 114 ADO units, excuse me, permitted per excuse me, of the 150 units. So this final round of applications could consider 36 additional ADO units within that pilot program. So this application consists of five applications. Just a brief review of each. We have the SORG project. It's for four hookup, excuse me, four full hookup sites proposed at 2812 Spanish Valley Drive, intended to be developed as traditionally stick-built or pre-manufactured tiny homes. We also have the Petruset application immediately south of that, four full hookup sites proposed at 1441 Spanish Valley Drive. Excuse me, 2810 Spanish Valley Drive, intended to be developed as 2810, excuse me, as traditionally built or pre-manufactured tiny homes. And before I go on, I'm going to go ahead and share this screen for you. So while we're going through, you can look again. This was your first application. The SORG application with four full hookup sites. You have the Petruset application immediately south to be developed as traditionally stick-built or pre-manufactured tiny homes. We have the O'Neill application, which is four full hookup sites proposed at 1441 Spanish Valley Drive. That is the only application that's proposing RV sites. We also have the McCurdy application, which is proposing eight full hookup sites at 1379 South Arnell Lane. These are also intended for prefabricated dwelling units. And then we also have Venture Capital LLC, which is proposing 15 full hookup sites proposed on Spanish Valley Drive, also intended to be constructed as permanent tiny homes. I can give a little bit more detail on any of those if you like, or answer any questions.
Um, I I just wanted to add, there's a little bit more information. At the end of the workshop, we discussed how we we took a straw poll on each of these just to get an idea about about which ones might pass and to to speed things along. There was a quick email discussion. Alisa weighed in as well as Stephen. And I would say that it looks like we can, there were there were two that were about 50/50. We're missing Commissioner McGann and and that she could be the vote that puts those over the puts those over the the edge to approve. So it looks like we are able at this time to not vote on those two. We could do that at the next meeting and we'd still be able to get those taken care of in time. So at the end of the, at the end of the workshop, by my reckoning, I think that the O'Neill and the McCurdy applications, it looked like we had enough votes to pass those tonight. It also looked like the Venture Capital LLC, we we probably, no matter what happens, don't have enough votes to push that forward. The the first two, the SORG and the Petuset, those are the the two in question. So I so I think we could probably make a motion to taking that information into account, Kevin.
Okay, so so how about two motions? The first one is to approve numbers three and four and deny number five. And the following motion is to postpone decisions on items one and two.
That seems like the best way to go about it, as long as Stephen's on board with that. Okay.
Okay, so I move to support the the following ADO ITA applicants move forward with full reason request for the alternative dwelling overlay via the ADO district application. And those are number three, the 1441 Spanish Valley Drive, Kevin O'Neill. And number four, 1379 South Arnell Lane. Mike McCurdy. And do we need to mention the ones that we're turning down just to make it clear that we're?
No, it's the intent to apply stage.
Okay, so okay, so we don't have to answer that. And I guess my other question before I finished, you know, the findings, you want that in discussion or in the motion?
Yeah, that's that's a difficulty on making a combo motion. I don't know if you guys were unanimous across the board.
If great, if you would do the ones that you want approved.
Well, that's what I just did.
Then you were going to add in the one that.
No, no, well, I I asked that, so I'm not adding that in.
Yeah, the only the only hiccup is if of the ones you guys all approved, if you guys are all unanimous across the, not, sorry. Are any of the ones you guys guys are approving, and I missed them in the meeting? Did you have one that got three votes and one that got four votes, or were they all four votes approval?
Yeah, the the two got four votes, items three and four.
A cleanest way would be individually.
Okay.
So, sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, the cleanest way would be individually. I apologize. I misled you.
Yeah, I just, I I think in findings, there will be some repetition, but. Okay, so I will start again. I move to support the following, it's plural, ADO application.
I I think I want to do them both at the same time. Sorry. I've already made, right? I think so too. I think we we're all, yeah, those two are very similar and I think we all.
So I I've made the motion. I think in the discussion, I will discuss findings or if anyone else wants to add that in.
Great. Thanks, Kevin. I'll second the motion. Okay, so a motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Clapper to approve the agenda or the alternative dwelling overlay intent to apply submissions, numbers three and four.
Okay. And then I I think as as part, when we approve it, we're.
Uh, yeah, uh, four was four was the McCurdy one.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
Even Mike a heart attack over there. And and I do, I think we we had discussion at the workshop about, you know, conflict of interest things. So anyone who's interested in that should you see the discussion there. But when we approve these things, we're supposed to make findings and or approve or deny. So I I think the follow, I think a majority of us agree with what I'm about to say for both of these projects. Under A, you know, they're they're not exactly in a preferred zoning district, but because of the surrounding uses, I think a majority of us feel comfortable proceeding with these rural residential lots. Um, compatibility with existing community characteristics. Again, I I think the general neighborhood near these things that came up in our discussion, the workshop, and majority of us think that this is a relatively good fit with respect to that. Traffic impact. Both both of these are located relatively close to the highway and to the the busier, more northern part of Spanish Valley Drive, Mill Creek Drive. Commute time, same same thing goes. They're close to the city. And I I think we were comfortable with the overall design of the proposed development in both cases.
Great. Thanks, Kevin. And I'd add that this is an intent to apply. So these will come back. There'll be two more public hearings, one at the planning commission, one at the county commission level. So anybody who cares to make comment about these at that time, this is not a a green light. It's just means you can go on to the next step. I think that's important. And I agree with Kevin's findings. All right. So any other discussion on these? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving these two ADOs, raise your hands. All opposed? All right. So the motion passes four to one with Commissioner Hadeen in opposition and Commissioner McCurdy recusing himself. Great. Yes, Kevin.
And so I will move to postpone until our next meeting, consideration of the ADO applications, number one, Sarah Sorg at 2812 Spanish Valley Drive. And also number two, Nathan Petuset at 2810 Spanish Valley Drive.
Great. Okay, I have a motion to suspend until the next meeting, a vote on agenda items one and two by Commissioner Walker and second by Commissioner Winfield.
And and I I think Jacques discussed this, but just just to make sure it's clear, I I think the strong votes for these were close for these two projects were were close. And so having Commissioner McGann at the meeting might make a difference. Um, I, you know, personally, I I wasn't in favor of them, but I I do think that, you know, we should, you know, decide these things, you know, if there's true voluntary support and not let them be derailed by a commissioner being absent.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. All right, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All in favor of postponing, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. All right. And I guess that's it on this agenda. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, on the on the last vote, yeah, that is unanimously five to nothing with Commissioner McCurdy refusing. Yeah.
Well, I guess I was, I should, do we want a separate motion to tonight or do we just?
If we don't approve it, you don't approve it. It doesn't go, it's in the ITA stage. Technically, it could can attempt to continue, but it doesn't have the support of the commission.
Well, why don't, I mean, we are supposed to make findings when denying as well.
Finding on it, that it doesn't comply with the with the goals.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so five, third and final motion, I move to deny the ADO application number five. This is from Venture Capital LLC at 4060 Spanish Valley Drive.
I'll second that.
Okay. And then my my discussion, the making findings, which is supposed to do both an approval and denial. This this is not in a preferred zone and there's nothing about the neighboring properties that would, you know, make seem to mitigate that. I don't think it's compatible with the existing community characteristics nearby. It's a pretty low-density neighborhood where all the lots are at least one acre. And not compatible with historical use of the property. Traffic impact is quite far from town, pretty far south in the valley. I think that's not an ideal location due to for commute time. And okay, uh, thanks.
Thanks, Kevin.
Just as a point, some other discussion is in the workshop, I was supportive of trying to get as many projects to break ground, but the purpose that we have these intend to apply at this process is so that developers don't waste resources, time, money, energy, and projects that don't have much chance of getting forward. And so although I was supporting it in the workshop today, seeing the the lack of support from other members, I would not ask the developer to dedicate those resources towards this. And so I will be voting for the motion today to not waste their time.
Great. Thank you, Evan. Appreciate that. Any other comment on this, Bill?
And again, I just think that these things come forward for a reason and part of the planning and commissions efforts to put all this forward and put them in these zones was because we're looking for places for them. And I I'm going to vote against the motion on that basis.
Great. Thank you. All right, I'll call for a vote. All right, I'll call for a vote on the motion to deny. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. All opposed? And the motion passes four to one with Commissioner Winfield in opposition and Commissioner uh McCurdy recusing. And it looks like that is the end of uh that action item. Thank you all. And just as a, so how many, so so it looks like we are up to on our approvals. Sorry, just thinking, I guess we can take care of that later. But anyway, we just, we just approved another, what, uh, twelve?
Twelve.
Yeah, approved, yeah. Or not yet, but but the intent to apply that still leaves, yeah, twenty-four on the table, right? Yeah, okay, thanks. Okay, we're on to agenda item number three, and this is for the purchase of a canine for the Grand County Sheriff's Office. Uh, presenting is Sheriff Wiggins, our our Grand County Sheriff, but I will give um Sheriff Wiggins an opportunity to give his elected report before our agenda items. So uh Sheriff Wiggins, if you want to give your report first, and then we'll have you present for the uh agenda item.
Okay, you guys hear me okay?
We can, thanks.
So this week I am at the Sheriff's Conference. It's held in St. George. It's all week long. Um, it's it's a, it's a fantastic training. Leaders of Department of Public Safety are also down here. All the sheriffs in the state try to get together and have a big conference. So that's where I'm at for this week. Uh, this weekend, we took down another uh Internet Crimes Against Children ICAC Predator, uh, took took him down in Thompson Springs. Um, so Task Force is doing fantastic with catching uh ICAC crimes. And then what I just wanted to talk about a little bit was our our current canine, his name's CJ. He was actually when our Task Force Commander Mike Miller came over from Mesa County. That sheriff retired that canine to him. Um, and Miller come to me the other day and told me that he's planning on retiring CJ as he's getting older. Um, CJ's been a huge asset in assisting our mission when it comes to stopping illegal narcotics. Um, and the dilemma that I'm stuck in right now is the state of Utah posts, um, they conduct an eight-week-long training for a a an officer or deputy to go to um, to become certified uh to equip the canine, and that's eight weeks long. And there's a class that starts in October, about October sixteenth, I think. And there's another class that starts in May, and I don't feel comfortable sending somebody in May during our busy season, so what what I'm trying to do is is to purchase a canine uh this this fall and send a deputy this fall slash winter when we can afford to be a little bit more shorthanded. Um, the plan I would like to do is to pay for this dog with our asset forfeiture account. And we have quite a bit of money that's being seized at the federal level. Uh, the pro- the, that process takes four to six months, depending on um, how the court cases are settled. Uh, once that money clears that, it comes back into the sheriff's uh asset forfeiture account, and then we can spend the money out of there. If that money doesn't come back in time this year, I can pay for this canine with our donation account. Um, and my long-term goal is I have two patrol crews, and I would like a canine on each crew, so that way when that crew goes off, that canine goes off off as well, but we always have a canine on duty, ready to go. Um, so that's just a little bit of a backstory, and I would hope that you guys would uh approve for this to happen. It's without a canine nowadays, it's it's really hard um to stop the the legal narcotics trade, and so we really rely on uh canines. Our neighboring counties will also call. Uh, San Juan County doesn't have a canine, they'll call and ask, hey, could we borrow your canine, come down and sniff this car, this house? Um, same thing with Emery County. Emery County does have a canine, but it's up in Castledale, and so if there's something on going on Green River, they'll call, hey, can you bring your canine over? So it's great to have a canine um in southeastern Utah, and we can help out our neighboring counties with it as well.
Great, thank you, Sheriff. Mike?
I'd like to come out pretty strong on this one. I move to approve the purchase of a canine unit for the Grand County Sheriff, Sheriff's Office.
All right, I have a motion on the table to approve from uh Commissioner McCurdy and a second from Commissioner Winfield. Further discussion?
Um, Jameson, I have two red bone hounds that I'd be happy to donate.
Anyway, we could definitely use one of those for uh man tracking.
Perfect.
I was curious a little more about the cost. The the agenda summary meant doesn't include the the training. And then obviously, uh, I just kind of out of curiosity, the the ongoing costs of of feeding and whatever else we need to do with the officer, canine, canine officer.
Yeah, good question. So um, your first, your first question, going to the post academy, the state of Utah, that's free training. So we just pay their wages while they're there, um, which is fantastic that the state um, provides that training for any officer or deputy in the state of Utah. Like I said, it's an eight-week-long course, it's four days a week, um, and there is a test at the very end of it, and they have to pass that. Uh, going forward with the canine, this is a drug detection dog, so they would have to have four hours per week um, in the fields of narcotics and testing the dog. Uh, we pay, we pay our handlers with on-call, oop, excuse me. We we pay our uh canine handlers with with on-call hours. Um, and federal law mandates that. And so going forward, we'll just adjust that in our budget for next year of paying that canine handler um an extra hour of on-call to take care of the canine. The costs, the kennels, the kennels for the house, the kennels for the car. That money, I plan on taking all of that and and paying for that with the asset forfeiture money. So I'm trying not to have any of the taxpayers really pay for a lot of these specialized items. I'm trying to use the cartel money to pay for this stuff. Um, so hopefully I've answered your question in regards to that.
I apologize, I was going to add into the agenda summary some information to cover that, uh, but got a little crazy, and so I also think there was another quote I was supposed to just make note of in there, but that's on me.
So, but there's a, there's two invoices or quotes included? Would this be to cover both of those, or?
No, just one, just one.
Okay.
Just one, and there's a third one.
Gotcha.
And from a legal standpoint, the benefit of having a a dog in the vehicle um, helps cut down on motions to suppress and cut down on arguments against you know, the time delay that it takes for an officer, the officer with a canine deputy to get to location. And so that would be a benefit of having the the canine with the officer and and eventually having multiple would be very, very helpful, especially if we get called out on other ones for the prosecution end of things. So I I I would encourage the commission to support this as well.
And do our MOUs with San Juan or Emery have any kind of cost sharing around this if we're responding to those counties?
Uh, we, it's just a gentleman agreement. Um, they'll come in and help us out with other things, and and we try to repay the favor, so we don't have we don't want to play um tit for tat. We, if they need our help, we'll go in, and if we need their help, they'll come in, so the sheriffs us sheriffs in southeastern Utah have a good relationship when it comes to that.
Yeah, no, I I I support the motion, and I I I guess I will note that it, I mean, you know, thanks, Evan, for the good questions about the total costs. But it does seem to me this is pretty small compared to the overall sheriff's department budget, and so for that reason, I feel comfortable approving it outside of our normal budgeting process, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted to add that I have reviewed the federal guidelines for the use of the asset forfeiture account um, as the sheriff describes and can confirm that it is a qualified use as he proposes.
Great, good to know, thanks. All right, I'll uh call for a vote. I got a motion on the table from Commissioner uh McCurdy and the second from Commissioner Winfield to approve. All those in favor, raise your hands, and the motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you, Sheriff.
Thanks, guys.
Um, I am going to move up agenda item eleven at this point. Um, our emergency manager's been sitting patiently in the back for a couple of hours, and it looks like we might have some lengthy uh agenda items before that, so uh so we're gonna move up agenda item eleven as ratification of the memorandum of understanding regarding phase one of a flood warning system. Cora Phillips, Emergency Manager, as well as Mallory, Commission Administrator.
Yes, and I just put myself on there because Cora might not uh made it, so.
Yes, so I'm the Emergency Management Director for the county. I've served in the position since November of last year. As you well know, our area is subject to monstern storms, small cells with a ton of rain, um, where our current USGS monitoring stations are, at least the gap uh kind of as we saw last year, August twenty-two. Um, and the USGS gauges are not designed for to be used for flood warning system or flood monitoring. Um, so very excited about this, the MOU in the city. It's been a lot of coordination, not just with the city, but with a lot of area stakeholders to include uh Ritter Restoration, uh Boa Area Watership Partnership, USGS, Forest Service, VLLM. Lot of learning on my end as well. Uh, so this year uh the city has agreed to pay, and this meeting was conducted on September fifteenth, so just last week. Uh, we met with Jay Fuller, uh, their consultant, or a member of their team, Peter Acton. Uh, the city provided the funds for that first phase to scope, to see what would be feasible for our community developing five-year plan to implement a comprehensive, real-time flood warning system, so that we have that data collection, so that we can better understand the impact of rainfall in our area. Uh, what will, what will happen downstream, the impact to lives, property, and situation.
All right.
And I act really quickly, um, the reason I think this is we allowed this to be a ratification, it's because this is just a phase one, and so it was a way to really memorialize uh the efforts we're starting, um, and the city, I think was happy to have that memorialized so that they could show that they are working to address some things. Uh, so any future phases, any of that would come for you to approve. This was not anything we contributed funding to, other than like Cora, who's priceless.
All right, Bill?
I'll make the motion, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding regarding phase one of the flood warning system between Grand County and the city of Moab.
Thank you. We got a second from Mike. All right, discussion. Yeah, all right, discussion. Actually, Stephen, you look like you had something to say first.
Just two questions. Did you um, do you know if San Juan, have they ever reached out and had a desire to have a shared warning system? Because I know I know at least a couple of members of the community were impacted by a recent storm. Um, I didn't know if San Juan ever had.
I, Tamey Gallegos, who's the Emergency Manager with San Juan County, uh, she was.
Awesome, awesome.
There will probably be more discussions.
Perfect.
Cooperation.
That's excellent. And if if possible in the future, if you could send that, these over to me, it would be wonderful, and I could just take a quick glance at it, that would be excellent.
That was me. We had about two days to turn it around, and so without any financial commitment
From the difficulty is any any legal contracts that the county's signing, I'm mandated by the state to review them. So if in the future on legal review, it's not applicable, if we could get those sent to me, that would be greatly appreciated, and I appreciate you guys' hard work. I know you guys have been turning around things at an exceptionally fast rate. So, thank you.
Great, thanks, Mike. You said you had a discussion.
Hit the same points. I would like that discussion with San Juan County there, uh, to continue. Uh, thank you for having it as part of the meeting. I know they have some thoughts about flood mitigation uh and some projects of their own, but I'd love to tie in and fully support this phase one system.
We are.
Thank you.
Kevin, I guess, um, I would be interested, I mean, I've heard Chuck Williams, you know, the city engineer, talk about this a few times, but I've, I'm still a little bit hazy on the details and why. Okay.
So, um, Chuck Williams actually helped me select this contractor. So he's been working with me to increase my understanding of hydrology and participated in that meeting last week. He offers a lot of expertise to the conversation.
But but I guess where I was going with that is it would it would be nice to, you know, so early in the process, you'd be either an email or a discussion item at a at a commission meeting to, you know, see what range of options are being considered. Because right, at this point, I don't know, like, how how many different gauges and where they're going and how much is.
That's what the contractor will be, is to see us, which is that is a little.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion or questions for Cora? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. Yeah, thanks, Cora. All right, go home and have dinner. All right, and it does look like it's one minute till six, so we do have a um uh citizens to be heard session at six o'clock. And I'll go ahead and get that going right now. Is there anyone here in the chambers who uh would like to make a comment on our citizens be heard session? All right, is there anyone online who is here to make a comment? Citizens to be heard online, you can unmute or raise your hand. And it looks like we have none, so I'll do, or is that a, Shaly? Are you here to make a citizens be heard, Shaly?
No, I'm just, I'm here to uh be available for any questions.
Okay.
On the the chamber agenda.
Great, thank you. Um, all right, yeah, it is now six o'clock, so yeah, last call, citizens be heard, six o'clock. Okay, would you like to come forward? Okay, yeah, come forward, introduce yourself, and then you can uh make your comment. Yeah, please, please sit, yes. Microphone.
My name is Lisa Bose. I'm a citizen of fourteen minutes of Moab. Um, I wasn't prepared to speak, but I I was here um, in support of McKay Edwards with Moab Springs Ranch and the tax assessment. And if I may, I thought he was gonna be here, he's not right now. But um, I wrote a letter, and something seems wrong with the process that was taken with how the tax assessments were assessed or valued. Um, I do know factually that we, Moab Springs Ranch, has the highest tax increase. There is, I'm, may I be relevant? I urge you, as we look at the process, um, because something seems wrong. And, you know, being duly elected officials and ensuring that the processes are fair, equitable, reasonable, um, duly researched. I feel something was really amiss with this, and how it impacts Moab Springs Ranch. And I really urge you just to look at it. I've been employed as a manager for nine years, excuse me, eight years, and, um, this resort is very meaningful to the community. Um, school groups would come in, well, my point is, really, your role is just to look at the process. But this is a locally owned business. It's not a big restaurant, and we put everything into this place. It's iconic to the community. It is, I I feel legendary because of how we uphold the history, the place, people that came before us. Our reviews speak for what it means to guests who come here. And for us, for the community to lose it would be an incredible loss. So that's the personal side, but the business side of it, to please look at that process and what happened. Why is that that Moab Springs Ranch saw two hundred to three hundred percent increase in our, in the taxes? Where no other property in Grand County did.
Thanks, Lisa. All right, um, yeah. All right, welcome, McCain. If you could, I, yeah, I'd ask you to keep your comments to three minutes, it'd be great.
Thank you. It's not the first time Lisa Bose has saved me from calamity, so, thank you. I was running late today. McKay Edwards, Moab Springs Ranch. I'll start by saying, three minutes is barely long enough to raise a few problems. It's certainly not long enough to talk about solutions. So, it occurred to me that I had not given this group my contact information the last two times I was here. So, you now have that. If you feel it was appropriate or useful, I invite folks to reach out to me. I have ideas for how the process can be improved for next year. I believe the process was deeply flawed this year. When we met two weeks ago, I was on my way to meet the county appraiser. A few days later, I had determined that the, these crazy high values had come from a bad method, which was income-based instead of comparable sales. That data that had gone into the method, a flawed cap rate, he was using a two-year-old cap rate. Interest rates doubled in the last two years, and so did cap rates. He was using an old cap rate on, on this method, and that's how he came up with values like 700,000 for a 500 square foot cap. And so, he invited me to give him good data. And I said, great, spent two or three weeks working very hard, writing that data, shared it with him, and in the end, I felt that I was played. What happened was, he extracted the data that, that helped his case to start at the data that he didn't like. He liked the income, but the cost of running a business that could support that kind of income, he dismissed it. He said, so he put together a hypothetical business based on my income and his idea of how he would run my business. It's not only wrong, but offensive. And anyway, he, he came back to where he was. He was, he was, he was supporting his original, these crazy high values that you see on this, on this sheet here. We talked for about two and a half hours on Friday, the, about the eighth of September. Agreed that the gap was too big, fortunately agreed that we would have to appeal. The last minute, he threw in about a six, seven percent haircut on, on his side. It was just a token, and it really wasn't enough to bridge the gap, so we have filed 32 appeals, 32 parcels. That ought to say something to you. Nineteen bungalows, thirteen townhomes. I commissioned my own appraisal at considerable expense from an M A I appraiser, something you might consider in the future. And my appraiser came in at, let me see, my appraiser, I believe he did an, and at work, he came in higher than I thought he would, but since I hired him, I'll live with his results. He came in at about 370,000 for bungalows that were appraised at about 700,000 by the county appraiser. That's the basis of my appeal on the bungalows, a little less on a smaller bungalow, about 340. Thirteen townhomes, we submitted comparable sales. We're a little closer on the townhomes than on the bungalows, the county versus us. We believe these, these thirteen townhomes that have been appraised at 800 to 900,000 should be more in the 600, 700,000 dollar range. Still a very material difference to my homeowners. We believe that the comps will support that. I do have concerns about your appeal process. The application says Board of Equalization. Well, there's neither a board, nor does there seem to be much commitment to equalization going on here. And I'm told by the state tax commission that, absent a board, this body is actually the Board of Equalization under state law. And so, what's happened, I guess, is you have delegated that authority to a hearings officer. So, the same process that got us into the, the suit here, which is a paid outside consultant with very little to lose or gain inside the county, is sitting as judge, jury, and executioner on these appeals. So, I believe that the bigger problem is, the county has delegated authority, and this is awesome authority, the power to tax. Look at the bottom here, my taxes have gone up 152,000 dollars, more than double. We're looking at over a quarter of a million dollars in sales tax this year. That's an awesome thing, and that weighs over my head. I've got 30 employees, I've got 18 homeowners, I've got 12 partners, I've got lenders. So, I work for about 60 people. So, I, I, you know, I'm here on behalf of a pretty big community of interest here, that has been hit, like, this hit us like a, a flash flood or, or a wildfire. I mean, it came right out of left field. To say that a bungalow has tripled, quadrupled in value in what year? I know I'm over time, so what I will finish by saying is, this same appraiser told me that he's 15% of the way through his work in this county. Think you should stop and think about that for a second. This one year's work got him 15% of the way through what he's doing, this process. Is this the process you want to go on for the next seven years? Do you want to sow the seeds of, you know, distrust and, and anxiety? I mean, this has been tough on my staff, it's been tough on me. I've had nothing, in 25 years of working in, in Moab, I've never had anything hit like, like this. To come up with this kind of money on November 30th is a huge burden, and it's not just one year. We, if we, if this holds, it's gonna happen every year, so I'm gonna have to change my business, business plan. I know, I'm not even sure what I'll do, but it will change. I'm willing to help the county talk about a plan. In another life, I'm an urban planner and designer, and I consult to cities and counties. You need a plan to get this done, expeditiously, fairly, moderately, and with a sense of alacrity, because as long as the whole county isn't done, there is disequity. Someone's paying too much, while someone else is, is paying too little. If the whole county gets done properly, then, you know, some people's tax will go up, sure, businesses will go up. But at least they're, they will know that it's equitable to, to the other, other folks. Most counties in Utah use 75 to 80% of actual market value on their tax assessments. And that really works, because it, it, people don't feel like, they don't see a tax notice that it's prices done. They see a tax notice that looks reasonable, and it's getting that last bloody nickel that causes this kind of pain for people. Thank you, I apologize for going over time, but I appreciate your time. You feel free to reach out to me, thank you.
Thank you. Still citizens to be heard, anyone else who would like to come forward at this time? Anyone online? It's like not, okay, let's see, we just moved forward, agenda item 11, so we are back to agenda item number four. 2024 insurance renewal rate increases, Renee Baker.
Me. I'm excited about the spring new insurance renewal. Not excited about it, but it's a little bit awkward process, but we generally need to approve the insurance renewal for the next year, so we can perform with open enrollment, prior to seeing a lot of our other budget numbers. But this year, we have a very favorable option from Cigna, with a 0% renewal increase on our medical insurance. So, they're proposing no cost change in our medical insurance. A small 3.5% on our dental, which would roughly be a $4,500 annual raise across the entire plan. Our insurance, or I'm sorry, our vision, HSAs, life insurance, basic life insurance are on a rate hold, so those will hold through into 2024. And there's a slight change in our flex spending account administrative fee, that's going up about 35 cents per participant per month. And then our long-term disability rate is going up about 4%, which has got a 2,000 annual difference. And so, with these adjustments and with the 0% medical, I was also proposing that we just equalize those for the employees who are in our traditional plan, they pay into the, into the premium cost of the plan, and just equalize that percentage that they pay at the 11.48%. And you'll notice that's what, currently, there would be no cost increase to the two-party, and then a slight decrease to the single and family plans. There. Happy to, oh, I did want to put on the record, there was some questions that came up, so there's no update between Cigna and Prover. Beginning of 2023, Cigna and Prover cannot come to an agreement, so that's not a covered pharmacy currently. I don't know if there will be an update in the next year, but right now, there's nothing as far as that front. And then St. Mary's is a hospital that a lot of our employees go to over at Grand Junction, and they've moved into the Intermountain Health Group, and they just confirmed with Cigna that that will have coverage.
Great, yeah, thank you, Renee. Kevin?
I move to approve the Grand County Medical Insurance Rate, Cigna. Increase of 3.05%, basic life insurance increase 3.2%, and long-term disability. Also moved to approve the equalization of employee pay premium for the traditional plan structure. 48% of monthly costs to the employee. Single policies, 62%.
Yeah, okay, I'm, thank you, Kevin, I have a motion on the table from Commissioner Walker, and a second from Commissioner Winfield. Further discussion? I'm just, I'm stoked at these numbers, I remember a couple of years ago, that they jumped up, what, like, 12% or something?
Yeah, I was, I was nervous, I've seen some other, I just saw a number from the city today that they got a 27% increase, so, this is a good rate, Cigna's being nice to us this year, and they keep, keep it going.
Absolutely, yeah.
Mike? I just wanted to, as note, this is also my insurer, even though I'm an elected official, through my family relationships, through marriage, I do put that to note, but I'm more than willing to vote this increase, because it is a good increase. The amount is, I've heard far larger numbers from county representatives, so.
Absolutely, yeah. Bill?
And then, I've discussed a little bit with Renee and Gabe both, I know that UAC also would like to quote this insurance moving forward in the future, and I, I don't know when they'll get that together, but they are, they've got multiple counties, I think the majority of them in the state of Utah under them, so I think they have three or four just out of this last convention that, that are now moving forward and signing up also.
I know, UAC's been talking about this for a couple of years, there's a, there's a possibility of moving to a group, a group plan under UAC.
Okay. Great.
Just that, yeah, Brandy Grace from UAC called me yesterday, just to make sure that, you know, she couldn't put together something, you know, already for us, and I made sure to, I thanked her for the offer, and let her know that we got a really good renewal offer. But it would be, I, I'm sure we would be interested in using that, that, that type of proposal as a bargaining chip, at least for, for the future, you know?
All right, do you have a motion on the table to approve from Commissioner Walker, and a second from Commissioner Winfield? Any other discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands, and that passes unanimously. All right, agenda item number five, resolution amending section eight benefits and vacation in section 10 work policies of the Grand County Employee Handbook. And back to Renee.
Sure, so, just some updates, the mileage, we did an update, I believe, February of this year, that allowed for a round-trip mileage reimbursement, with our new fleet vehicles coming online, and a lot more of those departments utilizing our fleet. And having, you know, brand-new fleet cars, and also a cheaper rental option available to us. We would like to propose that the, that the reimbursement in a personal vehicle would only be allowed if there was not a fleet vehicle or rental vehicle available, or if there's adverse other conditions, and a SUV is not available. Got a few of the triggers coming online, I think we might even request that one of the current three fleet cars that are available to all get switched out with the triggers in the future, so. That availability is more open, and we're paying for fleet cars, so we can utilize them. And with the vacation update, the original intent, when, when we switched that policy last year in 2022, was rather than providing kind of a uniformed increased vacation accrual to all incoming employees, that we have the ability as in a negotiation or in an offer, to offer that vacation accrual. So, this is just taking that and updating that to the original.
All right, any questions for Renee on this?
In short, that vacation update is just a bargaining chip. Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and when it was, when it was brought up last year in 2022, I can, I think it was July, maybe June, that's the original intent of how it was, and then the, the line, the one line got in there, and.
Just using that to get better employees.
Yeah.
And so, the, if there is a county vehicle available, and someone chooses, and someone chooses to drive their own vehicle, then there's no mileage.
There's no match. You can still get the premium and all of the coverage for the travel policy, but don't manage.
Great, thank you.
And I'll just say, it's, we kind of went last year from to an extreme of complete reimbursement, and I'll be honest, this might be going to another extreme, but we are spending a lot of money on fleet enterprise lease acquisition. So, I, I think it's worth approving this and trying and seeing. It's a fairly easy thing to change, so.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate having fleet cars at our disposal, I, I use them anytime I get out of town, and it's really nice to be able to grab a fleet car and travel. Trish?
Make a motion. We already had a motion.
We have not.
And I move to approve the resolution updating section eight benefit, benefit all employees vacation in section 10 work policies, travel of the Grand County Employee Handbook.
Thanks, Trish. Thanks, Bill. I have a motion on the table from Commissioner Hadeen, and a second from Commissioner Winfield. Any further discussion on this?
I'll just mention that oftentimes, our, our, the duties for traveling involve big distances, and sometimes it's nice to be able to kill two birds with one stone, and take care of some personal stuff or other things while in these other places, and I'm a little hesitant to encourage that happening with county vehicles. And so, with that in mind, I don't support it, but I don't think that that's a huge deal. So, I appreciate wanting to utilize the fleet that we're paying for.
Thanks, Evan, that's an interesting point, right, like, going up and doing a couple of days shopping, or, or something else up in Salt Lake, for example, and, yeah, tying up a car. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
But we wouldn't want somebody to take a fleet vehicle, say, up to the city and to use it to go run a bunch of errands.
Yeah. No, but I think, yeah, yeah. But I think Evan's point is that sometimes it's convenient to do that, so you, you, like he said, kill two birds with one stone, so you want to take your own car, so you can, yeah.
Doing it as that's an option people are choosing to do.
Right, right, good point.
Sorry, I'm.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, um, anyone else? I have a motion, uh, from Commissioner Hadeen and a second from Commissioner Winfield, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of motion to approve, raise your hands. And all opposed. Okay, motion passes four to two with Commissioners Clapper and Winfield in opposition. Uh, thanks, Renee. All right, we're on to agenda item six, twenty twenty four world county grant application proposals. Uh, Quinn Hall, Commission Administrator, and Forrest Rogers. Is Forrest online? Yeah, that's right, I see him, there you go.
Thank you for joining.
All right, we've got full house at the table. Can you get Rob up here too?
Yeah. The advocates, the, the devil's support as well online. Running the meeting and discussing the item, this is the, uh, economic development advisory board, I can, the proposals for twenty twenty four grant applications. Forrest, do you want to lead the discussion here? Forrest, I want this.
I'll just.
There you go.
Hi, Forrest Rogers, Economic Development Advisory Board. I just wanted to give some context to these two, um, specific areas that we intend to invest in, we ask you to support investing in. Um, you have, uh, representatives from the chamber online, and, um, then I'll step in, or if Rob is there, he can step in for the Moab Community Childcare. I think the important thing for, um, for the commission to recognize is that these are continuing investments in areas that we believe are, um, critical needs to support our workforce infrastructure. And that's the community childcare. And the, the growth of our business as it moves, as we move forward into the strategic planning process, we've made an investment, a second investment in the chamber to give them some capacity to really help us understand, help you understand what the true business needs are in the community. There've been lots of conversations about coworking spaces or maker spaces, other kinds of services. And having served as a community executive in a prior life, I believe the chamber is exactly the organization to take this lead. So, um, Shaylee can speak to the specifics of that particular, um, project. I just think it's a, it's an important way for the county to start expanding the capacity of support for our local businesses. If I may say one other thing, congratulations to the team that helped to recruit Ben Frederigill to his role and acknowledge the role that Sky White has performed over the last couple of months in keeping the organization, the advisory board moving forward.
Great, thank you so much, Forrest. Okay, um, Shaylee, if you want to speak, uh, for the chamber, I guess.
Well, and, um, if you guys, uh, have the proposal in front of you, and I apologize, it's kind of a last minute switcheroo because Lacey had to uh, had, had a prior, uh, obligation. Um, but there's, there's three real big parts to this, it's the needs based assessment, it's, uh, business trainings for our community, and the third is the business summit that we would be taking that on instead of having that be, um, the economic developments. Uh, we feel like that the economic development just necessarily didn't have all the capacity they needed, so we, we volunteered to help, um, support that role. Um, but first it would be with the needs based assessment of going around to businesses and really being able to determine, like, like what Forrest was saying, like what our business community really could use from the small businesses, mom and pop shops, up to some of the larger tourist based businesses. We just want to make sure that we're really having a, a good understanding of the needs, so that when we're going forward, we are being effective, because if we're finding that we don't need a coworking space as we do some of those assessments, then let's not go for grant money for hundreds of thousands of dollars that would, uh, help us make that. It's not going to be effective, so that's one of our big areas. Uh, the second one would be doing trainings, uh, we'd like to do at least monthly trainings. Uh, some of them will be a little bit smaller, but they'll, they'll be driven by a lot of the needs based assessments, we're hoping to do trainings around, you know, helping, helping them get their books in order or being able to write grants. Uh, we'd like to really figure out, again, what our business community needs. Um, the chamber would offer this to the entire community, it would not just be per chamber members. So that is one way that we would just feel like we could be really supportive, um, to the county and the, and the economic, um, departments. And then the third one would be the, the business summit, um, we, we do have a, a pretty good budget in mind for that. Uh, we would like some really big name speakers, we're going to be working with the same, um, event planner that they had for the, the last one. And so we feel like we can, you know, get some really good ticket sales, but also have just some really strong speakers uh, to be able to really help come educate our businesses and also draw in a pretty decent crowd from surrounding counties, uh, and government officials. And then just the, there's an administrative cost as part of the grant proposal, um, just to help with us with our capacity, right now we have two employees. And they're both part time, um, and I don't know if you see how much Lacey does, but there is no way that she only works part time. But that's what her position calls for at this time, so we would definitely need to expand, um, our staffing a little bit to be able to accommodate these. Um, our board does pick up the slack quite a bit, we do have a really good board, um, that helps support all of these, these needs. Happy to take any questions, but that's.
Great, uh, our attorney, uh, stocks has a question for you, Lacey. Um, Shaylee, you, you previously, your organization previously received a grant earlier this year, these, um, trainings and group meetings and everything, that's going to be in addition to those of the previous grant, I just wanted to make sure.
Correct, yes, that's correct.
Excellent, thank you.
And then I would offer to, that, uh, the chamber offered to help take on the business summit, actually does prepare a lot of that staff time, the economic development department is, at least for the last few years, has been consumed by that board, pretty all of it. And also this, well, that turns off as. So we're grateful for their willingness to give it on.
Well, and we just feel like this is such a strong partnership between the county and the chamber that really we could just be a major support system for the county and, and the businesses within it.
Great.
And Rob said, well.
Any other questions for Shaylee, uh, concerning the chamber, uh, ask? All right, thank you so much, Shaylee, and then I would invite Rob up to talk about his, uh, half of things.
Well, uh, thank you all, um, I took a look at the agenda and, uh, it seems curriculier, it's like a full day's work, you guys have been here since four, there's a lot more to.
Two thirty.
Two, two thirty, sorry. A lot more to do, I've spoken to all of you before about our organization.
Yeah.
This proposal, I've also that, I wrote the whole thing up about it, um, so I, I run sometimes long, so let me just say, if you have any questions, this is a continuation where we're doing, it gives visibility to twenty twenty four, we already have a grant for twenty twenty three that we're working on, but our, our run rate is, you know, grown very large, uh. We, uh, we do over six hundred more hours this month of support for helping hands, we're working with eight of the ten, um, child care providers in town, um, in some capacity. Uh, and we're working to diversify our unexplored, we're looking into trying to add tourist, uh, care, um. The idea that that could be, uh, four times, five times profitable, if we could do that on a per hour basis, um, to potentially get us to more self-funded status, like I would love to, to have us be that way, because as you guys imagine, growing is hard with a nonprofit, because you get a grant one year, the next year you can get that again, otherwise you have to, like, let staff and go. Uh, so I'll leave it there, and I'm happy to talk to you anyways offline as well if you want, but, um, I'll take any questions, so.
Awesome, thanks, Rob, no, you've been, you've been great at engaging us, and, uh, definitely appreciate it, and appreciate the work you do.
Support of this organization, EDAB, uh, and the county, I mean, I feel like, you know, this is, I wrote it on, also I made it in the left, say, you know, we are one of the examples of like what came out of the county grant program, this was started a few years ago with this funding, so. Uh, thank you to Grand County for the support.
All right, thanks. Any other questions for Rob? All right.
I would make a motion.
Great, thanks, Evan.
Uh, I would approve to, uh, make a mo- I would move to approve the submission of the EDAB recommended proposals for the twenty twenty four rural grant application, including one hundred twenty five thousand to support Moab Area Chamber of Commerce and seventy five thousand to support Moab Community Childcare.
Awesome, thank you. And Mike is seconding, all right, I have a motion on the table from Commissioner Clapper and a second Commissioner McCurdy. Any other, uh, comment or questions for these guys?
Thank you, Quinn, for, yeah, elaborating, appreciate it.
Yeah, kudos to the board that's been working on this, I know, it's, it's been a lot, and, um, it's a lot of energy, so thank you for doing all that and vetting these applications.
Yeah, much appreciated, Forrest, thank you. Bill?
Yeah, I'd like to comment too, I, I definitely support both of these, I just want to be real careful with these grants and the perception moving forward, I did have several calls, I know Rob was previously on the board, it's a we're still underneath public scrutiny when these grants come out, so I think it's important that we're real careful, and I'm not saying there's anything there that isn't what I mean, but the public does watch all of this, and.
Yes, I'll be very clear about that too, to answer your question, this is not Grand County. But this is.
I know, and they knew as well also, I'm just saying that I did get calls, I'm just sharing that so that it's out there, that's all.
And just to add to that, I'd say, I'm a volunteer, I effectively run the organization alongside a leadership team of a few other people. Right now we have seventeen other employees that are paid, I am unpaid, I remain unpaid, never paid for any of my work with this, it's just something that I can, I can do that, so to give back to, it sounds to me a lot.
And, and I know that, and I support you, Rob, I, I have, but I just also, those calls come in and we had the plethora of grants that were questionable a while back, and so people are still on, they watch.
Yeah.
All right, um, that's it, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you all.
And, uh, moving on to agenda item seven, ordinance repealing and replacing budget advisory board duties and functions, uh, Clerk Wojtek.
Um, so, um, we had to make some adjustments, uh, Mallory helped me get this on the agenda. Um, and so we had to make a ju- some adjustments to the board composition, in particular of the budget advisory board, um, due to the, um, departure of Chris Baird. Um, and in particular, we, you know, it was, we were in a situation where the, um, the, the budget season is already underway, and so we're, we're sort of left in a, in a, in this, in a situation where adjusting that composition to allow time for a full process of posting and receiving applicants for the current season just doesn't feel like we're in the position to do that. Um, though I do think that, you know, Shaylee, who was just on, um, with, for that previous item, she gave really valuable feedback in the last budget advisory board meeting um, about the value in that sort of the, the, having those citizen roles on the budget advisory board. Um, rather than, um, just sort of rolling this adjustment permanently into, say, a county staff position or some other appointed role that would be more internal. Um, and so I think that the current, currently contemplated actions that we're taking, um, and Attorney Stocks, um, gave, provided some guidance, um, on suggested motions, and, um, what we're looking to, to accomplish here in terms of it being, uh, uh, i- in, in conjunction with the next action item, um, it's sort of a temporary, you know, for this current season, a way to pull in someone, you know, with the transition that we're going through, a way to pull in someone with, with background in this, with this process in Grand County. Um, and sort of, um, first creating some actions to be able to, to make that, that appointment um, with the understanding that it would just be effective through this year, and the commission could consider um, how best to fo- how, how best to complete the composition, the board composition, um, you know, prior to next year's, um, season. Um, do you have anything to add, Commission Administrator Nassau?
All right, um, it's all right, yeah. And then, uh, let's see, uh, so as far as like, as far as what we want to include in the motion, um, Attorney Stocks had outlined in an email, oh, it looks like, I see, the commission actually might not have been included in.
I did not include the commission.
Sorry, I thought you did, sorry.
I can, sorry, Steve, I can forward it to them now.
Um, and so what, what the attorney provided, and thank you, thank you so much, Stephen, for, um, looking at this, um.
And I can ex- I can explain it if it makes, um, essentially what the goal is within the ordinance. Um, the idea is to appoint somebody, and we want to make it so that, the, the intent was always to have um, the budget officer be there and to be able to provide assistance. And so what my proposed language would be is, under vacancy, we would add a section, and it would just state as follows, and I just forward it to you guys, but it says, section two, to address the twenty twenty three vacancy, the Grand County Commission may appoint a Grand County employee to a modified term that expires December thirty first, twenty twenty three, after which the vacancy would be filled pursuant to section one. That way, it could just be an appointment, uh, without going, without the mandated process of going through, uh, a normal vacancy being um, having to be filled with an interview, uh, well, actually, I'm sorry, I'm hosting an interview then a selection, so instead we would just appoint somebody to that, uh, position for that modified term. So that would be my suggestion, fix to be able to do, uh, the agenda as it's laid out with six and seven.
Uh, I have a question. Because it's an ordinance in section two, I, I don't know, I could, I just have not done that before, uh, using a specific, you know, to address this one thing for this date and this term, um, in an ordinance.
Yeah, and, and the other, the other funky thing as well is not only would we need that section, but we would also need the following section that says, in the event of a conflict with ordinance, and I can't recall the ordinance number, earlier this year, we brought before the commission the appointment process to standardize it. Um, so we would have to make sure that this ordinance superseded that ordinance for that, uh, particular vacancy, to achieve item seven, House seven, it's listed now.
So is there a way, I just don't want to then have to update the ordinance again to remove that.
You, you wouldn't have to, because it would just say that, it says may appoint a Grand County employee to a modified term that expires twelve thirty one, twenty twenty three, after which the vacancy would be filled pursuant to section one, so it'll only be for this window of, of time, and then after that, it would just be.
Section two just, it's in there, but doesn't apply anything.
It's already applied to what it, it's already achieved, it's in ten. The alter- the alternative is if we don't want to do, and, and sorry, I don't want to spoil the ending, section seven suggests appointing somebody to that, uh, position now, that's what agenda item seven does. Um, if we wanted to achieve that a different way, we would host it, um, do the interviewing process, then do a selection. And the difficulty is the budget, uh, budget process is already well in swing, and it'd be harder, it'd be, it would be more, how do I say this? It would be less time, uh, it, it's a time sensitive issue that if we do it with the standard process, it's longer, we would miss out on the expertise that somebody would be able to provide, that, but for the departure of the Strategic Economic Development Director, um, we would have had that assistance. Is that clear as much?
So, I, can we? I don't want to talk all about it, but it's hard to not see it. So what you're saying, but then what the ordinance would be approving would be, would, in essence, like, would want to reject all the red line and then just add section two?
All the red line, uh, how I've structured is all the red line would have been made.
Right.
With the except, or, so all of, um, all of the red line would remain, we would just add this in the vacancy, because otherwise, so, in the red line version of it says, in the absence of a finance, financial officer, the county commission may appoint registered Grand County voters. So that, all of that would stay, we already have our citizen, uh, appointment, we have one citizen appointment, but we have a vacancy in the budget officer position. We have one citizen appointment, but we have a vacancy in the budget officer position. So all that would remain, and then down below in the vacancy section, it just says vacancy section one, and normally it says vacancies expire by reasonable death, resignation, or the cost shall be filled. If you need date of expiration of the expired term by appointment of another person by the Grand County Commission. Then, right, and then we add in section two, and section two would just say, hey, just for this once. And then we'd also add in the provision that says, hey, this super, the section supersedes uh the other ordinance that lines out the appointment process.
Okay, I was thinking in that.
No, just in the vacancy section.
So then I propose not making the motion yet, but I'm just giving it a test drive. Um, that we you know, make it according to the red line as with modifications that Stephen just described. That's all I'll say in the motion, but you do have the email that gives exact language and Gabe has that so they can make it into the minutes.
Yes, and all the commissioners have it as well. And again, it's just two additions. One, one is adding into the vacancy section two, lining out that and then adding the second uh clause that says, if in the event that there was a conflict between this ordinance, this this section of the ordinance and the other one we previously approved in May, that this would supersede. That way, somebody does come out of bushes and says, hey, you guys didn't appoint this correctly. This is, that's the intent.
Okay, so then I move to approve the ordinance with modifications just described by the county attorney, repealing and placing we're in six sixty five to add the option of a Grand County employee to the board organization in a limited timeframe, you know, just for the current vacancy.
Great. All right, uh, motion from Commissioner Walker and second from Commissioner McCurdy. Um, great motion.
This is a great motion.
Any further discussion on that one? I see. Yeah, go ahead, Gabe.
Sure, I just want to also just make very clear, like, when we're talking about composition of the board and and the and sort of the meaning of being on the board, um, really, the main function is is voting at the last board meeting to to forward a recommendation for the uh tentative budget to the commission. And then there's some um, there's some workshops that are scheduled in early not uh November where the Budget Advisory Board and the commission are invited to sort of um present and look over some things together. But with our current level of participation, I want to make sure that anyone, you know, listening or or looking back on this understands that this isn't meant to be exclusionary to anyone to be involved in the process. At our current level of participation, I would welcome any member of the public to come to a meeting and ask questions throughout the meeting and be part and participate in any way that they would see fit, see fit. In a universe where we had several members of the public that wanted to be very active in a meeting and slow it down, yeah, at that point, we would have to regulate perhaps. Um, but at the stage that we're at, I want to just make it very clear that anyone from the public is welcome to come and participate and learn about the process, and I think that I see that as my duty, so.
Great, appreciate that. Thank you, Gabe. All right, Bill?
Yeah, just one comment. I also received a call on this item, and I just appreciate all the clarification, although I'm still not on on the level with the legal team, but but they also were concerned about the fact that we were appointing a staff member to a public position there, so I think that's a good explanation and it'll clear it up moving forward for next year.
And and it's always point, I think the modifications Stephen proposed, the the way it was in the agenda, it would just be indefinite. Anytime in the future, we could replace one of those citizen members with a staff member. And I think Stephen's proposal tightens it up, so it's just just for this year.
Yes, and and just so the public's clear, the position that we're filling is the former position held by the Budget Officer. So it was never, we didn't, the citizen didn't lose their, didn't lose their spot, so I just want to make that clear to them. But for the departure, we would have had another, a different government, uh, we would have had a government there. So I'm just, I want to make that very clear.
Yes, thank you. Okay, uh, motion from Kevin, second from Mike. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. And the second one, in light of that, should get much quicker, uh, staff appointment to the Budget Advisory Board. Back to Gabe.
Uh, so so Quinn Hall is being proposed in in a suggested motion. That's that would be my recommendation for this appointment. Um, someone who held the position of clerk auditor um is has been familiar uh over the course of um at least a few years now and um with this process, um, which will be ultimately helpful as we go through this process.
And the only thing I'd note on this motion is now when you read the motion, you would just read for a term that expires on December thirty first, two thousand twenty three, as allowed in the ordinance.
Okay. Kevin?
So I I move to approve the temporary appointment for a term that expires um at the end of this year, two thousand twenty three, of Quinn Hall to serve on the Budget Advisory Board. Oops, yeah, as allowed by the in the ordinance, in the absence of the finance offer and or a second citizen. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Walker, second from Commissioner Winfield. I don't like the sound of that. All right, any other discussion on uh the appointment of our Associate Administrator to the board? And again, this is replacing uh Chris Baird as the strategic strategic development director, keeps the position in the uh office of our uh Commission Administrator. All right, call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands, and that passes unanimously. All right, we're on to a letter of support for the Bureau of Land Management's proposed onshore oil and gas leasing rule, and I'm presenting this one. So with this one, we uh had our last meeting. I presented it. There's some discussion there. Uh, there was a public hearing that the BLM put on in Salt Lake City on the twelfth, and we decided to postpone it until this week in case uh anything major came out of that and have some further discussion. Uh, I've kind of searched far and wide and haven't seen too much comment from that meeting. Uh, myself, I did, um, there, I have read some other things about this. I've had a hard time finding any uh any negative comment anywhere from any any quarter, but um. Uh, anyway, I'm bringing this back up for support. I'm very much in favor of it. I reread the letter a couple of times. I still stand by everything in the letter. I and I would uh like to forward that on. Hey, Trish?
I'm gonna make a motion. I move to approve the letter of support for the Bureau of Land Management proposed onshore oil and gas leasing.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Hadeen and a second, uh, excuse me, second from Commissioner Walker uh for the discussion on this.
I just have a couple things. I'm gonna kind of reiterate what I said at the last meeting and then just add one little tidbit. Um, again, this really is just going over kind of the fiscal component of gas and oil leasing. So, you know, the bonding levels currently are over sixty years old. It's a modernization of, you know, fiscal terms, so royalties, um, rents right now on on gas and oil leasing are over thirty years old. And so it's really just bringing that up to date, and an example um that I found was, for example, bonding is in relation to if you have a a non-producing well and and you need to reclaim it. Right now, um, that bond is approximately two grand per well, while the actual reclamation is thirty five thousand. So somebody's flipping the bill, and it's not gas and oil companies. And so that's just an example that this just needs to be updated and bring those those numbers up to date.
Thanks, Trish. Uh, Mike?
I actually agree in most of the letter, uh, but in all seriousness, uh, do we expect uh in an oil and gas ruling that they charge the oil and gas companies more money? That they will front the bill and not pass it on to consumers in the tail end, which is me directly? So we're already, in that sense, I will oppose it.
Um, Kevin? Yeah, no, I I support this letter, and I and thank you, Ja, for taking the lead and getting it on the agenda. Um, I think over the past few years, Grand County has frequently commented on the DLM's oil and gas leasing process. And usually it's about about oil and gas leases happening in inappropriate places. I remember a case a few years ago where it was you know, within the on Dome Plateau with, you know, in the backdrop of Delicate Arch within the view shed of, you know, popular viewpoints of canyon lands. And so you know, I think Grand County really exemplifies some of the problems, in the past has exemplified some of the problems that this revision to the oil and gas rigs is trying to fix. Um. So, again, thanks for doing that. Um, I I I did want to address Mike's comment. I I think the the dollar amounts for leasing tend tend to be pretty low. I think where oil companies are really paying money is if they're actually producing, is that there's a percentage there. And so I I don't think there's much chance of these leasing fees having a, you know, a noticeable effect on oil and gas prices, even if you're looking only at gas coming from this particular place. But one thing I think it might affect is um you know, in in the information for this thing, the large majority of public lands, oil and gas leases never get you know, never produce, maybe there's never drilling, right? You know, there might be a little bit of exploration, sometimes not, and I think a lot of it's just speculation. And I think raising the costs um might, you know, reduce that, and and I think there are separate parts of this proposal that would try to steer oil and gas leasing toward, you know, existing fields that have produced and not and away from sensitive areas. And again, that's the kind of thing that Grand County Commission has supported for for many years, I think.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. Bill?
Yeah, I've got a few things. Um, I I agree that there's certainly a need to update the fee structure, and if we could modify the wording in this letter, I could be in support of sending it. Um. As it is, I I haven't heard anybody talk about reaching out to the stakeholders, reaching out to the state, reaching out to surrounding counties, and I do know that from my experience working with the folks up at the CIB, that Grand County always has the largest ask of the CIB board, and that comes from oil and gas exploration and mining. So there there are several things. I did reach out to all of those in in the letter. You know, you mentioned the outdoor recreation, cultural and natural resources, and NEPA already protects that. So to be going over the top or using those, I I don't think that that's what I'd have in there. I do think that the letter does not provide any solutions and certainly uses standard verbiage that would be appropriate coming from a local environmental group, not from the county. It does seem appropriate that the county, who relies heavily on CIB and extraction monies to help with our failing infrastructure here, would look to the fact of what the consequences sometimes that these letters bring. And I'm, again, I'm totally in favor of making some changes with that fee structure. It's very outdated. But you also mentioned the popular motorized and not non-motorized trail systems in our assets, and those assets exist, those trails, because of extraction. And so we have to be real careful with what we've done here. The um, the state has weighed in on this as well as a a couple of other groups that I've reached out to, um, Star Point Enterprises, who has filed more. Uh, what's the language I'm looking for there? The process to drill, and I don't have that right in front of me, the application for permit to drill and anybody else in the state. So they've they've all weighed in with these, and and it all comes back to several things. The the surrounding counties that I've discussed this with continue to watch Grand County and feel like all we want to do is affect them. And that would be San Juan County that's weighed in, Emery County, and um a couple of others also. And so we we have to be real careful here. There there's ways to change this letter where the verbiage is not all about something that the state's opposed to and that other counties are opposed to. And and again, we've got NGOs and environmental groups around here that could send this letter out, and it might be appropriate coming from them. But it isn't appropriate coming from the county. It's it's hard to um it's hard to go to a UAC meeting when everybody else wants to know what's going on in Grand County. It's hard to do that when when they want to know just what's going on down there. And I I I'm trying to bring about a little bit of understanding that there are groups that affect this, and the the costs are passed on, just like Michael said, they're passed on to you and me, to everybody in this county. Am I against racism? No, I'm not at all, and I would just be a whole lot more on board with this if we could restructure the language in it, and I'd be more than glad to work on this with somebody. But as it is, I I think that we're sending the wrong message out to many, many people. So it it really would be worth reeling this back in a little bit and considering some different verbiage to where our neighbors are not continually in amazement at what goes on in this little room right here, not Grand County as a whole. That isn't what they're asking me, what's going on in Grand County. They're asking me what's going on right here on the dais, so. I I I get it. I get it, and you all are free to be a member of an NGO. I'm a member of an NGO. You're also free to be a part of an environmentalist group here, but as a as a governing body here, this letter is inappropriate in my mind. I I would just like to redo it a little bit, so.
Kevin? Yeah, um. So so Bill brought up that, you know, neighboring counties are, you're writing very different letters, but I to me, I think that emphasizes the importance of us sending this letter. You know, there's a lot of diversity within rural western states and within rural Utah. That diversity doesn't always show up if you look at, you know, official comment letters sent by county commissions. You know, the typical rural county, you have has a majority that leans the other way. Grand County is one of a few that leans differently, and so I I think it's very important that we speak up with with this message, and I think if, you know, this in combination with letters coming from other counties, um you know, will will reflect the the diversity of rural Utah. I I think it's sort of, you know, we don't expect San Juan County to you know, in addition to saying what the three commissioners think about some public lands issues, say, well, and we've also got forty percent of the county that feels very differently. That that typically doesn't happen, you know, so I I do think I I, you know, I think there's balance in the um in the process if we look at you know, what the the state's sending, what other rural counties are sending, and things like that, and I I think things work best if we actually say what we think and not try to, you know, straddle or worry that other people might think we're weirdos or something, Grand County. I I don't think suppressing our voices is helpful. I think, you know, we I support what's in the letter, and I I think that these are good comments, and I think we should say that and not worry about getting side eye from San Juan County or something.
Yeah. Yeah, I I I tend to agree. I think I I actually, this issue came onto my radar. It was about probably in two thousand twenty seventeen when, I don't know if you guys remember, but there's a speculative lease up on, it was literally on the Slick Rock Trail. And there's huge outcry in the in both the motorized and the mountain biking communities here because it was uh, it was it it was threatening one of the crown jewels of our our trail system and sand flats, and there's a lot of outcry, and I got involved because I ran a bike shop in town and um and uh eventually that was withdrawn, but it took a lot of energy and it took a lot of kind of a lot of community outreach, a lot of energy, a lot of organization to fight that, and um yeah, I think I think this is just a a great step forward as far as everything goes to uh to help mitigate issues like that in the future, and it makes sense from our standpoint in this county, I think.
Well, I just want to bring back to the fact that most of our parks, our rec center, everything we have here on a the OSTA Center, we constantly have our hand out to CIB asking for money, and you cannot continue to send these kind of letters out and think that you're ever going to see grants from a board like that. You you might see a loan. You might see a partial grant like the city of Moab got over on Kane Creek, but you don't see Grand County getting grants out of CIB anymore, and part of that is because of the message we're sending, and it this didn't come from San Juan County. I actually didn't talk to anybody in San Juan. I do speak up because we're close neighbors with them, but certainly, um, Emery and some of these other counties that surround us are not in favor of what we're doing.
Yeah, I I uh think CIB's been pretty loc- pretty vocal that they're moving away from grants altogether. I think that everyone is just uh getting the leases and not the grants, and um you know, I was curious when you just brought up the allocations. We actually are pretty low on the list for counties receiving uh CIB grants, so uh we may ask, but um we're pretty low on the lists, especially when compared to revenues. We're one of the highest contributing counties. We're pretty low on the lists, especially when compared to revenues. We're one of the highest contributing counties to C I B funds. And updating these, uh, lease fees would help the state in general. So. All these other counties that, that aren't contributing to the C I B revenue, except getting much higher allocations than us. Would also benefit if those, uh, lease fees were higher. So I see it as good for the entire state and I'm happy to speak in favor of it.
Yeah.
Mike. It's a little bit simpler with me, uh, than your guys' a little more high level discussion. Uh, economics points to oil and gas, uh, costing more money. Uh, yes, it does hit my pocket directly, uh, at the pump. Uh, not only that, our only industry within the area being tourism. It will affect our tourism numbers in a longer sense, uh, at least the outlook of Grand County will affect. Uh, if fees are passed along to, uh, personal, uh, if fees are passed along to people. People will simply not come to our one industry, which is, uh, tourism. Uh, they won't pay the fee. If we raise. The fees on oil and gas producers, they will not pay them. They will pass them on to consumers. Consumers will then pass or not. Use that if they're paying too much to come here.
Trish. So I wrote down a couple of statistics today because I don't think there's a direct correlation to what it costs to drill. And what they're charging us. So for example, the Exxon CEO Darren Woods salary increased fifty-two percent last year. He now makes eighty-nine point seven million dollars per year. Exxon and Chevron in two thousand and twenty-two posted record profits. Exxon at fifty-six billion and Chevron at thirty-six point five billion. While CEOs, the, in two thousand and twenty-two CEOs pay increased by four percent while roughnecks working on the ground. Their salaries went down by one percent. And the example being where my CEO's average salary seventeen point four million. Average worker on the ground, a roughneck forty-seven thousand dollars a year. So. If I knew that my, what I was paying at the pump was going to support. You know, direct drilling and roughnecks on the ground, you bet I'm doing it and I'm paying it. But that's not what it's doing. It is going to the very top for them to get a fifty-two percent salary increase. To almost ninety million dollars a year. There's not a direct correlation. The, the rich are getting richer, period.
I completely agree with you there, just so you know.
I mean, it was gross to do this.
Do you think these CEOs are going to turn and pay these fees next year? Like they're not paying them now. Do you think they're going to turn around and pay these large amounts out of their pockets next year?
Discussion's getting out of the, uh, out of the realm.
I just don't think there's a direct correlation.
I'll go ahead. Do you have something else? Yeah, I was gonna call.
Maybe it's time, time to vote. I, I think we all.
All right. So I have a motion on the table from, uh, Trish and a second from Kevin. All those in favor of, uh, support of the letter, raise your hands. And all those opposed. Motion passes four to two with Commissioners Winfield and McCurdy in opposition. Uh, we are on to agenda item ten, letter of support for Wabi Sabi's application for the economic assistance grant from the governor's office of economic opportunity.
And well, I saw a grant opportunity come through our emails and I passed it along to Kevin Clyde, who's on the board for Wabi Sabi. As you may know, Wabi Sabi is going to be losing their facility. They have been allowed to stay in there, um, graciously by a donor. And that is not going to be the case. They've been like actively pursuing where they're going to go, what their mission's going to be. And maybe some of you, they're doing kind of a scoping right now. And I participated in an interview I did too also. And so they're kind of looking like where, where do we want to go? What do we want to be? And so I passed this along to Kevin Clyde on their board and, and said that I'd be happy to write a letter of support. Um, as you may know, and I'll state, uh, with the individuals that I work with in my other job, which is adult ed. Wabi Sabi is a big component of our community in the sense that they, they provide a lot of emergency vouchers for clothing and furniture. Um, they've supported a lot of other nonprofits within, within our community. My program, Archers Ed, was a nonprofit partner with Wabi Sabi for years and years and years. And what I use the money, I used to get like a hundred bucks a month and I would use them mostly in the jails to pay for G E D testing, for example. Um, they obviously provide employment for a number of individuals within our community. And lastly, you know. They help with the environment in the sense that they're just repurposing stuff and it just keeps going around and around and it keeps it out of our landfill. So. I wrote a little letter of support and I'm asking you to, um, support it also.
Mike.
It's a pretty simple call for me. I move to approve the letter of support for Wabi Sabi's application. For the economic assistance grant from the governor's office of economic opportunity.
Thank you. All right. I have a motion from Commissioner McCurdy and a second from Commissioner Walker. Uh. Further discussion, I, I concur. Wabi's, Wabi's been an asset to the community for as long as I've lived in Moab. And, uh, yeah, that's all I need to say. Bill.
Yeah, I agree that I definitely support this as well. There's, um, this is a letter that I can support. But, um, they do provide a lot for this county and they, they're just trying to find a home right now and anything we can do to help. Help move that along because they're running out of time. The clock's ticking before they have that building.
All right, uh, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to support, raise your hands and that passes unanimously. All right, we already addressed item elevens. We're up to our, actually our allocation items. And, uh, this pertains to our workshop before the meeting earlier. Um. Uh, Mallory, there's a couple of things that look like, uh, because we talked about addressing the T R T taxes during budgeting, we would. Not be voting on fifteen, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then on the rest of the three, that should just go as, yeah, as is. Okay, so. Uh, then the item number twelve, resolution allocating healthcare facility sales and use tax revenues received during calendar year twenty-four to eligible entities.
Yes. So, um, this is the allocation where you, uh, debit up between Canyon Land's Healthcare Special Service District and EMS. Um, as requested, as discussed in the workshop, we're looking at a fifty-seven percent to Canyon Land's Healthcare Special Service District. And forty-three to EMS. Uh, so that is what the, the resolution would. Put forth as that.
Right. Kevin.
So I move to approve the resolution allocating healthcare facilities. Sales and use tax revenues received during the calendar year of twenty twenty-four.
Thanks, Kevin. Bill, second. All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Walker, second Commissioner Winfield. Uh, we discussed this at length in our workshop. Anyone else have anything they need to add at the last minute or?
Um, two, two things. One, I, I think Mallory already said this, but yeah, we're continuing the same allocation we've used for the last couple of years, I think, which is forty-three fifty-seven. Um, and the second thing I, I wanted to say is that I, I think in the letter of support from the healthcare special service district, they mentioned that they also. Are paying the, the D S H dish payment for the hospital. I, I think that's important. I'm, I'm glad they do it. And I. You know, very much encourage them to continue to, to cover that. Um, I know that occasionally has been an issue in the past, but it seems like it's gone smoothly the last couple of years.
It's great. Yeah, good point for that as well.
That hasn't come in for twenty twenty-three yet, but they should be in position to cover it as long as.
Okay. All right. Uh, thanks. I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, raise your hands. And it passes unanimously with Commissioner Fifteen absent. Uh, move on to number thirteen, resolution allocating mineral lease funds and state held allocated to Grand County by the state of Utah during calendar year twenty twenty-four. Eligible special service districts and or school district.
Okay, so we've got three breakdowns in here. Um, I sent an email. Um, and this is also what is presented in spreadsheets, uh, just for the records. But we are proposing the U D O F, U dot Division of Finance, uh. Mineral lease funds to be broken out with twenty-three percent going to rec special service district. Fifty-seven to the transportation special service district, ten percent to the school district. And ten percent to solid waste. Then, um, the Department of Workforce Services appropriated mineral lease dollars. What is being proposed is sixty-five percent to the recreation special service district, thirty-five percent to solid waste. Last but not least, state pilt with fifty percent EMS. Thirty-two recreation special, special service district and twenty-two, the Grand County School District.
Great. Thank you, Mallory.
Okay, so I. That, that's what I was gonna say. I, I don't have the email with those numbers and I, I, my memory's not that good. So. I'll move to approve the, um, resol- resolution allocating mineral lease funds and state tilts for the calendar year twenty twenty-four. With plugging in the numbers that the county administrator just presented.
Great.
Thank you. And those are the same as the numbers that are in the packet in the spreadsheet.
Right. Okay. Uh, motion on the table for Commissioner Walker, second Commissioner Winfield and, uh, CD. Any, again, we addressed this during our workshop. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands and that passes unanimously. Uh, agenda item fourteen, selecting secure rural schools election and approving allocations.
Okay, um, so I'll be honest, I don't know if we even need this, but we figure better safe than sorry. And I'm sure the transportation and. School district would agree. Um, a few months ago, I believe Chris had an agenda item where every. I believe every five years you all have to choose the breakdown of these buttons and. I, I think it's very standard to do the fifty fifty. The other option is pretty funky. So this is what was selected. Um, in the last round and then I'm not sure if I'm right here, we still need to send the letter, uh. But this is a letter covering that, uh, and covering everybody's butts, just to be safe. And it, it's also what's in this spreadsheet, just breaking that fifty fifty percent.
Thanks, Mallory. Sounds good. Kevin?
Um, I moved to send the attached letter to the Utah Department of Government Operations indicating that Grand County elects to use. One hundred percent of its secure rural schools for Title One uses and to allocate fifty percent of the funding. To Grand County School District and fifty percent of the Grand County Transportation Special Service District.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Uh, uh, I have a motion from Commissioner Walker, second from Commissioner. Commissioner McCurdy, any further discussion needed on this one? Call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands and that passes unanimously. And then, uh, we're not going to touch agenda item fifteen. Do I need to do anything with that? Just we need to make a motion to.
I don't, I don't think we need to make a motion, but just in case someone didn't cash the discussion at the workshop. I think the decision was that for these allocations of T R T funds, they would be discussed, you know, when the rest of the T R T funding is in the budget. Um, my impression from the workout this afternoon is that. You know, no one was objecting to continuing existing funding levels from T R T. We had some requests for some. You know, increases above that. And I think everyone's, you know, willing to listening to consider those. So. None of those entities should feel bad that we're postponing this.
Absolutely. Yeah. Well said, Kevin. I agree. All right. We will move on to our consent agenda then. And the consent agenda consists of. Um, agenda item A, approval of Grand County Commission meeting minutes for August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three and September fifth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, item B, ratification of payment of bills and those are, uh, total bills in the amount of one million fifty-eight. Uh, fifty-eight thousand thirty-five dollars fifty-six cents. Total payroll in amount of three hundred seventy-two thousand nine hundred eleven dollars ninety-two cents and total bills and payroll in amount of one million four hundred thirty thousand nine hundred forty-seven. Dollars and forty-eight cents. Agenda item C, emergency management preparedness grant award. Uh, item D, Utah Cooperative Marketing Program Grant Contract Number twenty-four, two, four, zero, six, three, one, eight, two, nine. Between the Utah Office of Tourism, Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity and Grand County Economic Development. Uh, item E, ratification of the rural county grant letter requesting final release of funds. Uh, F, memorandum of understanding for the Public Safety Partnership Pilot Program with USARA and La Bree Hospital. And finally, G, purchase of the U T Bs that were awarded through the State Division of Natural Resources, the D N R, uh, grant funds for U T B education and search rescue assistance. Kevin?
I would, uh, move to remove item D. Uh, regarding the marketing for further discussion and approve the remaining items as presented.
Okay. I think you can, I think you just, as a commissioner, any one of us can actually pull something off the consent so you don't make a motion.
Right. Someone has to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right. Yeah. Been a long night. Gotcha. Thanks, Evan. So, so, so you're moving to approve everything except agenda item D?
Yeah.
Great. Got it. Thanks, Kevin. All right, uh, discussion of any of those, um, uh, consent agenda items other than D that have been moved for approval.
I think we don't discuss.
Yes, this is consent. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion to approve all items except for D, raise your hands. Sounds good. Uh, motion passes unanimously. And now we will address the agenda item D, Utah Cooperative Marketing Program Grant Contract Number two, four, zero, six, three, one, eight, two, nine. Between the, uh, Utah Office of Tourism, Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity and Grand County Economic Development Department.
Uh, I was just, uh, hoping somebody could walk us through this for our sake and sake of the public.
So this is a. Government agreement to make state. We apply for some money, generally award us amounts, usually roughly approximately. Plus stocks online and.
And is this the first time this grant was coming up this year?
Yes.
And so the two hundred and twelve thousand five hundred are from T R T funds, obviously.
Yes.
And then the state contributes the same amount?
Yes.
So, so in implying, and so in effect, what we're doing, applying for this grant is increasing our advertising budget by two hundred and twelve thousand dollars?
Uh, I know that there's been a lot of talk, uh, or I don't know about a lot, but there's been talk around the community that, that, um, we're not spending money on marketing. Here's, you know, another half million dollars on us that we're getting ready to, to spend on that again. And. Um, also working, I think the partnership with the Utah Office of Tourism is, is a great one. And, um. But I know in the past, we've had discussions about focusing more some of those funds, uh, more locally on our own. Um, marketing resources and is there a project that, um, this is already planned on, on being spent on or is this just kind of the first step?
Yes, Melissa, you want to speak to some of the programmatic party outlined in the agreement?
Melissa, I think you're muted on, on your end. Can't hear you. Uh, we still, still can't hear you, Melissa. Yeah, I can still actually.
All right, well, our marketing focus would be thirty-five percent regional, forty-five percent in federal black markets.
And this is that same Loves campaign? We're just kind of adding more to it?
Yeah, we piggyback on the Love State campaign.
Right.
Yeah. So I, I know that, um, advertising has sometimes been controversial in Grand County, but I, I feel okay with this because I think Grand County has done a good job. To, um, you know, adjusting the focus of our advertising so that I think it is definitely a benefit to the community. I, I think we. In addition to telling people what a great place in Moab is, we also give them hints about how to, you know, lower their impact to both the neighborhoods and public lands. I think as, um, so long as we continue with that focus, um, I. I think this is money well spent.
Yes, part of it would be a regional black thing.
I appreciate all the efforts and I just wanted to highlight those, not brush over them, that consent item that here's a bunch of money we're spending. I appreciate all the efforts and I just wanted to highlight those, not brush over them, that consent item that here's a bunch of money we're spending.
Good, very good, very good point, yeah.
Well, we haven't every year.
Yeah, I've heard some of the talk around too, and I think that the most recent one has been in relation to promotional advertising. I know Kevin spoke to the fact that we do a lot of educating of people once they get here, but. Promotional means we're looking for people to bring them into the community and then. Promotional and responsible recreation are two different cans worms, and I think we need to realize that. And if we go back and look at the budget of twenty eighteen, I think we were advertising in the range of two million dollars and. So this half a million, I I think it's a good ad for sure, but I I think we've got a long ways to go with the current economy that's going on in our. Community and there's definitely some room for this, I'm I'm in support of more promotional advertising for sure.
Yeah, this is just one of the things, this is the entire budget. And uh um I I realize that this is kind of, we have an existing campaign, I think it makes sense to to add to the. The uh campaign that's underway, I know that in the past we were hoping to get more creative. To your point that that we've been kind of rinse and repeat with this for a while, we've been working with Loves for years. And we're hearing from uh everyone around town that there's been a bit of a dip. And so I wonder if at some point in the near future it's worth looking if we wanna keep putting all these eggs in that basket. Or if there's other creative ways or other opportunities for us to uh kind of broaden some of that so that we get the best return on investment. With uh these efforts.
Great, yeah, Kevin.
So I I I move to approve and sign the Utah Cooperative Marketing Program Grant Contract Number two-four-zero-six-three-one-eight-two-nine. Between the Utah Office of Tourism and Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity in Grand County Economic Development.
Thanks. Alright, motion from Commissioner Walker, second from Commissioner McCurdy. Anyone else have anything to add?
I just want to, once again, thank everyone for their work on this and applaud the efforts and excited to see what comes from it.
Awesome, thanks. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands and that passes unanimously. Alright, thank you, Quinn. So we uh we have our uh discussion items now and we'll have two of those. Our first one is on tax valuation, this uh speaks a little bit to um obviously, we've been getting a lot of comment about our or the. Commercial tax valuation, uh some of us had a meeting with um uh let's see, myself, Commissioner Winfield, Commissioner McGann. Uh met with the um with the appraiser, Debbie Swayze, with Chris Kaufman, the treasurer, with uh. Gabe Waitak, the clerk, as well as our county attorney stocks, and it was it was great, it was really. It was an awesome learning experience for me, I I I saw things um much clearer. And coming out of that, uh I, Chris gave us like a, over Chris Kaufman, our treasurer, gave us an overview at the beginning of that meeting. That I think would be very helpful to uh commissioners as well as as members of the public to to hear. So I asked, um I think a couple of commissioners actually also asked for a a bit of explanation. And so I asked Chris to join us today and if uh he could, if he could kind of give us the same breakdown. That that we were given at the meeting, I think that would be helpful for a lot of folks. And thank you for joining us, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioner, are you able to hear me?
Loud and clear.
Great. I'm gonna try to share my screen as well. Are you able to see that word document?
Yes.
Great. So um I'll just talk a little bit about uh property taxes. I think maybe we'll start at sort of at the very basic level, which is why do we have property taxes? And uh different levels of government or have different sources of funding. And property taxes are are primarily used for local government entities such as counties, cities, school districts and special districts. And in Grand County, we have uh the taxing entities that I've listed here. The county, Castle Valley Town, Grand County School District, Moab Valley Fire, Castle Valley Fire, the cemetery and mosquito abatement. And are you still able to hear me?
Absolutely, yeah.
On your tax bill, uh you will see a few others such as the library. Um and you know, assessing and collecting and a few other things, but uh those will fall sort of underneath some of these other larger. Uh umbrellas, so the library falls under Grand County, there's a couple of different uh taxing uh line items for the school district. As well, here is a uh pie chart that shows the property tax distribution for Grand County in twenty twenty-two. Um it shows that the Grand County School District takes about sixty-seven percent of the total property taxes. Uh Grand County about twenty-five percent, special service districts about seven percent. And then one percent for Castle Valley Town and a few others. Uh I think Grand County is uh a little different than a lot of other counties because our main, you know, our largest city. Does not have a property tax and that is rare in Utah, most cities are uh at least in part funded by property taxes. Uh but we do have Castle Valley Town with a property tax in Grand County. And we can see that the total taxes in twenty twenty-two were about twenty-eight million dollars in total. So of those entities that I mentioned, uh three of them, the the Grand County uh entity, the school district and the cemetery. Are all countywide entities, which means that all parcels in the county pay taxes to support them. And then these other four entities, the Moab uh mosquito abatement, Moab Fire, Castle Valley Town and Castle Valley Fire are not countywide. So only you only pay taxes to those entities if you uh if your parcel exists within the boundaries uh of those entities. So how do we know how much property tax is needed? And this it gets to uh my main point, which is that the tax burden, the total amount of property taxes. That are collected is really the most important factor in the whole property tax system. So each each taxing entity goes through a budgeting process where they determine how much property tax they need. And almost all of the taxing entities have various sources of revenue and property tax is a large one for many of them. Uh but it depends on what other sources of revenue you've got, if you looked at a a graph of Grand County, you would see that sales and use taxes. Have uh become a much larger portion of the county's budget over time, uh whereas for the school district, um they don't have those sales and use taxes. So they are more reliant on property taxes. And when you add up all of the property tax needs for each of those entities that we looked at on the other screens, you arrive at the total tax burden. And that's the total amount of taxes that we need to collect in order to fund the uh different local government needs. And so in twenty twenty-two, like we just saw, that was about twenty-eight million dollars. And that total tax burden is the most important part of the system, it sort of drives everything, that determines how much tax needs to be collected. So a question is how can taxing entities decide to budget for any amount that they want? And the answer to that is no, in general, the taxing entities receive the same amount of money in property tax that they got in the previous year. If the entity decides that that isn't enough for their needs, then they can go through the truth and taxation process to increase their taxes. The truth and taxation process involves public hearings and notices to parcel owners, sometimes advertisements in the newspaper. And it gives the public a chance to weigh in on the proposed property tax increase. And in general, that is really the only way that the entities get more money, there's some exceptions that we'll talk about at the end. But that's the primary way that they change, that the tax burden increases, is through each individual entity deciding they want more. Uh the or they need more property tax money than they than they got in the previous year. So that that's sort of a real basic broad overview of the tax burden, how do we determine how much taxes uh are gonna be collected? And where does that go? So now we move on to the the second part of the property tax system, which is who is gonna pay those property taxes. And the state of Utah has decided to uh. Make different, to determine that parcels pay based on their valuation, so. Uh properties that are more valuable with a higher valuation are going to pay more in property taxes than parcels with a lower valuation. So the valuations uh of the parcels, the assessments that happen, that whole process is designed to. Allocate that property tax burden amongst the different parcels in a way that is um. Uh taking into account which parcels are more valuable. And you can imagine that that's a much more equitable way to do it than if we were just to divide. The top, the property tax burden equally among all the parcels, you'd have a giant hotel paying the same as a as a vacant piece of land. Instead, we base it on the valuation. And one of the most important takeaways uh from from my presentation is that valuations do not change the tax burden. As we talked about before, the tax burden generally is only changed when the taxing entities uh decide to do a tax increase. And when value.
Your screen just went blurry all of a sudden.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's no problem, we we're back.
When valuations change, it does not change the total amount of property tax that needs to be collected. All the valuations are doing is determining who bears what portion of that uh tax burden. So if we had a valuation change in the county and every single parcel in the county increased their valuation by. You know, the same percentage, if they all went up by fifty percent, the amount of tax that every parcel paid would stay exactly the same. However, that is generally, that never happens because of things that we'll talk about later, but. When valuations go up for one property but not for others, then that property whose valuation went up. Uh higher in relation to the other parcels is going to pay more and the other parcels are going to pay less. So how are the valuations determined? State law requires that properties be assessed at fair market value. And so uh many properties are assessed by the local assessor's office, some may be assessed by a special appraiser hired by the local assessor. And others are assessed by the state, but each of those uh whenever an assessment is made. They are required by law to try and get as close as they can to fair market value for the property. When do assessments happen? State law requires that every parcel be reassessed at least every five years, um it can happen more often. Uh and in some counties, uh they try to reassess every parcel every year, um state assessed parcels are reassessed every year. Uh in Grand County, most parcels are reassessed every five years on a rotating schedule. Uh and most commercial parcels are reassessed by a specialized appraiser. And this year was the commercial reassessment. Uh which has not happened for five years, and so the commercial properties are seeing five years' worth of uh market. Uh valuation change happening all at once, and that's where we're getting uh some of the very large increases and valuations. For commercial properties, uh we did see a similar. Uh increase in valuations for residential properties in Moab City last year and in Spanish Valley the year before that. And so I'll reiterate again that even though uh an individual parcel owner may be seeing their property tax bill go up. By double or even more than that, it doesn't mean that there's any more taxes that are actually being collected. To give to the taxing entities, what it means is that other parcel owners are paying less. And so if uh we just had the property tax rates uh finalized, and so now we we do know the final amounts. Uh of people's property tax bills for this year and most residential properties that I've looked at um in Spanish Valley, in Moab City. Or in Castle Valley are seeing their property taxes go down this year because the commercial properties have gone up so much. And we'll just hit on a couple of other factors, um the overview that I've given is a very simplified version of the property tax system. There are a few other uh factors that go into figuring out the tax rate. And we'll just touch on those real quickly, there is another way for property uh for taxing entities to get more property tax money. Each year than they got the prior year, and that's through new growth. So when a when a new buildings, when new buildings are built, uh the taxing entities are allowed to collect more taxes. Uh in order to pu- provide services to those new structures, um and the state says to the taxing entities. We're gonna allow you to uh get a little bit more property tax to cover those uh new buildings uh without going through truth and taxation. Uh and then there is an adjustment to the to the property tax uh rate. For uh BOE, which stands for Board of Equalization, the state basically says to the taxing entities, we know you're gonna lose some of the value every year. Through appeals, and so we'll put in a uh adjustment for that. Uh and then the collection rate, which I've already presented to the commission about. Uh this that the state also says, we know you're not gonna collect all of the taxes that you ask for, so we're gonna allow you to um ask for a little bit more. Uh to to factor that in, and they do that through the collection rate. And I'm sorry, I don't have uh a lot more graphics or more presentation here, but um that was pretty much the the majority of the overview that we went through. And our discussion was it was a really good one, and I think that the uh this year. And and frankly, in the last two years, uh it has really been a shock to the property owners. When we've had such a major change in the valuations uh and in the market value over the last five years to have that all come. Uh in when they get reassessed. And I'm happy to answer any questions um that anyone has.
Yeah, awesome, thank you so much, Chris, that was great, and and appreciate your uh effort on that, I think, uh Kevin, did you have a question or comment?
Um, yeah, I'm I'm sorry, I I missed, you said that meeting you guys had was also with the um appraiser.
The appraiser, or I'm sorry, the assessor. Yeah, it it was the assessor, yeah, I'm sorry if I said appraiser, it was. That's not right.
Yeah, no, I I think, Chris, that that was a good, um I I I'm just wondering if we do two separate problems here. And I I think Chris was presenting one that's been a a a long-going issue, which is, you know, it just, it. This doesn't help if the ass- new assessments occur once every five years. And there's, I I think I had some follow-up questions on that, but it seems like a lot of the feedback we've heard. This round was not someone just saying, hey, you know, my property tax went up a lot, they were pointing to very specific discrepancies or complaints. About how this commercial appraisal went, and I'm just, and the the case that people like McKay and I and others make. You know, it, to me, it sounds like pretty valid criticisms, and I'd be very interested to hear how the appraiser, you know, not the assessor, but the appraiser. The guy who actually came up with the values would would defend this work, and I'm just. Don't, I don't know that anyone's had a meet, is it, has anyone heard that that's a standing question? Yeah, okay, so that's, and and I and I think um, you know, certainly this, you know, the the issue that Chris brought up with this, you know. You know, big increase once every five years followed by slow decreases. That makes everything worse, and and that's the problem in and of itself, but it it's, it it seems like we we've had allegations. That this year is something additional and different, like wrong, which is just that the appraised values don't make sense, and I I. I don't I don't want to just say, hey, not our job, you know, I I would like to, personally, I would like to hear um the appraiser defend those decisions. And um see, you know, see what he has to say, so.
And one, a couple of other points that we brought up, I mean, when they do the appraisal every five years, that means um. Sheriff Kaufman, I don't mean to put you on the spot, that means that they essentially for four years had a benefit. Because they didn't pay the actual value of the property during during the time that they hadn't been reassessed, and I know they don't like to look at that way. Is that a fair statement? Is that a fair statement?
Definitely uh from the perspective of, you know, every year that you're not paying. That your valuation is lower in relation to everybody else's. Um I think that if you're looking at a system where every. You know, every parcel gets reassessed every year. Um then to the extent that everybody is rising at the same rate, then the then you wouldn't have those fluctuations as much. But. But it is true that uh, you know, with the current system, you're sort of getting a pass for a few years it uh on any of the. Valuation changes that could be happening.
And I think that would, you know, that would be some comfort to someone who has like, you know, a big cushion in their bank account and they just care about the total amount they paid every five years. But you know, the reality is most people. Uh you know, struggle a little bit to pay per property taxes. And so having this instability where. Uh it's just sort of hard to predict from one year to the next, but it's going to be, I I I think that's a very bad feature of the system and you know, we should. Look for ways to try to fix it.
And either the other thought that was brought up and it's kind of. I I don't, I feel kind of um, I feel bad that the assessor's not here to kind of, we're we're kind of putting a lot of. Uh making a lot of statements about her office. And one of the things that she brought up in the discussion is the lack of. The lack of the ability for her office to undertake revisions every year and that she would need more staff. And I don't want to speak to her, but we had. I have three other people that were at that meeting. That is what her for uh for the people at the meeting. That's what she'd said. If she had. An unlimited budget, they would be able to crank these things out more consistently year over year. So I I just don't want us to be making the statements as if this is something that the assessor's office is doing.
Uh I I wonder a couple of things. I know that we heard from McKay, so I I don't want to assume that he's the knowledge on this. But he made a couple of statements that we'd given up our equalization authority. Is there a possibility to look at that? I mean, we're at basically hiring that out now rather than this board doing it. And then. The other thing he stated was that. The appraiser had done fifteen percent of the commercial in town. And considering the vast amount of people that have. Contacted all of us. If that is all it's done, why we're not done with this. I mean, this is, I mean, we're just.
Well, didn't do would that that was his personal appraiser? I think he.
Well, he he was saying after he had discussed with the appraiser and then the appraiser. Didn't agree with him, but but he did make the statement that only fifteen percent. And I don't know if you can spree speak to that, Chris. But it seems like this could go on for years if that is the case. So it it could, again, I don't want to assume the case, the expert on this.
Yeah, no, that that statement really caught my attention as well. And it and it somehow does. My understanding was all the commercial properties were appraised this year. But. Yeah, McKay said something different.
Yeah, she can speak to that better, so.
Yeah, I am. Yeah, my understanding also is that all of them got praised this year. I think I I almost feel like we misunderstood or McKay didn't uh didn't didn't express himself well. I I. I thought that was when he was talking about he hired a personal appraiser to to appraise his land to see where it came in. Uh with, you know, in comparison to to what the county appraiser did. And I I. Thought I heard that his.
Spent several hours with the appraiser.
Right, but that he the fifteen percent was that his appraiser that he had hired had gone back and looked at fifteen percent, but.
Hmm, that's not a lot.
The other piece of this whole puzzle that's the most critical is the valuation. And in our meeting, we had the opportunity to listen. How they calculate the valuation and it. Again, not that it would be better for the assessor to be here, but it's based a lot on on the information of those reports that we did. That whenever a transaction happens, that the sale of a parcel is given, that information gets reported. And then they utilize those funds. The statement was that a lot of the commercial properties. They don't get sold on the open market very often. And so they're limited to the information. Uh that they have. And then they also uh seek information from the individual that owns the commercial property. And if they're not as forthcoming with the information, that it becomes more difficult to assess it. And that's something else that that we talked about. And I think that's the other piece of the puzzle is when they don't have a lot of different valuation mechanisms. Than they they give valuation that they have.
Yeah, that was something I wanted to bring up too. That Debbie, the assessor, mentioned about Utah being a non-disclosure state and. And her explanation that that causes. It to be a more laborious process here, here at least locally. But I mean, I guess we would have to compare with how it. Uh other counties that also are in this non-disclosure state um that don't seem bound by the same limitations. I did want to talk uh speak to the Board of Equalization and then the notion that y'all were ceding your authority. I would say that that statement isn't is a misunderstanding. Um you all will see all of the recommendations. Provided by the hearing officer of all the appeals made and you all have the authority to approve those recommendations or not. And so that is still your authority. Um and I can provide more background. Um and 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 McKay, for example, is doing his job. And flagging those those items that you might want to consider and and not improve as far as what the hearing officer's recommendation. Of the appraisal that came in.
So you're saying the buck stops with us on.
Correct.
Yes, the other thing that I I did to hear at this last UAC convention is that Grand County. Can sign up to be a member of MLS. Now, that might help more on the residential side, but it might help more on both and that there's not a fee. Now, I I don't want to quote somebody else. I think it's something that we might want to look into because. If we're a member of MLS, we do have access to all of the dollar figures that a property sells for. If we're not, it's a. Non-disclosure state. Uh Joe Blow can't get that information unless you call a realtor and they're willing to disclose it. So. That there might be an avenue to to sign up with MLS and get a little more information would help in that process. And then the other thing. It it seems, and I mentioned it in the last meeting and McKay kind of brought it up, is this appraiser seems to be a little bit on edge. Or I've heard people complain about his rudeness. And so I I just think it's worth noting.
Yeah. So so following up on what Bill just said, um, two or three years ago, I I always get his name wrong, but I think it was Ben Billingsley. At the city, city, you know, financial officer, you know, got very interested in this issue. And investigate it. And I'm mostly just repeating what Ben said, which I think is probably accurate, but he may have made some mistakes. So in which case, what I'm saying might be slightly wrong. But um. Yeah, the it it has to do with the fact that Utah's a non-disclosure state. And then. There's also some state standards for if you're doing an assessment, you need a a certain number of that, you know, comparable sales. Urban count like Salt Lake City, and 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 some people vol- volunteer, even though it's a non-disclosure state, some people, you know, sign the form and voluntarily disclose. So in Salt Lake County, for example, they they easily pass that threshold and they can do reassess assessments every year. In rural counties. We just don't have enough, you know, information to do it. But I I think what Bill just said that, well, we could just sign up for MLS and then we would have more information. That that seems. Like a a good solution to that. So I I think we should definitely look look into that. And um. And then I I guess the other issue is just workload in the assessor's office. You know, it's probably. Well, be before going into that, I I think there's an issue of like doing like a thorough appraisal and like visit every single house. And I think that's what has to happen every five years. But my understanding is if you're doing assessments annually, you can kind of do. A more of a quick and dirty assessment. And so I I just want, so so maybe it's common, you know, maybe if we get the MLS thing that that Bill mentioned. And you know, maybe we just have to put more money into the assessor's office. You know, I I think if it costs us an extra two hundred thousand dollars a year, that'd be worth it to to smooth out the property tax bills.
I mean, we heard this from.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean. Primary residents uh in in Grand County uh but years ago. Uh when I was a citizen, I when I received that tax bill, we heard about this. Uh now we're hearing it from the commercial side down that five year cycle. Uh it would, it would behoove us uh to move to a yearly cycle. And a couple of other notes, all the residential taxes went down, for the most part, went down this year. So this is this is the commercial fact. The other thing is if they if there was more information, and I think a lot of the commercial operations are reluctant to give out the information. Because the other valuation mechanism that they can utilize is the revenue generating stream. And a lot of the hoteliers, and I don't know if it's this one in particular, but they're reluctant to give over that information because it could result in a higher valuation. And so they might not want to be as uh open with the books because then they say, oh, we're going to, we're going to uh do the valuation based on that. And so that's the other side of the coin. The assessor um does report that she tries to be as um inviting to the folks as as much as possible. And so that was a piece that she brought up as well, as there's another piece to it. Um so.
Yeah, and uh kind of similar to that, I had the question about valuation of if it's like. With these commercial properties, potential income and Chris used the examples like a hotel versus like an empty lot. If say you had a condo that, you know, you could rent out Easter week and all these other things, like is it that potential that you could rent it out? Fifty weeks a year versus like, oh, my family's going to be there thirty weeks out of the year and we're going to rent it four weeks like. Is the valuation pinned to what they're actually renting or what they could potentially?
Potential unless there's evidence otherwise.
Yeah.
How is how I I understood it.
And I mean, that might be a a question for us of if, you know. I I don't know if if there's appeals when they come to us, you know, are we going to look at what it could potentially be or? Um, you know, what it, what the actual income is. And and the flip side of that is to Chris's point is. It doesn't change the total take on the taxes. So anytime, you know, if we're taking it easy on these commercial properties or whatever and and asking them to contribute less. That's going to put the burden back on the, you know, primary residents and that kind of stuff. So it it is a slippery slope that way when you're. Trying to balance the scales and it's, of course, we want to be accommodating to everyone, but um.
Well, but but I I think the main thing is the stability. I mean, I I think, you know, having annual.
Yeah, I I definitely agree. And I also, in looking at this, I kind of looked elsewhere. And I believe that uh Summit County is on an annual thing and they were still seeing. Annually, you know, over fifty percent increases. And so I think it's happening statewide. So. It it's, there's other places in the state that that have, you know, reported three hundred percent increases.
But does increases in tax bill or increases in SS?
In the valuation.
Right, but as Chris pointed out, if if everybody sees a fifty percent increase, then no one's tax bill changes.
Sure, but I mean, uh to the point of, you know, hearing people come in and say, hey, mine just went up three hundred percent over five years. It sounds really shocking, but if you look at, you know, oh, it's been going up twenty, thirty percent across the state each year. Then. That goes back to the problem of only doing it every five years. So suddenly you're seeing three hundred percent.
Yeah.
And I think that also goes to, you know, if you have a commercial place that you're renting out nightly, you know. Five years ago, it might have been a hundred bucks a night. Now it might be three hundred bucks a night.
Exactly, so.
Alright, so as far as discussion goes, um. Yeah, I guess.
So maybe it's general consensus that. We we want to move.
Right.
Begin to look towards moving to one year.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah. Whatever that might take.
Yeah, and I think I I would like to, whether it's in a full commission meeting or if it's in a smaller meeting. If we're. Uh paying this appraiser, it'd be nice to get a little face time with them.
And one of the, one of the difficulties, whether we go to yearly assessments, the assessors call, not the commissions call.
Right. So so any talks, you're definitely going to have to involve.
The president is a budget thing and we set their.
Sure, sure. Again, yeah.
We can set that as a priority and it's budget meetings where we're asked. It is the assessor's call, but uh I want to be behind uh them in the budgeting needs. Uh and have that known for me if if she would like to look towards uh going to yearly. That she has my support and uh helping that budget along. And additionally, you, they're going to need specialized assistance with the commercial evaluate evaluations as well. And that'll be an additional cost. And I I don't know. I I don't know how much that is.
Yeah. So so the other, I mean, I I think these are all good ideas. Um but you know, the other tack one can take is look for changes in state law that. Might give us more flexibility. And so one easy way to smooth smooth it out, um easy, but not currently legal. Is, you can still, is this, you know, we can still just do an assessment once every five years. So we don't have to. You know, put a lot of work, but that that ink, you know, so suppose the value is of five hundred percent. You just phase it in. Right, so you get sixty percent the first year and then. And so instead of having this stair step in your valuation, you kind of have a, you know, kind of gradual curve. And that that would take away, that would that would smooth out these fluctuations in tax bills quite a bit. Um but, you know, we we can't do that unless state gives us permission to.
Right.
And and I I think there might be smaller fixes, so it's. You know, I I think we need to figure out whether under existing law, we have the ability to. To get this tax bill smoothed out. And and if if that's really hard, then we have to start, you know, talking with folks upstate to try to. Work out something. And and I think the good news is it's it's not just Grand County that's affected by this.
Yeah, let's speak to my point or to Evan's point. We can't be in this alone. There's got to be some other counties in Utah even that are working on this, so. You guys can always, uh you guys can always reduce the 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 tax rate. Just shameless pitch, just.
What our abilities are at a state level, you might do that.
Great.
Okay.
Alright, I'm sorry.
Did I, I just asked Steven if he could look into that for us? What would be allowed by state law?
Alright, so did you said there was another discussion item?
Yeah, we do. So what we we had, um, yeah, we had three workshops. We decided to uh. To move one of the workshops to the end as a discussion item.
Don't worry. Health minerals took up so much of my time and so underprepared. I can make it so fast.
Be- before we go there, I just want to thank Chris for taking the time. Chris. Very much appreciate you getting on and and thanks for the explanation and and we'll keep discussing.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Alright, good night, Chris.
So maybe after, I mean, maybe it's something we don't broach right now, or is it something we broach right now where we put together? A little subcommittee to talk about this with with Debbie or I don't know. Do or do we just want to say what we talked about it and let it lie? Anyways, I know this isn't really the time. I know there's a lot going on right now. So anyways.
No, I think I think follow up is would would be great. And and Debbie was. She was super receptive at the at the meeting and it was really good to get get her her point as well.
Okay.
Yeah. So so, yeah, that's, yeah, maybe we have.
And we talked about also an educational campaign. We have, I mean, the meeting that we had went in depth in a bunch of different topics and I feel like. Yeah.
Yeah.
Could be helpful.
Okay, so uh onto the next um discussion, Mallory, and uh. That was, sorry, look at you here, the countywide projects and initiatives work plan.
Yes, so um since we discussed this last, we did put out a survey and I was pleasantly. Surprised to see that we had sixteen departments uh or offices respond. Uh at first I was concerned. But I I just think it's amazing. I feel like everybody who submitted that should just get what they want because. I don't know. I thought it was really great that people did that. Um and really interesting results. I thought about just sharing them with you, but I would kind of prefer to format things and add in some additional information. And then my plan is to share that with you guys individually. Uh and almost a survey, but give you a a way to review things and note for like the countywide. Projects initiative, the cities, um going through almost like a tiered priority. But then some of the other information will just be good for you to note when you're making decisions with the budget. Uh like personnel. We're also calling uh five year growth numbers by department. Um and so we'll include that just so you can kind of see where the growth has been, where their budgets have been. I'll tell you, I find it very interesting what we've seen so far. Um. And I also want to incorporate, if you guys are okay with it, something from the the CIB list we have. And have friend of the the master project list where y'all could add things and it might. Include stuff that's already on there or it might be, you know, add this to the CIB. Next year, consider it this year or just a a running list for us. Um so I swear. Um, so I swear I will do more of that. I blame Gabe. Mineralies. Um, and then I'm also wondering, do you guys want my input? Cause I was making notes uh, with some of the requests or projects of like, why I think you should ask for this to learn more, but I don't want to filter things. Um, unless you guys want like a side note, got one from me.
That's exactly, I was like, no need to filter things. Uh, no worries, but I would love to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, you you're, yeah, you're you're close to all of this. We are getting your opinion on things is helpful for sure.
Yes. Um, and then I had something really important I was going to say. Um, oh, building. So the quick snapshot is I feel like everybody is kind of saying yeah, we're we're okay, we can get by. Uh, but I think there are some some folks who it's very clear that they need more space. We need more storage. We need more meeting space. Uh, and and I think it kind of goes back to this, you know, public safety building. And then a new county building. And I I think that it's just a reality of if a public safety building is needed and we build that, this building will not, we won't have a new county building for a very, very long time. And that is fine. Completely up to you guys. But I think we need to know that and switch the plan then versus building a new building out back and renovating this. And I I think it's hard because we have a jail attached and I can't imagine the cost of rebuilding a jail. So I
But in theory, that would move in a public safety building. The jail, now?
Or you build off of this.
Yes, you build off of this. Um, and so I think for for me, that that's the only way I see forward is that you you do need to go with the county building now. Because if you do a a new building for public safety and we're talking about getting the city to contribute other places and such, but we're talking that alone will be so many years out. Um, that I just think right now for planning purposes, it it makes sense to say get going on a county building. Uh, we can look at like the bus barn, like to get company we've worked with before. I just reached out to them to let us know if that plan if that structure impedes potential planning, where we should look at it as something that could be demolished or if it's something we need a bigger Band-Aid, um, or if we go with the public safety building and start working on that right now. Those are, those are the big things we'd need decisions on.
You don't want to talk about it right now?
We can.
I don't think my agree, my agree to do it.
I like the idea of a county building. I would like to get the uh, title company to and just level everything and and have a sweet, awesome building that kind of takes up this whole block. And um, I think if we moved out of here that that would give more uh, space for public safety in this building. In the meantime.
Okay, well I'm I'm not sure the best way to get direction on that and maybe I can
Do we have the results from the study and the planning around space needs and organization?
We don't have that completely. We have a draft that I was just looking at. It's kind of funny to see because it started so long ago that it has like twenty twenty four need projections.
Insight out of the economic development study that'll come forward a little bit, it's gonna be directly related to this, but it's certainly gonna share some uh, holistic approach to some of the things that this community needs.
Yeah.
I think that we've kind of been told to wait on the results from that to, so um, I don't know how to expedite that or
Isn't that back on?
Oh, it's gonna be back on. We can do that. At the, I would just want to keep it's like that by the path. I want to keep bringing this up and keep pushing it along next time with more intention. But I I just think going into the budget season, we have to have to know what people should plan for. So I sent that email. We're reinitiating the study. Um, I believe that that's already in in the budget. So I should be able to take going quickly. And I'll send everything else and try to do as much as possible over surveys and emails.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mallory.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Do closed sessions have to be typically?
It's it's on the agenda.
We 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 put it on there every every time, just in case we need to. Think so. Yeah, let's let's do it then. I think that's, I think it's, I think it's all right. What is it for?
Litigation.
Litigation.
I've moved to go into closed session, closed session for litigation.
All right. All in favor of going in closed session? For ten minutes.